I'll go ahead and jump in. This is what we call our new commissioners orientation. Obviously, we do it every two years. We do try to just kind of build off of it each year and refine it. So if any of you, as we're going along, think of things that would be good to cover, number one, feel free to ask questions. But number two, feel free to make notes in the margins and share them with us and we'll try to make modifications and improvements for future sessions. So we, in years past, we've tried to cram all this into one day and we've always run late and run behind. We've broken it apart into two sessions. So timing wise, I'm not sure exactly how much time it'll take. We might get lucky and finish early. We'll just kind of see where the conversation takes us. But like I said, we kind of have a predetermined set of topics that we've identified as kind of being the starting point to give you an overview of what's going on. And I'll try not to focus too much on Jerry in particular, but feel free to stop us at any point with questions. So yeah, I think Jacob's running the clicker and I'll have the first items here. So just in terms of our form of government, you'll hear references to home rule powers and charter ordinances, things like that. So back in 19, until 1961, cities only had authority to do what was expressly permitted by the legislature. And so pretty limited authority and I can't imagine working in that format because just how difficult it is to get something passed through the legislature. But in 1961, there was a constitutional amendment that was passed that is essentially referred to as giving city home rule powers. And they were, cities were empowered to determine their own local affairs and subject to a couple of restrictions that I'll touch on. So it also then established classes of cities. And you'll hear us referred to as a first-class city. In fact, when we were talking about the charter ordinance as it relates to meeting schedules and things like that, we covered some information about first-class cities. But essentially, a first-class city is, has attained a population more than 15,000 and then goes through the process of a declaration by the governor as a first-class city. And so the, I can't explain it entirely, but the, there are a handful of communities in Kansas. I can't say that they're, population-wise, there may be some that are eligible but have not gone through the process to be a first-class city. But I'll read the list really quick just as a reference. So Atchison, Coffeyville, Dodge City, Emporia, Fort Scott, Garden City, Hutch, Junction City, Kansas City, Lawrence, Leavenworth, Lee Wood, Lenexa, Liberal, Manhattan, Newton, Alatha, Overland Park, Parsons, Pittsburgh, Prairie Village, Salina, Shawnee, Topeka, and Wichita. So that's the grouping currently of first-class cities. We frequently talk about peer communities when we're doing something in terms of comparing ourselves to others or even like the chicken ordinance that Sean was working on recently. We said, well, what are our peer communities doing? So we'll look at first-class cities and we also kind of throw into that list others that might be similar in size or similar geographically, maybe McPherson, Abilene, things like that. But we haven't made a predetermined, you know, set list of peer communities, but we kind of have a reference set that we use as we're looking at just comparing ourselves to others. So then moving on to, you know, ordinances, charter ordinances, those type of things. You know, obviously, you see us pass a lot of ordinances. The bulk of those are codified in our code of ordinances. I can't say that they all are, but the vast majority of them are, you know, a regulation that gets adopted, incorporated into code of ordinances and kind of dovetailed into the structure of our requirements. Resolutions are not codified. They're more, in the past, we pretty much, any authorization that we would do for the mayor to sign an agreement, city managers to sign an agreement, things like, apply for a grant, we do by resolution. We did, as part of past strategic planning, have a conversation about whether all of that was necessary as a resolution because that was just more staff drafting and legal review. And so you might have noticed that we've tried to dial back what we use resolutions for and do some things just by motion and give you the language in the motion to authorize an execution of an agreement, something like that. We use a codification service. We, not all that long ago, we were still codifying our own codes locally through the city clerk's office. But MuniCode is a widely-used vendor that does codification services. We forward our resolution. I was on it this morning and it wasn't working, Jacob.
Oh, great.
I don't know what the story is there. But it's a, it's a software, it's searchable, it has some features that some of our staff are more versed than me in in terms of going out and finding other communities' ordinances that are similar. But they turn our ordinances into the format that's needed to go into the codes. You might also notice that we have kind of a compilation of ordinances passed but not yet codified. So there is a little bit of a lag time there, but there is a section in, on the website that identifies ordinances yet to be codified, just so everything's out there.
Is there a direct link to that from our city website?
Yes, and if you go to the city website, go to government, at least that's how I get there, and then over on the far right is municipal code.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
And if you just Google, Google "City of Salina code" as well, it'll pop up. So MuniCode is a, is a pretty robust system that has lots of different codes from lots of different places. And it's, when it's working, it's a, you have the ability to go in and search by keyword. So, you know, if you wanted to search chickens, you could search chickens and it would pull all the different codes with chickens and then it gives you the ability to...
We're picking on Sean this morning.
It gives you the ability to pull up any section of code, you can print it, you can download it. So it's a pretty handy, handy tool. And then also you can, you can get on, as this one has, you can get on other communities and say, okay, well, what's Derby doing with these things as well? So we use it. It looks like Derby's is going to work. So this is what it actually looks like with the codes off to the, to the left side. Charter ordinances are all the way at the bottom and it has everything there that we...
And then each one of those is a pop-out. So if you, you know, pick a...
Well, I have used it a lot to look at our code. I didn't know you could look at other cities' codes.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's MuniCode and I forget what the other one. There's, there's a couple of really big ones and they've got the vast majority of a number of cities. There are still a few cities that manually compile their own code, having researched quite a few of those comparable cities, like for the chicken ordinance. The difficulty with theirs is oftentimes when they compile their own, they don't have a search function like they do in here, so it makes it much less useful.
It might just be a PDF.
Yeah.
That's published on their website, so...
Well, yeah, and this has a feature where you can download it in Word, so it's editable. You know, the other communities can take our code language and cut and paste it as their drafting or vice versa.
Just out of curiosity, I noticed on that it said definitions. It was 10.4 or something. Would that definitions have the same number in different cities or no?
No.
The nomenclature's going to be a little bit different from one community to the next, but they'll, I mean, generally, the topics, the big headings are going to be pretty much the same. They generally start with provisions and administration and that's kind of set up. I mean, state law kind of dictates a little bit about how a city's organized and set up. So, so the general topics are going to be the same, but we may have things that are, that are different from other communities or have extra things that our communities don't have.
Yeah, we have, we have sections where we've created a board or a commission that we might have that others don't. You also see reserve sections, either in anticipation of there could be more within this topic or as we've edited, we, we reserve those numbers and sections for future use.
So if I just enter the search term up there, sign, it's going to bring up our sign code?
Right.
Or everybody's?
No, it just searches internally. Yeah, if you're going to, if you want to look at somebody else's...
How do you find everybody's?
If you want to look at somebody else's sign code, you have to go out to the, to the MuniCode website and look individually. There's not a functionality where you can look at all of them. I think that that's, that's coming in the future with, with AI. There's been some search things that AIs are able to do that I'm, I think that MuniCode is working on somewhere in the future, you will be able to search all the codes that they have in their database.
Okay, so I just need to go to MuniCode and then pick my city?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
So, you know, one of the things you've heard us refer to, or you will hear us refer to, is whether a statute uniformly applies or not. And so we have home rule authority and we can pass ordinances and then the, the standard is unless it's a matter of statewide concern, applicable uniformly to all cities in terms of state legislation. At that point, if it truly is uniformly applicable, we can't by our home rule authority deviate from that. The issue becomes that if it does not uniformly apply, then we have the opportunity to pass a charter ordinance. And so that's a heightened standard. There's more procedural requirements related to a charter ordinance. And so sometimes it'll say, it'll apply to all cities of the first class, but that in and of itself is not uniformly applicable and we can, we can charter out of it. Most, the most recent charter ordinance we did was one that Sean facilitated and that was the, using the official newspaper option in terms of publication. And so we went through that not too long ago, but the first thing you have to do is identify whether the statute uniformly applies or not. Then we have to draft a charter ordinance and our ordinances, the format of them, we are very diligent about identifying it's not uniformly applicable and exempting ourselves and then specifying alternate language. But then procedurally, it has to be published once each week for two consecutive weeks in the official city newspaper and then it's subject to a 60-day protest period. If there's, to be successful in terms of a protest, it has to be signed by 10% of the number of electors who voted at the last preceding regular city election. So not necessarily the national election, but the last regular city election. And you take that voter turnout and the petition signatures equal 10% of that. And if it's circulated correctly and worded correctly, then that, that can be a successful petition. At that point, we could either choose not to go forward with the charter ordinance and kind of abandon it, or it has to be put on, on the ballot. And then there's provisions about that as well. And there's 30 days, an election has to be called within 30 days and held within 90 days. And so I would acknowledge that if we were going to be strategic, we would be paying attention to when the election cycle, so that we time ourselves if it becomes necessary to pass a charter, have an election on a charter ordinance that we sync up with an upcoming election. Otherwise, we subject ourselves to a special election. Having said that, that is easy to get out of sync when we have a topic come up and we're, we want to deal with it and there's not an upcoming election that's on the cycle.
And charter ordinances, they're, they're not that common. I mean, we have 40 charter ordinances that we've had in the city's history and many of those are kind of the same type of ordinance that we've, we've replaced the language over and over, kind of based on, on timing or... So one, for instance, one of the things that we, that we have done several charter ordinances on is our, our ability to bond projects. We have placed limits on ourselves on the dollar amounts for, for different topics and items that we can bond for. So when, as time has gone on and things have gotten more expensive, we have had to go back and amend this ordinance multiple times in order to, so we amended it for like a...
Water Park was one of them.
The Water Park was one of them. There's some, there's a specific provision for different kind of parks projects. So anytime we do a parks project that was over at a million dollars or whatever it was, we had to go back and amend that charter ordinance, so...
And our financial advisors have, have told us that we're one of the few communities they see with this level of, you know, detail and restrictions and limitations and the need for charter ordinances. Most communities have just chartered, chartered out of that overarching requirement, given themselves the authority to make decisions about issuance of debt. I printed out the list of charter ordinances, but are you able to just run through the topics there, Jacob? You might start with the most recent and won't have to go through all of them.
Yeah, so the one that you were just talking about is not updated yet, the one for the property. So, so issuance of bonds for general improvements, that's been amended. The last 38, 39 were both that.
That one was a baseball project.
We have one repealing charter ordinance, another charter ordinance that exempted the city from provisions about alcoholic liquor in public places, so that's something we did last year. Public officials with the authority to sign and serve a municipal court complaint or notice to appear. I don't, I don't really know what the...
That was our code, that was empowering our code enforcement officers to write tickets. Previously, they, they had to do a long form through the prosecutor's office.
The transient guest tax, we increased that a couple of years ago. That was done by charter ordinance. Another issuance of bonds for general improvements. A lot of these are changing this, this issuance of bonds for general improvements. That's, a majority of them are in that kind of...
And as we change the transient guest tax rate, that is a charter ordinance. So we reset that for the baseball project recently and then we've reset that, you know, years prior. Commissioner salaries are also a charter ordinance topic.
That's worth... Another one for general improvements, combined water and sewer bonds. I don't, I don't know exactly what the state law was there, but that was quite some time ago.
So one of the other things in that statutory language is it, it very specifically says, it limits our ability to have referendum elections. And so our interpretation has been, and it's supported by attorney general's opinions, that we cannot just have an advisory election. And there's a lot of times where we get asked to do that. You know, pitfalls is an example of, just put it to a vote of the people. Well, you were, it's not permissible just to take a topic and, and call a vote on it. If you go through the charter ordinance or if you go through a referendum process where it's initiated by petition, there's a way to do that, but just initiated by the city commission is technically not legal or permissible. I would acknowledge there are examples of cities that have done that. Wichita has gotten into quite a bit of legal wrangling about ballot issues and whether they're appropriate or not, but our interpretation is solid in terms of what the statute says and what the attorney general's office says. And we've consistently said we, we can't just do advisory elections, basically. So, and then proclamations. I will, you know, acknowledge that we have talked recently about our approach to proclamations and whether we can improve it. Longstanding practice of the City of Salina is that we will entertain requests for proclamations from any group. I was told that somewhere down the line, we changed our approach and said that the person that proposed the proclamation needs to be present and they actually read the proclamation. That has, we, I'm convinced that there are certain organizations, that they have staff people that are just tasked with getting proclamations passed nationwide. We get these open-ended solicitations for proclamations and we, we turn those away on the basis of you need someone that's going to attend and read the proclamation. On occasion, they'll go to the effort of finding someone locally through a not-for-profit or, you know, an organization that might agree with whatever the topic of the proclamation is and, and get that taken care of. So they turn in a draft proclamation to the city clerk's office and we have a, a link on the website to do that. And then city clerk's office works with them to get that formatted and edited and then it's, I review packet items in advance and I review those as well. And on occasion, well, I'm reviewing it not only for grammar, but on occasion, they're making policy statements as if they're speaking for the city and we turn those away and say, you know, outside of our authority, we're, we'll acknowledge domestic violence, we'll acknowledge gun safety, but we're not going to advocate for state or national policies. As you know, that, those numbers can get, we can get quite a few of those requests. And so one of the things that Holly has done in our office has, she's reached out to our peer communities and kind of a larger subset and tallied up how they approach it. I would tell you that again, and Greg, Greg has a section and we'll have an opportunity to discuss kind of free speech and free speech forum issues, but that's another example of, I'm confident in our legal review, our legal opinion, even though it might not be in sync with other communities, we have intentionally or unintentionally created what could be deemed a free speech forum as it relates to proclamations. So we, it's our interpretation that we don't have the ability to selectively by topic turn away proclamations. And I won't get into some of the brainstorming we've done and, and there's a couple of things that Sean's been tasked with, that he's been distracted by chickens and open container and other things, but they're on our, on our list and proclamations is one of them. We're looking at alternate approaches, but there are communities that they just selectively by topic say yes or no, they're going to endorse a proclamation or they aren't. We're not of the mind that we, or we're in a position to do that. I think we can kind of reset the, the forum, the, the format of that forum, but we have to be pretty mindful of the free speech aspects of all that. So not getting too far into that, but if, one thing I would like to do is have it just be there, be a little bit more distant from the city and not have staff involved in editing and, and, you know, working through that whole process, just kind of make it a standalone item if we can. We didn't, I don't think we ran across any communities that just don't do them. They'll turn some away, but I'm not aware of any communities that just flat out deny proclamations. We've also struggled with, we've kind of said our policy is we don't do proclamations recognizing individuals, we'll recognize, you know, topics and purposes. I've always thought, thought that's going to be put to the test when we have a state wrestling champion or a state tennis champion, but the school kind of recognizes their students in those activities, so that really hasn't been too much of an issue. But that is something that is on our list and, and plan to bring back to you in the next probably 30, 45 days to kind of revisit this topic and see if we want to make a switch.
How, how long?
30 to 45 days, I'm thinking.
You know, concern I've shared with you and others is the time factor.
Mm-hmm.
With the less meetings, we're going to get hit with more.
Right.
Three or four proclamations per meeting is...
Well, the other thing, you're right. And then the other thing we get caught up on is people think that we're kind of picking the topics and we're scheduling all that and understandably so, they get, they get frustrated if we miss Veterans Day or some, you know, high-profile topic that has merit, but we're taking kind of a reactive approach. We've tried to do a little bit better job of just paying attention to those national, you know, high-profile items and seeing if someone's going to bring something forward. But there's an opportunity to miss something that, you know, people expect deserves a proclamation along with all these other proclamations.
Yeah, and an idea I had is just rather than reading the whole lengthy thing, just say this is National Valentine's Day, whatever.
Yeah, well, and an idea I had was tasking media relations, just take them off on a room and they can read it on video as a standalone item and it's not at the city commission. And then we can format it in some way of community proclamations or something and, and get an arm's length distance from that being a city endorsement.
But, you know, further, my point, if there's anything I have conflict with, contraries to my beliefs, my name won't be on it.
Yeah, and, and trying to avoid going into that too much, but that's not uncommon. Other communities topically decide whether they're going to pass the proclamation or not. I, I think it is a free speech forum and you, not only politically but legally, run into issues when you're picking and choosing like that, but it, it is that whole, it's a, it's a whole area that isn't in our daily productive work that we're doing.
Yeah, I don't think city staff should be tasked with walking people through this whole thing.
But you know, when you look, and I sometimes will put little time markers on my agenda as to how long it took us to get to a certain place. When you consider how much time we, I'm not even going to use the word waste, but spend discussing other issues, you know, it's like a work. How many minutes a day do people waste at work? Usually an hour. You know, it really isn't that many minutes for the benefits you get for people being involved with government to have a chance to be seen, heard. I mean, it's, it's the pomp and circumstance part that keeps our, our community in, in touch with us.
So we've done, some of the preliminary work, we need to put the finishing touches on bringing that back to you as a discussion item and I fully expect, you know, quite, we'll staff it through the best we can, but it's, it's one of those policy decisions you as a governing body are, are going to need to make. My biggest concern is providing you the legal and staff support that once we understand what you want to do, we position you correctly, that it's, I'm not going to say it won't be challenged, but it'll withstand any kind of challenge. So, moving on. Manager of former government, was voted on in 1911 and 1917 and then approved in 1921. There is some really good discussion in the governing excellence document about the city manager of former government, you know, kind of topically, not specific to Salina as well as Salina's history. What I would tell you and, and, you know, in public administration classes, they like, it ties back to the railroad as the example at the time in terms of having an executive running the railroad and, and trying to get away from, oh, nepotism, but the spoils system in terms of whoever's elected and they appoint all city staff and trying to bring more of a CEO, board of directors approach to city government. The thing that I would acknowledge that comes up on, on occasion is the, the way it's set up, I, I answer directly to the guy, the city manager answers directly to the governing body and then supervises the rest of staff with the exception of the city attorney. The city attorney is contracted with you as, as the governing body. And so that can create, you know, awkward circumstances where people have opinions about a particular staff or, or an issue and then you find yourselves in a difficult position of being one step removed from, you know, directly supervising that, that employee. We've, that's come up on occasion. I think we've been able to work through it. One instance, and won't go into the specifics, but one instance, we got so high-profile that we ended up, I suggested to the governing body, well, you supervise me. If you want to go into executive session on the basis of you're reviewing my performance as it relates to that personnel issue, then I can at least tell you what I've done in the way of investigation and personnel actions and things like that. And, and that, I think, was a way to reassure the city commission that here's the rest of that story in light of what you're hearing. That, I think, certainly needs to be the exception. If, if the presumption on, at the city staff level, whether it's department heads, whether it's code enforcement, police officers, if the, if the sense is that any of them can get called on the carpet with the governing body, then they, they start focusing their attention on the politics rather than the policy that we're trying to have them administer and it can have a chilling effect on some of those areas in particular that I mentioned, that you're, you're not going to make friends or you've got a job to do and, and it could cause consternation. So certainly as part of city manager supervision and, and evaluation, that's your opportunity to, to weigh in on personnel more generally. I try to, you know, be as open as I can be as issues come up. The other thing that I would tell you, and it's not unique to Salina, it's kind of a common practice across city management, is there's an encouragement to city staff that they need to be supportive and responsive to elected officials, but they need to be mindful of kind of everyone's role. And I've lived through it in smaller communities where elected officials with the best of intentions ask, where are we at on, on this project? And the next thing I know, that department's moved that to the top of the list and we didn't have a budget for it. But with the, you know, meaning, well-meaning, but they get, they just place too much priority on it and don't, don't understand the rest of the, the big picture conversation. So, you know, informational, hey, there's a pothole, hey, I got a complaint from a citizen about sign knocked over, those things going directly to staff, that's probably the most effective. If we start getting into policy issues, personnel issues, decisions yet to be made, you know, opinions about operations, staff knows that if they get contacted by an elected official, they'll let someone in the city manager's office know and just so that they're not, you know, giving inconsistent information or that we're all kind of on the same page. But we generally try to encourage elected officials to take those conversations to the city manager's office. It does make some more work and on occasion, I don't know the answer, I got to go find the answer and get it for you, but that's part of the whole process of making sure that as an organization, we're all on the same page.
How do we get that message out to the public that as commissioners, we're not involved in the day-to-day operations of the cities?
Use those exact words.
Yeah.
Use those exact words. Government, we don't manage.
And you will hear, you know, city management of former government is not a requirement in the state. So you will see in other communities what they call a city administrator. And usually a city administrator has less authority than a city manager, but I've, I've on occasion seen it reversed and I've seen city administrator. So it's not a hard and fast rule, but typically in Kansas, the city administrator is a much weaker position and the mayor has much stronger authority. In many communities with a city administrator, the mayor appoints the department heads and otherwise. So the city administrator has a much smaller role to play in that. So you may see that in other communities... So you may see that in other communities and people saying, well, why isn't the mayor appointing the department heads? It's because they don't have the city manager form of government.
And not, not to single them out, but first in, they have elected officials managing departments, which is.
That's a nightmare, I can tell you.
It's pretty unusual, but, uh, so.
And I, and I do believe, Mayor Longbine, that the public doesn't always understand our role, you know, in, in governing, not managing. And in numerous times in, in the six years that I've been on the commission, someone would come up to me with a, a, a concern about an employee or a concern about a situation. And my first phone call is not to that department head. I don't, in fact, I don't contact those people, I contact the city manager because that's who we work through. And it's his job to then take it, and he always is good about getting back with me and, and letting me know where we're at on the situation. But, you know, it's, we should not get involved in those.
And you are our eyes and ears on the ground, too.
We are the ears for the public. They voted, as Mike always says, I didn't receive a vote in the last election.
Right.
So we do have to listen to the public, but our job is to, to take that information and, and forward it on to staff to deal with.
Well, and then the other thing that we as staff have to do is facilitate a consensus amongst you as the governing body. I mean, certain things, uh, pothole, uh, road repair, you know, there's no doubt that's a priority. Other things, we have to pause and say, uh, that might be a change in, in policy direction, that might be a budget issue. Um, we'll bring that back to the governing body for action.
You know, I, I've heard one of the county commissioners several years ago say, yeah, I went out and I've inspected all the county bridges. And I'm saying, okay, I mean, you didn't go to engineering school. You, I mean, yeah, send me out to inspect a bridge, you know, like, I'm gonna be able to tell you if it can hold eighty thousand pounds coming across? I mean, it's just, you know, we got elected, but we weren't trained to do all that stuff.
And, and Commissioner Hoppe's point, if you called and asked, do we inspect all our bridges and how they, how do they shape up? That'd be a totally appropriate question and we'd then be saying, here's our inspection schedule, here's our, here's our rating system, here's our inspection results, and here's what, how we're budgeting for replacement.
Well, I, I try to not overburden you with things, as I know he's got plenty on his plate. Could we, many times I refer people, we'll call development services.
Sure. Yep. I, that, that's totally appropriate. I mean, the, depending on the topic, development services is going to be the right answer. The concern is that it's easy for you to forget how much respect and weight and credibility you carry with our own staff. And so if a citizen calls and says, my neighbor's yard looks like heck, development services may say, well, by code, only one-third of those things are a problem. Commissioner calls, it's drop everything and they go, that goes to the top of the list. Hopefully staff knows otherwise, but they don't always. And, you know, we're talking line-level staff that they may be new to city, working in city government. This, they, you know, this isn't what they've done for a career. So it, it's a balancing act. Um, I try not to be too, you know, rigid about it and too regimented about it, but I have over my career, in, in a different community, had things get way down the line before, uh, management knew. And no bad intentions, they weren't trying to do an end around, but had to back them, say, whoa, wait a minute. We don't, we haven't even budgeted this. This is, um, this wasn't on our priority list.
Do we have any kind of a, uh, like a cheat sheet to, someone calls about this or that, to refer them to this department or that department?
Um, other than some of the information we have here, but.
Cheat sheet, but I would say, I mean, that's really what the city manager's office, I mean, Holly spends a lot of her time, probably more time than she would like to spend directing track. Because we are kind of the one place where, I mean, Holly knows where any complaint is supposed to go and she's very good at, you, a lot of times a, a citizen will call in and they don't know what they're, you know, they don't really understand the whole problem. And she is very good at saying, okay, what is it we're trying to deal with? And then getting that to the, to the right department. So I would say, have them call our office.
Give them Holly's number.
Sure. I mean, if, if you feel confident enough that you understand the issue and, and how it works, feel free to send them to development services, but if you're not sure, yeah, Holly is, uh, the traffic cop and she does, you know, she knows a lot, but there's, well, you know, you just never know what we're gonna get. And there's times where she has to tell the person, I'm, I'm gonna have to check into this and I'll get back with you. And then she'll confer with one of us and say, here's what I got, um, we kind of pick our way through it.
And it's, a, a prime example is, and I think we all got the email and I know the individual personally, but there was a concern about cloud in Ohio Street being blocked off the other day and their, and their business not being notified. Well, I don't know, again, their driveway was not blocked off, so I don't know staff's, um, procedures. And so you contact the city manager who may know and he may not even know, contacts the street department, whoever's, what's necessary. And they review that and they said, okay, we maybe should have done this and that's not in our procedures, we need to change that. So that's, that's where the staff comes in. Ours is to notify and that we've been notified that there's a concern and there's either an oversight or there's a reason it's not done that way.
Well, and I'm, I'm trying to do my best of tracking what each of you ask. And then two things, make sure I'm getting back to you and then also sizing up, is this a, a individual question that a commissioner had? Or is this broad enough that it need, needs, I need to share it with the rest of the commission? But don't hesitate to, you know, ping me that where are we at on this, that, or the other? And, and our weekly meetings are an opportunity to, to do that. Um, so, eh, as far as a cheat sheet, the best I, I know is just kind of that organizational structure. Categorically, here's what different departments do, but don't feel like you have to. I mean, I, I realize when you're in the grocery store and they're asking you, you want to be able to give them a specific answer rather than just hand them off, but that's what we're here for.
A lot of times they'll ask you to do something. I say, well, I can do that if I can find two other commissioners to go along with me. You know, that's the, and I guess one quick question is, um, if we have a concern and is it appropriate? If you're not available to go to either Sharon or Jacob with the concern, are, are you comfortable with that? I mean, again, you answered us and they answered to you, but I just.
We, we, you know, we're all within shouting distance of each other and, and we stay in communication, so.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's always, I mean, I think I've done that a couple of times with Jacob, but I just don't want to feel like I'm.
If, if there's a, if there's a coo-monging, please let me know.
Okay.
All right, uh, moving on. Well, I guess we, we just finished questions maybe, so moving to the next topic. Um, statement of management values, um, these are dated, they, they were done by the city commission, uh, apparently in eighty-six. We do share them with staff as part of our orientation. We have statement of management values and then we have the next item, which is our mission statement. Um, the, some of you are aware that we have used a consultant-led approach to, um, our strategic planning and, and our visioning in the, a while back, I think we transitioned in twenty twenty-one. Um, we used an individual, Bob Saunders, who had been mayor of Liberty, Missouri and city administrator of Liberty, Missouri. And he kind of had a unique skill, uh, unique experience on, on both sides of the, the fence there. And, uh, we then transitioned to, um, KU, uh, public management, um, group for a while. And some of the commissioners, eh, all those conversations were very much, um, close your eyes, you're in a helicopter thirty thousand feet above the city, what do you see today? What do you see ten years from today? Very, you know, um, brainstorming, open-ended. Um, the commission kind of expressed that, eh, an interest in more of a nuts and bolts. Um, the, the end result of some of those processes were, uh, statements like, it'll be evident that housekeeping, eh, there's good housekeeping in the city of Salina and that citizens are a priority. And none of those are, are incorrect and I don't think anybody argued with them, but they, they were very open-ended. Um, and so there seemed to be an interest on the part of the city commission to have a more detailed and, and nuts and bolts strategic planning approach. And I would admit, that's kind of my orientation individually as well. And so we transitioned to staff-led strategic planning in, in twenty twenty-one and we've kind of, um, tweaked that as we've gone along. And I'm certainly open to suggestions. Um, so what I thought I would do, eh, so, eh, last year, we kind of changed things up a bit and got with staff and said, all right, what are, in detail, what are your strategic planning priorities that, that you want to offer up for the city commission's consideration? And we came into the strategic planning session by department, by division, by topic and said, here's what staff is thinking. Um, and then that, and they, department heads presented on, you know, the details of that, answered questions. Um, we then allowed conversation, um, at, at the city commission level. And then afterwards, I created a, I'm sorry. Uh, so afterwards, I created a, um, kind of a survey exercise of, is it a priority, one to five? Is there consensus? Is it an agreed-upon goal, yes or no? Um, and eh, eh, a priority of one to five, how would you prioritize it? And, you know, it didn't come as a surprise, but there wasn't a lot of disagreement. There's a lot of support for, uh, way more than we might be able to accomplish in a year. And so I took the, the priority ratings and tried to, to categorize them. So what is on the screen and then what I've distributed to you, we, I pull, we pulled out what I called areas of consensus, um, kind of the highest, uh, amount of consensus and then identified a second and third tier as well. And happy to go through these, eh, eh, at whatever level of detail you would like. Um, we're certainly going to pick up in the strategic planning session that we have, um, kind of status update and where these are at, additional topics that staff's identified, obviously, um, any priorities that you as a commission want to, to enter into the conversation. And we'll try to facilitate that. And, you know, we, we have to be mindful of the resources we have available and, um, and it's not just as an organization as a whole, you know? One department may have some more capacity, let's find them a priority, whereas some of our high priorities may overload another department. Um, so that we then try to take all this out and say, okay, what are, what are the commission's priorities? And department by department, what's that mean for the budget? Um, if, if we're gonna accomplish these, what do, what do we need to factor into the upcoming budget? And that could be expenses as well as staff and then try to start knocking them, knocking them out. So, uh, in the areas of consensus, budget stability wasn't, and you can kind of see those are broken by, uh, their averages as well. But high priorities were budget stability, station four relocation, the Pickleball Court donor project, and widening and improving West Magnolia. So, um, I feel like we're, we are, have our eye on budget stability, we're making a lot of progress there, station four. Um, you have a couple of items on, on the next agenda as it relates to the next step of design and project authorization and, and financing for that. Pickleball courts, um, are open and operation and widening and improving West Magnolia are factored into our, our capital improvement planning, our budgeting, and we were able to secure some KDOT funding for the West Magnolia project. So the, um, Magnolia is also, the bridge improvements on the east, um, were right up there. Bill Burke and Burfra improvements, um, those are ongoing, obviously. I think our biggest item, uh, at the moment is what we want to do about drainage. We kind of brought a plan together, it was very expensive, um, maybe the, the turfing of Wilbur Field, uh, Pestinger Family Field will help some of that drainage, but not all of it. We, we have identified the staff, we need to come back and revisit that topic and what we want to do with it. Maintaining competitive wages, we did the pay plan and we brought forward, uh, changes for you in terms of other policy revisions. Replacement schedules, we just bought nine million dollars worth of fire equipment, um, as one of our biggest priorities. And we're continuing to kind of dial in even tighter on, on smaller items at this point. Um, economic development incentives policy, we've, uh, tweaked those and we're certainly administering the heck out of them. Disaster recovery facility strategy, Scott and his group are working on that. Um, I think that you'll see some more budget requests and, and visioning coming forward for that. Equipment replacement schedules, we've talked about. Continued support of sculpture tour, bathroom renovation, we staffed up, dedicated staff to, to renovate bathrooms. Um, the tennis bathrooms kind of jumped ahead in the line in terms of priority, given our commitment with the tennis complex. But, um, eh, we weren't able to get into one in, in the tour. Have all, have each of you seen one of the epoxy renovated bathrooms by our staff? Um, I think our skills are getting better, but I, I, they're a night and day different from the urine stain.
Did they get the epoxy down over here?
I'm sorry?
Did they get the epoxy down?
Yeah, when we were there last, it was gonna be within a few days, so I think so. I haven't, I haven't been over, and I did shortly after that saw they were working on the roof. So they might have gotten distracted on, you know, delivery of the, the beam and the roof repair. But I know it's imminent, they had the floor prepped.
Maybe we'll just take a walk over there.
Well, yeah, eh, can one of you reach out to Jeff and see if the epoxy's down and if we could run over there, uh, at a break?
Yeah, that, the one that's renovated at Bill Burke, that south one really, there's a lot of positive things about.
I, yeah, and, and then the concession stand and, and I think we did a tour of, uh, fire station number three. They did a shower and bathroom as kind of their first foray into it. And then the vendor told them that, uh, black was the color that showed imperfections the most. He would have, if he, uh, had to choose, he would have done any color other than black if you're just learning the trade. But, uh, so I feel good about that. Um, and then permitting software, we, we've switched over to GovBuild. Lawrence and her staff are, are diving into that and customizing it and building it. She's, she's so enthusiastic that as other things come up elsewhere in the organization, we can do that in GovBuild. We, there's a process for that, so, um, software always scares the heck out of me that it's great until it, it gets old and then it's time to make a transition and that transition is expensive and painful. But, um, it's just the world we live in.
So does that permit software up and running?
Yep. It's not fully up, they're still in transition. So it, it's purchased, installed, and, and we're customizing. So, uh, training position in the fire department, we, uh, kind of did a hybrid. Uh, continued funding for paramedic training, um, I think it's a priority because it's public safety. I don't know that, that's a, a big ticket item. Wayfinding signage, uh, painting and updating, that's in the schedule for the upcoming year. I don't know if you've looked at it, but it's certainly showing its age and some of the content's outdated in terms of destination, things like that. Um, facility audit, um, and Jacob, we've, we've entered into the contract with Schneider. They have an office now in, in the museum and they're actively, um, meeting and getting things going. Jacob, you have.
Uh, yeah, so the, the first part of that project will be facility lighting and they, I think they start next week, um, at one of the fire stations and they'll just work down the list and replace this, uh, quite a bit of lighting. And then, um, also have, uh, the next part of that will be the, um, envelope, so insulation in several different facilities and they'll just keep working down the list. So it's all, uh, it's all moving forward, they're making progress, they're gonna actually start, uh, doing the work pretty soon.
That, that's huge in terms of the, the breadth of what we're addressing there, HVAC in particular. Um, economic development fund revenue imbalance, we, we did a transfer there. Um, I think as we go into the budget, we'll have more conversations about on an annual basis, uh, how much we want to set aside for economic development. Um, you, you're gonna see equipment replacement by department, so that equipment replacement and software replacement is, is CT. Scott's, uh, done a great job of inventorying, uh, everything that we have in our system to try to get ahead of that and, and put a replacement plan together. Um, the, the whole boards and commissions policy, um, that is a priority. Eh, as I said, um, we've done some work behind the scenes, uh, inventorying the bylaws, inventorying the makeup of boards and committees. I should commit this number to memory, but I want to say that all told, it's over two hundred positions that, that we're trying to appoint. So I think the next step, eh, combination of trying to consolidate where we can bylaws that uniformly apply across boards and commissions and then revisiting, um, the member, the numbers of those boards, whether it's required by statute, whether we have some flexibility to take a nine-member area, we even have a fifteen-member, um, body if we have the, the discretion to dial back some of those numbers. Um, eh, we can talk about it further in strategic planning, but I think that's kind of my thinking of the first pass. If we want to talk about consolidating boards and commissions or, or doing away with them, we can certainly do that. Um, I, I'm not prepared to single out any board or commission and say that they don't merit, uh, continuing to exist in some fashion. I, I watched from a distance, Lawrence kind of went through a similar exercise and they, they ended up with broad overarching topics and I, I frankly was just a little confused by how they were gonna administer that. It was, I don't know, um, community and, and rec, and I can't even remember the categories, but it wasn't like planning commission and portazoning adjustment, it was these overarching, um, more nebulous topics. So the, we have identified that as, uh, kind of a next on our list of things we need to bring forward along with proclamations for you. forward along with proclamations for you. Automated notification to high usage, that dovetails with water billing software implementation, and we've purchased the software, we're in an extended implementation transition process that we've struggled with. The vendor saying that our approach to winter quarter averaging, where we take your winter quarter usage and use that for the purpose of sewer billing in the summer months, is something that they, we were surprised that they were not familiar with, or they said they weren't familiar with, and indicated they could program, their programming didn't work, they had it working, they made a fix, that broke something else. And as I understand it, we have just recently kind of done a pass, an initial pass demonstrating that it looks like it works, now we need to do some side-by-side billing in the current system, and then comparison of the functionality they programmed to make sure it works before we finally roll it out. So, it's longer than we would have liked in terms of rollout, but we certainly don't want to be premature and not get it right. Scott or Jacob, anything you want to add as it relates to water billing software status?
No, I don't, it's just a work in progress. This is one of those, one of those software things that we've been really, I mean, we've been hitting on it really hard, it's kind of in the vendor's hands, and we're hitting them up, we just haven't made the progress that we certainly would have liked to.
We're looking at, tomorrow we're meeting with them again, and we're trying to get them to commit to having these go live somewhere in a time.
I was just going to ask, longs this before I have to turn on that second water meter for the irrigation, because that system would have saved me $700 last year with, I don't know how much water that equates to, but ended up somewhere in my side in backyard.
The high usage notification?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, that's actually the bullet point here in this strategic planning list. And once we get the water billing software working, then there's some functionality with the water meters, and then hopefully we can.
Actually, we're updating software with the water meters simultaneously, so that's another separate project that's all part of this. So, the water meter software is probably 15 years old, and they're updating that as well. So, that software reads into the new billing software, and together, they'll give us the capability to do some of that notifications.
Will the meters need to be updated, or just the software?
No, just the software. The meters, the meters are on a cycle, I mean, they generally last 20, 25 years or even longer. They're on a cycle of replacement, but the software just needed to be updated.
Yeah, and we're on remote read, so, you know, sometimes you see communities that are updating the technology of their meters, but we're current in that regard and just maintaining.
So, I'll just go zero escaping until it's, until it's working.
So, leadership development in the police department, with CJ being relatively new chief of police, his focus was kind of assessment and reorganization. I think you're all aware that he, rather than fill the deputy chief position, he wanted to have captains across all the divisions and have supervision across divisions and shifts, and so, that was his recommended approach. I was impressed with his willingness to do that, and kind of his focus on that is a priority. So, he has a new leadership team in place, they have been, you know, developing leadership training and continue to do that. And then the police training center itself, there's also an opportunity to do leadership and programming that's available for others, and we see that as kind of improving our profile as a department and the region, and maybe helping our recruitment efforts too. But he's, he's very mindful of it and is making a good assessment of the department and implementing changes as we speak.
So, the contingency, if he goes down, this leadership team will step?
Yeah, if he's going to be gone for an extended amount of time, he'll identify, you know, who's going to be acting. I think that's already happened, and we do that in other departments where just depending on, even with me as city manager, if I'm going to be gone for a week, we'll identify who's acting, we'll get, put the word out in the meantime. So, but yep, he's taking a kind of a team leadership approach to it, and feels good about the promotions he's made. Capital expenditure planning and public works, we're working through that. The old pool is demoed and we need to get it smoothed out and sotied. Upgrading the Microsoft 365, CT's working on infill housing. You may recall that we took an approach of applying for a federal home loan grant and identified a target neighborhood. We got that grant, it's $999,000, and it'll be coming forward to authorize acceptance of the grant entering into the agreements at the next city commission meeting. Neighborhood revitalization area boundaries, we revisited. I would tell you, the St. John's campus, Penn campus, recently was purchased, we just had a DRT meeting with the new owner. He's very enthusiastic, he's kind of in brainstorming mode, but he is, has made some investment and looks like he's going to make more investment. What we do, it's not a boundary issue, but we have a category that we created to facilitate the Lee Buildings redevelopment, the Lee Lofts redevelopment, that is a project of exceptional community significance. That was wordsmithing, a local wordsmithing that we did. And I believe the threshold is a $10 million investment and 50 residential units. St. John's campus, through multiple ownerships, has looked at that, and they fall around 45 to 48 units, so I think there's some likelihood that we may bring back consideration of amending that project of exceptional community significance to broaden their eligibility for NRA. They, I should back up. Neighborhood revitalization area is a geographic area that the incremental property tax increase as a result of investing and improving is rebated back to the owner. So, it's kind of like a TIF, they would continue to pay the base taxes they paid before improving it, and then they actually pay their taxes, and then prove they paid them, and then they get a rebate back. Well, the typical format is 100% rebate in the first five years and 50% rebate in the next five years. The exceptional significance category is 95% rebate for 15 years. And it was modeled off of what Lawrence did for some of their loft projects, and we chose to do that in response to the Lee Lofts, but we created a category and criteria that others could be eligible for, so.
How would that work if that was, you know, part of it was residential, part of it was commercial?
Yeah, that's a really good question, not only from the NRA side, but from the zoning side. And there is indication that they're just trying to redevelop that space, see what they have in the way of tenants, and be open to trying to respond to whatever interest they might have. So, we're going to have to kind of solve that question from a zoning standpoint, but then if we brought back an amendment, we'd have to broaden the category in some way.
I could see that being something similar to the Marymount properties, it has both residential and offices in it.
Yeah, the conversation we had yesterday, he acknowledged there's a sizable kitchen there, you know, as a former hospital and cafeteria area. If there's some interest, he might try to address that somehow. So, very much in the brainstorming stage, I'm not predetermining anything, but I think we will be asked, how receptive are we to trying to work with them as they try to figure out a way to redevelop that property?
So, they are leaning into housing?
Well, yeah, he indicated, there's been conversation about, are you able to make use of the individual hospital rooms as they currently sit? Or would you have to knock out a wall and turn two rooms into some type of residential format? He said there's, you know, been some interest about senior housing, things like that, but it's all very preliminary at this point. So, I'm getting a little far afield, but my initial concerns are parking. The parking lot itself is still owned by the hospital, and so as they've put uses in there, they're going to have to figure out how to address the parking need. And then, if it is kind of a little bit of everything, and if it is evolving as they have interest, we're going to have to figure out a way to zone that, to find some balance between a zoning category and flexibility for them to try to redevelop the property.
How's it zoned now?
Multifamily, I believe. I think that's what they said, yeah. So, you know, if you were just going to, if you had one intended reuse, it's a lot easier to say, this is the zoning category you need to be in. But when they're trying to take a large space like that and just vision how to reuse it, it gets a little bit harder to predict. We talked about boards and commissions, there was a question about residency requirements as well. Transitioning Engine Four back to a quint, we've addressed as part of the decision you made Monday of this week. Ambulance replacement schedule, that's something we need to work with the county on in terms of their funding of ambulances and EMS. Self-contained breathing apparatus replacement schedule, again, that's kind of that next level of detail of inventorying replacement schedule. HR's got identified projects of supervisor training and background check services for coaches and part-time employees. Bathhouse renovation's underway. I think you're going to see us come forward with multiple dog park locations possibly. Animal shelter, the Department of Ag has indicated they don't like the shared use of a dog park between shelter dogs and public dogs, so I think we're going to propose a, that green field site south of the animal shelter and Carver Center as a possible dog park. Last year, there was discussion about the horseshoe pits and sunset as a possible location for a dog park. We've looked at it, I don't think, I think we could certainly use the space, I don't, I think we'd start over with fencing and kind of have a clean slate there, and then we need to get through the siting conversations. I think both of those locations probably lend themselves to it pretty well, but need to get the word out and get through the neighborhood process as well. Facility audit results, we're implementing, Parks is working on summer day camp. And I'd be happy to, we'll go over this in greater detail when we do the strategic planning, but I guess my point is, that's the, that was the system we used, that's the priority list that we developed. We're working, just factoring them into budgets and planning as we can, and then some of that, Development Services has a lot of activity, has a lot of goals, probably more challenged to, more on their list, and they're more substantive, they, we'll tackle them as we can. Other divisions, it might be easier to, for them to hit some of the things on their list, but we're mindful of department by department, division by division, what our capacity is and how we tackle it. I'll stop there in terms of whether you have any strategic planning feedback or questions before moving on to boards and committees and departments.
I just want to say, this is, this is more than one year's worth of work. So, don't expect that we're going to just check all these boxes, this is a lot of planning, a lot of time. And as you know, with staffing shortages, sometimes these plans, you know, we can't get to that stuff. But, I mean, we're obviously working through it as much as we can, but this is a, this is a lot of stuff.
You mean, the fact that we keep throwing stuff in front of this is a problem?
Well, and then, part of it's that prioritization exercise. We can all agree that it's priority till something else pops up, and then we get distracted. And the other thing we're running into is, as we need services outside the organization, consulting, design services, those timelines are challenging, so. But I, you know, I feel pretty good and proud about the list that we have and the progress that we've made, and kind of how we're able to incorporate that into our budgeting and planning.
You know, I think it's also important to notice, you know, most of these are five, some of them are 10-year plans. Our terms are only two or four years, you know, and we have to be content with the fact that the only contribution we may make is getting that first step on the way. A lot of these will take a lot longer than our terms to reach completion, but that's all right, because it's, these are bigger issues than us as individuals.
That's a really good point. For those of you that know Kay Crawford, she was on the commission, and a high priority of hers was streets, and it was a continuing topic and something that she stressed, and I ran into her years after she went off the commission saying, I can see that we've made progress on streets, and I told her, you deserve credit for that, you pushed that hard. It didn't happen while she was on the commission, but she, she was the driving force behind it.
Any updates from Jim on the shade structures?
Yeah, that was probably more in my court. We, so, you know, we reported to the city commission kind of options and costs, we've reached out to, staff's been pushing to get something going, I've been pushing, want some consent with this line of 2020, because we're talking about trying to fund it with some funds remaining from the initial star bond, and then also trying to fund it with proceeds that will probably require an amendment to the development agreement to redirect some of the CID funds to the shade structures. So, we've had some conversation, I literally had a conversation with them yesterday, and they're going to confirm whether our proposed, staff's proposed shade structures is acceptable to them as the master developers. The, depending on the options, we're in the 750 to over a million dollar range. So, I'm trying to rein in the vision to the lower price range, which would be shade structures versus something more permanent, something more structural that could exceed a million dollars. And so, that's part of the conversation we've been having. Staff's been pointing out that at a minimum, we'd like to get a shade structure in front of the stage so that the performers are shaded, and where that timeline's getting tight, but I've been holding out that we need agreement, that we're going to do shade structures before we put in one shade structure that would, could conflict with the longer plan if that's not where we're headed, so. It's in the, and as we bring forward a transferee agreement and that topic, the other issue that's going to be before you is whether we as the city fund that upfront, and then treat ourselves like a transferee to be repaid over time, or whether there's an alternate way that we could kind of escrow all the money for the transferees that have already been approved, use cash balance to pay for it, and then pick up with transferee agreements. The master developer's preference is, we, the city funded and then use the funds that are available, fund the remainder out of city general fund, and then pay ourselves back as if we're a transferee. So, that'll be a policy decision that we need to make as well. So, in answer to your question, we kind of have, we have a plan, we have a rough budget, trying to get consensus that that is what we want to take forward, and then we'll have to staff it through for the governing body to take the action that needs to be taken. All right, moving on. Citizen boards and committees. We have the resolution, it's in the packet, we have the process spelled out in terms of solicitations of interest, the expression of interest forms, the record of interested persons, and then that whole distribution process where, and Greg will talk about serial meetings and open meetings and some of the issues related to you as a governing body making decisions outside of a meeting. This is a good example of, of a process that we're trying to administer in a way that is mindful of the open meetings requirement. So, the city clerk forwards, and the resolution provides that it's mayor nomination ratified by the rest of the governing body. So, the city clerk kind of compiles all this, sends it out to each of the elected officials, asks for your feedback to share with the mayor. The mayor then takes all that into consideration, puts together their recommendations, provides that to the city clerk, and then we put it on your agenda reflecting the mayor's recommendations, and it's an action item for the governing body then. With that one-way communication, we avoid what would be called the serial meeting, but what we, what we can't be doing is having, outside of the meeting, trying to facilitate some, you know, consensus building across the governing body. So, it's out to you, back in, the mayor takes it all under advisement, and then the actual decision is an action item, once the mayor makes a recommendation.
I think we've only had an issue once that I was part of, but if a significant portion of the commission disagreed with a mayoral appointment, that discussion has to happen when that agenda item comes up.
Yes. And it's not eligible for?
And before a, the motion, would it come up before the motion to approve that person, or?
It would, it would certainly come up, you know, strict Robert's rules of order, you'd make a motion a second, and then you'd debate it, but we generally don't do that for a lot of our items. There's a presentation, then there's discussion, and then there's a motion. But it would come up as part of the action on that resolution, and the other. But it would come up as part of the action on that resolution and the other aspect of that is they are not appoint, they're not personnel, subject to executive session. So any of that discussion that you, you want to have would need to be an open session.
So because we couldn't change the nominee until the motion had been made. I mean, you wouldn't have anything officially to act on, so I haven't where that discussion would take place.
It'd be an amendment, just like any, I mean, you, you could make a motion that I approve, I, I moved that we approved resolution, we amend resolution such and, approve and amend. By striking Joe Smith and inserting Suzie Jones. If that, you know, is what you want to, and at that point, then that probably kicks off the discussion about the reason for the change. And the merits of the, the appointees or whatever, you know, concern you, you have that causes you wanna make a change. But that's all gonna be open, public discussion.
Far and away the roughest part of this job.
You know, it came, it has come up a couple of times that I can recall. One was an individual just kind of asked why they weren't reappointed and the mayor offered a tactful response. Another, there was some desire on the, part of the elected officials, can we go into executive session to discuss this and the answer was no. Those are the only ones that I recall. I, I, you know, in, in a prior community, I had an elected official with the best of intentions say, this would be so much easier if we didn't have to discuss it in public. It wasn't a committee appointment, but it was just kind of that general philosophy. And that, that is definitely true, but we're a public body and, you know, we're subject to open meetings, open records for a reason. But these probably are the, one of the more awkward ones.
Right, because it's that fine line difference between appointed by the mayor ratified by the commission versus. The commission having an influence on the mayor's decision.
Yeah, and, you know, maybe I need to check with Greg, I, if, if it were very difficult conversation and the mayor said, that's not my nomination. I think the technical answer is, but yeah, your nomination didn't get approved and so. You can propose an alternate nomination and we can do that process. In fact, one community, we had a controversial appointment, the mayor at one meeting nominated Richard Brown and the next meeting nominated Dick Brown and the next meeting nominated Reverend Brown. The same individual three times over. I'm not suggesting that's an effective way to do it.
Yesterday, started working through all that and I don't know that it's. I'd have to read through this a little more, but my perception is the mayor takes into consideration the rest of the commissioners. Recommendations and I respect that. So I am eagerly awaiting your recommendations.
It's, it's a rare occurrence, but you know, when it, when it does happen, whoa, okay, what do we do in this situation? And when do we do it?
Yeah, so as we take up the, the boards and committees, residency requirement has been a question that's come up recently. And we, we can certainly try to take, you know, make that a topic of conversation and provide you some alternatives maybe. The other question that's come up recently is, we keep the EOIs for two years, but have they gone stale? Do the people remember that they put their name in?
And I think this current packet's gone a little stale.
Yeah, could be.
Yeah, I don't know if we have, wait, we, you know, up there always has the date of when they had their, when they made their application. If it becomes over 12 months, I think it ought to be, they ought to be contacted, ought to be, you know, amended or approved.
Well, in the interim, if you, my suggestion I guess would be, as the mayor's looking at them, if you have any that look, you have concerns about whether they are outdated and you want staff to reach out to them, just let us know and we can. Between, that's a pretty short window by the time that you've kind of put your recommendations together, but if you identify anybody, we'd be happy to reach out to them and confirm.
We, we don't. Our application doesn't say anything about being, being a current resident of the city of Slidon, because I know on one of those, and I made a note for Mayor Longmine, it was the person lived in Abilene, I believe. And I don't, and I don't know, okay, if they live in a different community but work in this community, is that different? But if they, if they're neither, I think I, I have a real concern.
I think that's part of the, the review of all the boards and commissions, because there are some boards that have a very prescriptive, they say that they have to be, you know.
Right.
I mean, like law enforcement community review board, they have to be a citizen, they have to be in a, I mean, there's just, there's requirements based on the individual board. But I'm not sure that any of the boards that I've seen actually speak to residency.
Right, and we, we had one instance where I think a well-intentioned person, I think it was the accessibility advisory board related, was in that field. And wanted to participate by Zoom from outstate Kansas. And so I don't know that they, they certainly didn't live here and I don't know that they had a direct, you know, working tie to Slidon either.
Do any of these boards require a background check?
Law enforcement, citizen review board?
We don't do background checks on any board members.
So, so any, anyone is, there's no.
Yep.
Do you have a dozen felonies on your record or you're still serving?
Well, you know, it goes to where folks accuse the commission of putting their cronies on the commission boards and don't. Ninety percent of the folk, I mean, the longer you live here, you're, you're gonna meet people. But for the most part, ninety percent of the applications for these boards, I mean, it's, it's like reviewing, well, it is reviewing strangers. I mean, you really don't know what they're like as an individual or, or they're, you know, if they have a criminal record.
Unless, of course, you actually know the person.
Right.
They got their phone number listed there.
So, and then we, you know, after appointment, then we have provisions about orientation and training and there are participation requirements. And so the resolution has provision and if they, if their participation is flagging, we'll first work with the mayor to essentially put them on notice. Ask them to approve their, their attendance and if they don't, then they can be removed.
The mayor just brought up a point, if he or commissioner called a prospective candidate. Are there limits of what they can be asked because, you know, like job interviews, like you can't ask if they're this or if they have that.
Protected classes and we can get you, you know, information about what constitutes a protected class, but it's not out of the, it's not out of the question that. You could ask them what their general, you know, philosophy is about a topic that the board might be taking up if, if you wanted to. It's not exactly the same, but we, we need to avoid somehow that turning into a serial meeting that, you know, multiple commissioners have, have called multiple candidates. And are triangulating on who they collectively support, but I, I don't see that happening in this case.
So all five of us could call the same candidate, but as long as we did not ask what did Commissioner C. say? As long as we make no reference, no discussion about the other conversations.
Yeah, and as long, as long as that candidate's not saying, well, I got called by, by two other commissioners and they said they're, they support my nomination, so if you support me.
I get off the phone.
Yeah, you need to avoid that conversation, but yeah, you could, you know, whether it's experience qualifications or, you know, where do they stand on? How they might apply themselves as a, as a board member, that'd be fair game. Might be awkward.
Well, I guess, whatever you do, do not tell me what you discuss with somebody else.
Yeah, and we, I, I literally yesterday made up some hypothetical scenarios and proposed them to Greg that when he presents on serial meetings. Asking what he thinks about the hypotheticals and it's just a kind of a nuanced progression from a general conversation to an obvious serial meeting. And, because that comes up, from the citizen's side, it comes up where they, you know, with, they, they have no reason to understand or give that any consideration as they're reaching out to you about an item. So Jacob, Jacob and other staff have developed sta, board commission training and, and orientation. We, a while back, it was a priority of the city commission that they get trained and, and in a timely manner and they acknowledge that they were trained. And part of that training is open meetings, open records, serial meetings, ex parte communications, which we'll touch on in a little bit.
Yeah, there's a, a packet that we've, we've developed that has the, it has this, this ordinance that, that kind of talks about what boards and commissions do. Then there's a, an open meetings, open records flyer or pamphlet that, that we provide and then there's also the ethics policy. And as a board member, you have to sign off, say that you've received these and you understand that you're supposed to follow the guidelines. And that happens generally, that happens in the fall and it could happen in the fall or in the spring, depending on when the timelines are for the board appointments. The, the big board appointments are generally in, in August timeframe and then again, right around now. So, so board liaisons are responsible, any board liaison is responsible to provide the training for the board members.
Compensation, there is none. And annual reporting, it's something that we try to pull together by board and commission. Greg will touch on rules of procedure as well, that's, we have, we've developed it for the city commission and we recently amended it as we dealt with the meeting schedule. But that's something that we share with the, the boards and commissions as well. And, oh, we have youth liaisons on some of the board, they're, they're a participating member and they vote to indicate where they stand on the issue. But their vote doesn't count towards the outcome of that board or commission. So it's just kind of an opportunity, it's a resume builder for some high school students, but it's an opportunity for them to engage city government as youth. So, and so this is, is a little bit technical, but we have different, boards and commissions serve in different roles. So there's quasi-governmental boards and commissions and they, they have authorization over, you know, operations and organizational matters. There's quasi-judicial and they're empowered to hear appeals and, and the planning commission serves in, can serve or the board of zoning appeals can serve in a quasi-judicial way. We also have a, oh, I'm drawing a blank, a employee, what's the name of our appeal? Yeah.
Disciplinary review.
Thank you, disciplinary review board. And so there's an entire chain of command through supervisors, division head, city manager, but then there is an appeal right to the disciplinary review board. They don't have final authority to overrule the decision, but they review the case, they review the, the decision, ultimately the city manager at that point. And then they offer their opinion on whether, what, what they think is appropriate in terms of discipline. Moving to other categories, you have the regulatory, administrative and advisory and there's an org chart there that tries to break up the different boards and commissions and their roles. And some of them serve in multiple roles depending on the action item, so I think the, the chart's in the PowerPoint.
I don't, it's not. Oh, it is, two, you want to talk about that first?
Uh, yeah, ex parte communications, I think, Jerry, with you having served in the planning commission, I think you've seen this blurb on plenty of planning commission items. But the way that I try to boil it down and explain it is, there are certain things that, that the body is sitting much like a jury. And everybody on the jury needs to hear the same information to make the decision, not only the, the members of the jury, but the applicant or the opponent. And so when ex parte communication limitations are involved, we tried to flag that and make that known as part of the, the staff report to the applicable board or commission and the city commission as well. And forewarn against ex parte communications. And, you know, if you think about it, you're a developer, you're making a sizable investment on a rezoning of a property or on the property itself. And citizens have contacted individual commissioners one-on-one and convinced a majority of the, of the commission to vote against their proposal. And you don't even know the reason why and you show up at the meeting and you just get voted down and you, you don't understand the reasoning, let alone have an opportunity to try to address the concerns. That's kind of what, that's kind of the worst-case scenario or what ex parte communications are trying to avoid. Having said that, it, it's not, it's impossible to avoid those conversations. Sometimes you end up in a conversation before you realize it's coming to the, the commission, sometimes you get approached and, and it may not jump out as you as something subject to ex parte communications. There, and there is a remedy and that is at the time that the item comes forward disclosing that there is an ex parte communication. And to the best of your ability, sharing with the rest of the governing body, I was approached, this is what was discussed. So it's an acknowledgement and, and it's also kind of a disclosure of that information, whatever it was that you, you gained. Not only with the rest of the members of the board or a commission, but to the applicant, the public, everyone else. I, I would say that's, that's not an end-all, be-all, just feel free to have ex parte communications and disclose them because there's a lot lost in translation. But in the event that you do have one, the first thing I would tell you is, reach out to me and, and we'll get the city attorney involved and kind of review the item, review the, the communication. And then help format that disclosure, so. And maybe I should pause on ex parte communications, any questions there? And you may recall that we have this bold italics narrative that we stick on agenda items that, that involve, that would qualify as quasi-judicial, which then makes it subject to ex parte communications.
Most people who do business of that type on a regular basis are aware of it, but every once in a while, you know. There've been two times I've had to tell someone, you know, I really can't discuss this with you, you know. Come to the meeting Monday at four o'clock and we can discuss it in public, but.
Yeah.
And one, I can't remember what it was, but I, I did call Greg and say, hey, I just want you to know, you know, I didn't realize where the conversation was going at, at first. But we didn't discuss meets of it, but do I need to report this at Monday's meeting?
And, you know, a suggested approach may be, in, as much as I want to hear what you have to say, in fairness to everybody involved, my fellow commissioners and the applicant and anybody else on either side of the issue. Everyone needs to hear what, what it is you're wanting to tell me, so please come to the meeting and share that. You know, it's kind of complimentary of, of them and sometimes that's more work, they, they just saw you and wanted, oh, by the way, tell you and hand it off to you to take it from there, but.
In fact, I remember the situation, I won't give the details, but I, I did kind of say something like that, but the person said, yeah, but you deprived me my right to talk with my individual.
Right.
Commissioner was, I said, yeah, I understand you're wanting to have intimate conversation to make sure we understand your point of view, but.
Yeah.
That's not the way this works and he was a little offended, I think, but I said, you know, it's gotta be this way or, or nothing's gonna happen and we both may be in jail.
I guess as a commissioner, if it's not a quasi-judicial matter, you can have that conversation, you know, which we all get approached by whatever, so you just gotta keep in mind.
I mean, generally the things that come to the commission that are, that fall under this are like dangerous structures and, and you won't even have the information in the packet, you'll just know there's an address. You won't have the, you know, you won't have all the details until the presentation is given to you and, and I mean, it kind of.
And rezonings.
Planning commission, the, you know, Development Services has.
While we're on the topic, your comments kind of reminded me, I greatly appreciate each of you individually that there's, there's kind of this process that we end up going through. There's the general public expectation of democracy and government and public access and, and the law. And I'll be the first to admit, court cases don't necessarily sync up with common sense or what, or the, you know, past practice that people are familiar with. So we as staff find ourselves having to dive into, you know, a greater level of detail that this may be the expectation, but here's the underlying legal considerations. Whether that's free speech, whether it's quasi-judicial matters, whether it's, you know, certain ordinances and approaches we want to take. And that's, in all honesty, that's uncomfortable for staff when. And that's, in all honesty, that's uncomfortable for staff when the, the common perception is one thing and we have to say, well, it's not the case as it relates to case law or what have you. And I was on friendly fire yesterday and we got to talking about, oh, the, the protest period for bond financing of fire equipment and they were pressing me on, you know, what are the, what's the reasoning behind that? And I finally said, you know, I've just come to not question that stuff. You just have to accept it. It's the law, it's state statutes, it's case law. I, you know, you can't swim upstream, you just have to understand what it is and make sure you comply. But it can get really frustrating, I, I realize that. So, we've broken out, oop, sorry, if you can go back. We've, we've broken out the boards and committees in, in terms of their primary role. So, you know, I touched on quasi-governmental, it seems like there wouldn't be a lot of those, but the housing authority, the library board, the Sline Airport Authority, we appoint them, but they do have considerably more authority budgetarily, tax levy, staff than what might be a typical committee of the city. On the quasi-judicial side, you've got the board of zoning appeals, building advisory board, and then planning commission depending on the item, animal control advisory board. There's certain permits and licenses that can be appealed. If they're sitting in an appeal role, they can be quasi-judicial. And then I think the tree advisory board has some appeal authority maybe. I honestly don't recall what, what got them in that category. On the regulatory side, you've got the design review board downtown, the heritage condition, commission, the planning commission, the animal control, tree advisory, and then more of the truly advisory roles that are just making recommendations to others as that long list there. And then semi-administrative, we park the committee art and design advisory committee there. They're, they are doing some administrative processes, but they still kind of do that in an advisory way. All right. Be happy to answer questions on the different boards and commissions, but that information's there and, and there's links there as well. And then, any questions there? I was worried about finishing early and now I'm late.
Yeah.
Been talking too much. The last thing we've got is interlocal agreements and what I would, that is a very, that's a legal concept, it's agreements between governmental entities, so typically us and the county, sometimes the school. There's a countless number of them that we have in place. We do have an inventory of them, but everything from jail and dispatch to emergency services to emergency management. And so, we, quite some time ago, tried to inventory all those and kind of summarize them and then we've added to that list. But it's just really an opportunity for, for us to enter into agreements with primarily the county. But everything from computer systems and who maintains them and joint access to them to, at one point, we had shared animal control with the, with the county health department. That's not the case anymore. Kenwood Park, Oakdale Park was all subject to interlocal agreements, things like that. We do have a good working relationship with the county and I think it's improved over the years. So with that, I'll stop for questions and a break.
When you're a liaison onto this particular boards, are you just, you're not a voting member, correct?
Most cases, yeah, most cases not. The library board, there are the certain ones that you are and we should, should probably be mindful of letting you know as you serve on those boards and commissions. But presumption is that you aren't, the library board, I had to research that recently and that's actually a statutory provision, that the mayor is a voting member.
So, is your role to, I mean, is your role just to sit back and listen or can you input?
It's a really good question. I, I think you can input, but you need to be mindful of not, you know, speaking on behalf of the, the city commission that you can do whatever you want, but I'm telling you, the city commission's going to, going to do this. The other thing that, that it comes up is what is referred to as a duality of roles. And so, if you're actively involved with something that's then going to come to the city commission, now you've created this conflict of advocating or recommending at the board level and then it come into the city commission. So, it's more kind of a liaison, communication back and forth, letting that board know what's going on at the city commission level and then letting the city commission know if there's anything coming out of that board of note.
I think the different boards have their different personalities, arts and humanities, travel and tourism, I mean, you're going to sit at the table, you're engaged in a conversation. Airport board, you know, bring a crossword puzzle because, I mean, they give you opportunity to speak and you can make comments, but it's, I always get the impression, I am truly an observer of the meeting, along with the county commissioner sitting next to me. I mean.
And technically, if they go into executive session, you don't know.
Right.
Yeah, EDO, let's see, what's the other one?
But.
Sometimes they'll ask you, sometimes they'll ask you a question, but then it's when you'll, but yeah, usually it's more of a, just listening.
Well, and you may notice.
The authority board, you're a member. That is a voting member.
Yes.
Okay.
Then when you get asked a question, you realize, well, I can't make any promises on behalf of the other four, so, you know.
And then EDO's a good example. You may notice that I end up in their executive sessions and much like we would bring in someone outside the organization to our executive session topically, Mitch grabs me and asks me to attend to explain incentives or, you know, that there's usually a deal in the works or there's, you know, project specifics that he's asking me to, to address. Okay, should we take a break and then we'll come back?
I think we should.
Um, let's say about ten tel, we'll pick up. So, in the governing excellence document, the tab is governing, yeah, governing excellence document. On page fifty-five starts individual department org charts. So, with respect to this org chart, it, I think it's pretty straightforward with one notation that city legal council is, is, works with the city manager's office, but they're in contract to the governing body directly. I'll just hit some quick highlights on the departments. Arts and humanities, we were one of the few communities that has a dedicated department. Brad Anderson's the director and we divided into the art program division and then the museum division and staff. City manager's office, myself, Jacob is deputy and Sean is assistant. And then we have Howie's the executive assistant, Nancy Schussler is a risk manager in our office. Pretty small, all things considered. Computer technology, Scott Gardner's the department head. We have beefed up their staff a little bit and we are trying to consolidate some authority or certain items under CTE phones and then other things that have been very dispersed previously. So, Scott's actively reworking budgets and holding people accountable, which is relatively new in the organization. Community development services, Lauren Driscoll's the director. Just appointed Margy Clem. If you recall, Margy is the, was the development coordinator, appointed her as her deputy. We just authorized that position as part of our strategic planning and budgeting. And four divisions there. Planning and zoning, development services, which is code, both code enforcement, I'm sorry, development services is their permit techs and staff. Community relations, affirmative action and, and now homelessness has kind of been tasked to community relations as well. And then building and neighborhood services, which is the inspection side of things. And you may recall, we added a dangerous structure position and recently promoted Sean Furbek to that position. He'd been with us on the inspection side and we're making, tasking him with development services, or with dangerous structures. On the fire department side, Tony Snyder's been with us a while. Maybe my order's not, yeah, I guess these aren't in alphabetical order. Finance department is Debbie Pack and she has what would typically be considered finance, but also the city clerk's office and then water customer accounting is, is under finance. Fire department, Tony Snyder, relatively new fire chief, and I say that just because we had some conversation about whether we filled the deputy chief position and he chose to appoint Shane Pearson and worked through a little bit of organizational assessment and reorganization there. They're divided into the prevention division, the fire marshal's office, the EMS division for ambulance and medical treatment operations, and then a one-person training division that does the training for the, the department. Human resources, another, yeah, their facilities, obviously they've got the four fire stations and we're actively talking about relocating fire station number four. Human resources, Natalie Fisher's the director with five full-time staff. We recently added the recruitment coordinator, so that expanded her staff. And then, if you remember Linda Lockhart, she was kind of there in the front office. She applied for and was promoted to that position and we backfilled that position recently, so.
What position was that?
Recruitment coordinator, so trying to review applications and our recruitment process and assist all the other departments in terms of filling their positions and keep, keep things moving there. Municipal court is under the city manager's office. We, Judge Stoss, city prosecutor's Christina Trocheck, and then Judge Stoss supervises the court supervisor, which is Luanne Everhart. She used to be city clerk. I guess time gets away, but it was city clerk a while ago. And I do supervise them, mindful of, you know, kind of the independence that goes with the judge and, and that function. So, looking at it more functionally than, and if there are complaints, we'll deal with that, but not weighing in on, you know, outcomes and those type of things, recognizing her discretion as the judge. The parks and rec department, Jeff Hammond is the parks director. The deputy parks director is Brett Lamer, if you, if you know him. They are divided into nine divisions, so they, they're kind of spread across a number of things. So, the golf course is a standalone operation. It's also treated as an enterprise fund, so the theory is that it's trying to make money and pay for itself, but practically speaking, it's doing good to, to break even irrespective of investments like irrigation and, and big-ticket items. Animal services is under the parks department. I mentioned earlier that it used to be under the county health department. When it came under city operations, there was discussion about whether, where it was most appropriate. The two departments that were discussed were police and parks and rec and a conscious decision made that we didn't want to be, come off as enforcement-oriented too much, so chose to put it in parks and rec rather than under the police department. There's the parks division itself and then it's subdivided into downtown and landscaping, forestry, natural resources, and the cemetery. There's the recreation division that has recreation superintendents and ground maintenance. And then there's building staff that not only does maintenance, but does janitorial services. And then within the recreation side, there's an aquatics division that, that's running Kenwood Cove and, and we're lucky enough to have Andrea as the director that's with us full-time. We cycled through trying to do that seasonally and boy, that's challenging. And she may be aware that she also then assisted the animal shelter as they were kind of trying to get things assessed and organized and was very helpful there. There's a number of pictures of, of different facilities. One thing that caught my attention, the Jerry Ivy picture, if you go, I'm sorry, if you go back to the park, playground equipment, that, that's got to be quite the dated picture because I don't remember that barn in the far-left corner of the side of that. That's been gone for a while.
Oh, that's the, the wheel that you.
Yeah, right. It would turn, but that picture's got to be at least twenty years old because we haven't had that for that long. But anyway, obviously we have a, we, you know, a handful of parks across the, the city. We have neighborhood parks and then we have destination parks and factor that into our park planning. And then the Lakewood Discovery Center, that Lakewood Park. And we also have a spray park at Hawthorne, in addition to the ones you see in the picture there. And we have a lot of running trails. We have twenty-three miles of levy that we maintain in the city and the county and not all of those have trail on them, but the bulk of them do. The police department, I think we talked earlier, Chief Weiss made an assessment in terms of deputy position and chose to put captains across all the divisions. So CJ's the, the chief and then we have a patrol division, professional standards, which previously was referred to as IA, support division, and a detectives division. And then we have units, a handful of units under those divisions.
I thought on his report Monday, there was eighty-nine full-time staff.
Officers, uniform.
Uniform.
This is administrative staff.
I think it's eighty-four, eighty-four sworn officers.
Right.
And the rest is support.
Okay.
Yeah, this includes others.
Public works is the typical, what you would think of as public works, but then in addition to that, there's central garage engineering, flood control, household hazardous waste, landfill, which is truly the landfill operation, sanitation, which is trash collection, the drive-through recycling center, streets, and traffic control. So they, they've got a lot of breadth of responsibility as well. And utilities, Martha Tasker's the director, have water production and water distribution and wastewater collection and wastewater treatment, kind of your typical things. And then she, capitalizing on her skillset, is also responsible for groundwater remediation at, at former showing air force base and off of the, the base site itself. We, it's kind of a long story, but we ultimately got a sixty-seven million dollar settlement from the federal government and the Department of Justice. We entered into an agreement that we accepted responsibility for administering those funds and the remediation. The thinking was that one large settlement like that empowered us to, to deal with the issue versus trying to fight for annual funding over an extended amount of time and trying to force the federal government to do what we thought needed to be done. So, that was a lot of effort on Greg Bankson's part and some outside legal counsel, Martha Tasker, Jason Gage, and then it culminated a couple, a few years back with the settlement. And we should be bringing forward a contract to break ground here pretty soon in the first element of treatment.
So, have we spent any of that sixty-seven million yet?
We have on design and legal fees and, and testing and stuff like that. But this item that's coming forward in March will be the first noticeable item out in the field.
And again, this will be something I'm guessing we'll discuss at the commission level, but we've invested those dollars, correct?
Yes, yep. In fact, we, we put together a financial administration plan that gave us additional investment authority for investing over an extended amount of time. And we, we have a, what we call the Sline of public entities that were the group that kind of sued the federal government and had exposure out there. So it's the city, the airport authority, K-State Sline because of their location out there, and USD three oh five. They're not located out there now, but they had facilities out there. And the federal government, as part of their tactics, turned to what they referred to as potential responsible parties and tried to tell us that because we had property out there, we might have some shared responsibility for the contamination down to having cleaning solvent in a filing cabinet and, and a building out there. So, the entities banded together and created our group that, that negotiated with the federal government, settled with the federal government. City Sline is the primary lead agency and, and that group looks at kind of the fund balance and investments and returns on investment along with other things. And then the other thing that Martha's taking on is the river renewal project. So, she has personally invested in that, both the remediation and the river project. And we toured the water treatment plant and the sewer treatment plant recently. Sewer treatment plant's a forty million dollar project renovation that's under construction and then there'll be some follow-up items in terms of equipment after the, the renovation's done. About eight million dollars of additional equipment.
All right. So, actually, we have some slides about interlocal agreements if you, I didn't realize that, I guess.
Yeah.
They were out of place a little bit. This is just a list of those interlocal agreements that, that Mike kind of mentioned before. As you can see, there's two or three slides full of them quite a bit. And there is links to all this stuff. I do want to take you out to our, just as far as the amount of information that's available on our website and, and the, the history, we provide access to more documents than I think anybody. Uh, we provide access to, um, more documents than I think anybody, I, I haven't seen another community that provides the amount of access to documents the way that we do. So if you don't know how to, how to get there, there's a, a web link. I always click on just the city commission packets and then you can come back here and go into Salina and it has all the, all the city commission packets going back, uh, for, back to nineteen oh one. So there's, there's a ton of information that's out and available.
Are out there.
On the website, the minutes, um, all kinds of agreements, contracts, almost everything that we have, um, stored in documents is available on our website and that is not common. I mean, generally speaking, you have to put in a records request and try and find that stuff or have somebody go and help you through it, but we have a lot of access. So anytime, um, you know, you have, somebody asks about information, you can direct them to the, to the web portal. Certainly we will help them find it or, or, or get them to that place, but just to, just in a, I guess a side note to all the interlocal agreements and everything that we have, it is all available, um, online.
Well, I get a little frustrated when I'm trying to find something just for the fact that there is so much.
Yeah, and I joke that we've got staff that get different search results than I get. I put it in, I don't get what I want, I ask for help and it looks like they do the same thing and they get good results, but.
There is some functionality there, it is, it is a little bit cumbersome to do a search. I'm, I think in the future, um, with, with AI, uh, coming along, I think that we're gonna have some capabilities to get in and do searches in a different way. Where AI will scan the documents and be able to pull things in a little bit better way than what, uh, what Google searches or, or that sort of thing. I think that's, I don't think we're too far away from that, probably in the next year or two, we'll have much more functionality with some of the AI stuff that's coming down the road.
Something I would like to see modified is it starts at nineteen oh one and goes down, if that could be reversed. From newest to last.
That is a good question, I don't know if that's a, a possibility or not, but we can look at that for sure. Okay, so that was all the pages of interlocal agreements and, uh, if there's any individual questions about that, we can answer them whenever. Okay, so media relations, I'm gonna ta- take this, uh, topic, this is, uh, you know, from time to time, there's gonna be topics that come up where you get contacted by the media. It doesn't happen all that often, I mean, we don't have, we don't have, the Salina Journal, uh, is not a real active paper where they're doing a, a lot of stories. We do have one journalist that, that lives in town and does attend all of our meetings, he zooms into all of our meetings and will ask some questions, uh, but, and, and writes, uh, local articles. But we don't have a, you know, we don't have a strong media presence, we don't have KSN or, or, uh, you know, any of the TV stations that have an office in town, but there are.
The new phenomena is high-profile social media post gets picked up by those stations and then they, they follow up, sorry to interrupt.
Yep, so, so generally speaking, um, city manager's office is gonna be the point of contact for anything media with the city. So if, if somebody does contact you from KSN or, or, you know, they say, hey, we have a story, uh, you know, if they want the details and the background, we're happy to provide that. Mike is, is generally the person that ends up, uh, you know, getting behind the camera and going on screen. So i- if there is something that comes up, you know, we're happy to take that on, you can, um, send that to us.
Is that the preference?
Yep, um, yeah, the, you know, the one that happened here recently was the toy parade and that took on a life of its own. And I had multiple commissioners within about fifteen minutes of each other reach out to me, but I, I greatly appreciate that. Uh, the, you know, and that comes up, I, I also get questions that you get emails, the way we've set up our email communications now, it goes to you as the elected officials and doesn't automatically incorporate staff. I, I prefer to be over-informed rather than under-informed, feel free to pass that along and, and we'll sort through it. But, uh, yeah, the, uh, the media items, um, we'll, I'm, schedule a time, again, have an opportunity to kinda collect our thoughts, gather background information. And try to put together a, a response that represents the community well.
Um, if there is some, something that comes up that's a legal issue, we, we're gonna turn that around to the city attorney and, and let Greg and his office handle anything that's a, it's a legal thing. So if there's a pending case that we have going on, you know, you may know something about that case, but it's really, we need to, to direct them to, to legal staff to respond, um, the appropriate way. Um, a- as far as what we do i- in media relations, we, uh, have a number of ways that we get information out. There's a, there's a, a list, kind of a listserv of, of all the media contacts that we sent things out to. So you'll see press releases and I believe all of your email addresses are, are attached to that as well. So anytime the public works department has something that's going on with street maintenance or, or anything like that, um, we send that out to that list. We also have a, a media relations, um, division that, that handles all the Facebook posts and they will, they manage the Facebook posts, they manage things that go out on the website. And we try to get things out, um, and, and kind of inform people, um, in a, in a number of different ways. So, so generally speaking, it seems like when, when there is a topic that comes up, the kind of, uh, you know, wha- what happens generally here is, is there'll be something that happens on social media. And somebody from Wichita, one of the Wichita news stations will see that. Most oftentimes they reach out to the mayor, it's kinda their standard contact is to, to try and go to the mayor. Um, so it, it's not uncommon for other commissioners as well to get contacted in some of those, um, some of those instances. What we'd ask you to remember is that if you do talk to them and you're certainly welcome to talk to the media if you want to, I mean, we, we can't tell you not to. But just remember that if you are talking to the media, it is your individual perspective as one member of the board, um, you know, try not to speak for the, the board as a whole. And try to speak for yourselves that, um, and, and just, it's just important that, that you don't say something that is your individual feeling that comes across as something that, you know, the entire board. Is making a decision or, or moving on. So I'm gonna go through just a list of kinda do's and don'ts if you do talk to the, um, to the media. So, so first, look at it as, as an, uh, an opportunity to positively spread, you know, news about the city. If somebody wants to come and ask you questions, uh, we take that as an opportunity to try and have positive communication. Be honest and sincere, try not to be defensive. Be brief, you don't wanna, you don't wanna speak too long or, or ramble on and on, so try to keep it as brief as possible. Uh, be energetic, enthusiastic and entertaining, try to be positive, get your positive viewpoints out. Always listen carefully to the question that's being asked and, and if you need clarification, it's okay to ask for that. You know, maintain, maintain eye contact and, and try to be friendly, it's really important not to be defensive. You get defensive and, uh, the problem with news media is, is they're only gonna take whatever portion of the conversation that they wanna take, they think they can make the best story out of. So, you know, you may talk to them for thirty minutes and they may take a fifteen-second clip of something that you said, um, you know, you responded that maybe came off as a little aggressive or, or not positive. And they're gonna take that and, and kinda run with it, so you just have to be cautious about the way that you talk to media, um, cause you don't know how they're gonna, you don't know what they're trying to get at. You, you may not know what angle they're trying to take, what story they're trying to tell and they may not tell you, you know, on the front end. They may say, this is a topic I wanna talk about, but you don't exactly know where they're trying to go with it, so just try to maintain that positivity.
So Jacob alluded to it, but one specific that I had recently and I'm trying to be mindful of all this, it was literally like a forty-five-minute conversation with, uh, reporter at KWCH. And he, he offered up a, a long editorial comment and then just looked at me and I was a little, you know, uh, edgy and said, is that a question? That was the prominent part of the, the video that he pulled out and, and admittedly I, I shouldn't, in forty-five minutes, I, I let my guard down, I, I shouldn't have done that. And it, it didn't come off horribly, but it, it, there was public feedback that, uh, that I was being a smart ass.
It's called fake news.
Yep, uh, and, you know, that's not an uncommon response if you want to be argumentative, but I, if I had it to do over again, I just wouldn't have said it. The other thing I would tell you is they spend quite a bit of time setting up, setting their camera up and they, they put the mic on you and tearing things down. Uh, you're, you're on the mic that entire time, just, if, if you're in that setting, just be mindful of that.
I will comment that, uh, Jared Cooper with three-one-one contacted me recently with some questions and she's taking over covering the city and county government. And it's just been the last couple of weeks, but I think she's doing a really good job rather than taking and copying and pasting our blue sheets.
Yeah, I have noticed that she's, that, I mean, it's been much more quick, I mean, the response, so the discussion that we had on Monday.
Explaining what was, what happened.
Right, hey, we postponed this decision, I mean, it was a, a little bit more than just a, I mean, and that was that night, it came out very quickly that, hey, the city commission postponed the decision. On, on the chicken ordinances and they're gonna talk about it later, so, yeah, I thought that was really good.
So I think it's a, a good job and the media is important, you know, to inform the people in a, an honest, fair way. And you're right, the, uh, the news cycle is different today and I like the how she's getting out there at, you know, right on top of it rather than three or four days later.
But I would give them credit too, they, when we had the social media items, they, it was obvious they wanted to get the full perspective. They weren't just jumping on to, uh, one side of the topic or, or just accepting things without verifying, so that's encouraging.
So, so here's just a list of things that, that you probably shouldn't do when you're working with the media. Uh, don't say anything that you don't wanna see printed or aired, I mean, this is kinda the same, uh, same thing, you, you don't write an email or put it in print if you don't expect other people to see it. So, um, when you're talking to them, uh, you, you really can't go off the record, don't go off the record, their, their ability to use whatever you say. Um, you know, you could say I'm going off the record, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's, uh, not gonna end up somewhere. Uh, don't discuss sensitive and confidential information, so as a city commission, uh, you know, that really includes things that are executive session topics. When you go into executive session, you're expected that you don't bring that stuff out. So, um, those are the kinda topics that media, they, they may wanna ask questions about because they know you went behind closed doors to, to have a discussion. So that's stuff that, um, you know, you, you shouldn't discuss. Uh, don't volunteer or repeat negative or inaccurate information. So, you know, if there's a, a topic or something that comes up where they're, you know, trying to say that we're doing something negative, um, you know, kinda try and shy away from repeating what they're saying. Or agreeing with them on some, you know, some topic or point that's a, that's a negative viewpoint. Now, if it's, you, you be honest, I mean, you don't wanna say anything that's untrue, um, but it, it's important to not try to, you know, try to shy away from, from painting us in a bad light or painting the city in a bad light.
And the other thing there is it's just human nature to be critical, i- i- in, in a defensive mode, to be critical of the other viewpoint. So it's not only, don't go negative about, you know, us, it may refrain from being negative about, you know, the, whatever the, uh, source of that, that question is. Whether it's a development, a citizen, whatever the case may be, that just doesn't come off well either.
Yeah, try not to use jargon or acronyms or initials or things like that, I mean, if we're, you know, you're, if you use that stuff, the, the public may not understand exactly what you're talking about, so try to use common terms. As I said, tell the truth, don't lie, uh, or make, uh, personal comments about a fellow, uh, official or citizen, uh, you know, just try to shy away from, um, sharing your opinion about somebody, even if it is negative. Don't gas or speculate about what you think the outcome might be.
Another thing that I would add, it kinda is touched on here, but, and when I was in the Kansas City metro area, some of the larger communities, you would see elected officials essentially advocating their position on the media. Openly trying to influence the rest of the, of the governing body, um, and that just has a chilling effect on the, the working relationship amongst you as, as fellow governing body members. So you have an opportunity to collaborate with each other and, and if the first that your fellow commissioners are reading about it is, or seeing it is in the media, um, that just undermines your working relationship. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that any, do it intentionally, but sometimes it's easy to just get tripped up and, and head off in that direction and then after the fact realize, oh, wait a minute, I might've run too far ahead on this.
Yeah, and, and it's okay to tell, you know, if somebody wants to interview you and you wanna say, hey, I don't, I don't wanna do it right now, let me, can we schedule a time at a later point? And you want some additional information, you wanna come talk to us and we can dig in and get you some additional information, you know, you're not, they're gonna tell you always, they say, oh, I have a deadline or, or, you know, whatever. Uh, but you're not required, you don't have to talk to them at that, you know, specific moment or time. If you need to gather yourself and get some additional information, um, take the time to do that, cause it's better on the backside. To, to have all the information that you wanna have to get out rather than trying to, um, you know, kinda giving a half answer on the front side. Any questions about media relations, I know that was pretty quick, I mean, the bottom line is if you got questions about how the media is, you know, contacting you or, or whatever, ask and we'll, we'll try and help you through that situation. I mean, it doesn't happen very often here, but there are times, uh, as we've said with social media posts, that, you know, something goes viral and, and they, they will come and ask some questions.
So one thing that we don't do is go point, counterpoint in social media. Uh, we monitor it and it, on occasion, if there's a clarification to be made or if, if it merits some, you know, additional action on our part. But we consciously are not asking staff nor our city manager or others going in and, and engaging in that, that back and forth communication on social media. It, you create that expectation and it'll never end, it, it's a workload that we probably couldn't keep up with and, um, that, and I guess my personal opinion, that's not a productive conversation. They, they're, they're not there to be, uh, persuaded and, and reach some consensus, it's just a, it's a sport.
And I think that's good advice to all commissioners, to just stay off.
We monitor it and it, it's a good indication of, you know, concerns and conversation that's going on, but, um, we just have, have not tried to engage back and forth.
Okay, logistical matters, now, I, actually, we had a pretty good conversation about a lot of this stuff early on, so I'm not gonna hit, uh, hit too hard on some of this. I think most of you kind of are already aware of, you know, if you need staff assistance, if you need something, uh, generally go through Mike and he'll direct you in the right way. If it's somebody else that needs to, to be contacted, you're welcome to contact Holly as well, if you've got questions. I know Holly's gonna be kinda the point of contact for your schedules and, and those sorts of things, so you'll have a lot of contact with her. She also will take all the mail that comes into the city commission, she does, um, she does open all the mail and, and look through it and make sure that, uh, we get it to the right people. If you need any, any supplies or anything, you know, that, that you feel like you need to be successful as a city commissioner, that would be the point of contact as well, i- if you need something from Holly or from us. Uh, training and reimbursement, there are training opportunities that come up, uh, from the League of Kansas Municipalities. Uh, we've had some commissioners go to National League of Cities conferences, uh, we do have a budget in the city commission's, uh, department budget, uh, that includes travel and training. So if there's something that you see and I, I, Holly will, generally if those opportunities come in, Holly's gonna provide you the, whatever the flyer or the magazine, I know you guys get, uh, quite a few of those things. If there's something that you're interested in going to, just let us know and we'll help coordinate all of, all of that, all the travel, training, reimbursement.
Yeah, and it's full reimbursement, mileage, meals, accommodations, um, I mean, we'll make those arrangements for you, but it, don't feel like you're gonna be out some personal expense if you're.
You've already been on facility tours, uh, just recently, but if there is a time that something comes up and you would like to go and take another look, uh, just let us know, we'll help coordinate and, and get you into a facility, would be happy to do that. And I'm gonna go into.
The last two bullet points there, the, my con, the city manager contract and legal council contract are in the packet, um, and those are public information out on the website as well.
Then we've got a, a brief section here on contracts for services, these are things that we are, we go into kinda great detail, um, during the budget process. Uh, you know, Ambux is somebody that we provide, uh, funding for, for, uh, for Skyfire, that's actually changed a little bit since this was last done. And now, uh, JRI has provided that funding and we didn't budget it for this year. Municipal Band is something that's been in place for a really long time and we provide funding and we also pro- provide, uh, uh, space for them, uh, at the Friendship Center, uh, to practice and rehearse. They used to be over at Memorial Hall, um, but we moved them out last year. OCCK, uh, runs public transportation, so that's a pretty big contract for service that, that we have annually and as part of the budget process, every year we will kinda talk through their requests for funding and, and go through those things.
As a little bit of perspective on those, Salina Ambux, our contribution's been five, six thousand dollars and, uh, they, I'm a member of Ambux, so I kinda know in passing, uh, that shows like a fifteen, twenty or a thousand or more show. I can tell you from being in other communities, it's not uncommon, they expect that the city's gonna provide the fireworks show at city expense, so. The JRA transition is, is kind of a marketing opportunity for them, but it's, it's helpful for us to not have to carry that expense and then the. And then the, uh, OCCK funding, uh, is a little bit of a unique arrangement, but there are other cities our size and larger, that's a whole department in and of itself of the city, and so, um, that's a sizable number, but it's not uncommon for that to be a city operation altogether. And, uh, we do carve out the portion that they do, the funding that is applicable to city services and we don't fund their other activities that maybe in the county, abilene, other activities that are beyond city services.
Ambux stepped out on the fireworks.
They did, yeah, JRI, uh, last year stepped in and, and it was kind of a last minute transition, but, uh, and the communication was a little helter skelter, so, um, I think there'll be some ongoing follow-up from them about what do we continue to fund them? Or, I'd say fund them, continue to contribute.
And then Sliding Downtown Inc., they, uh, they get some of their funding from, um, from the BID fees from downtown and then also they have some money from CID or from the, yeah, the CID downtown. Um, and we also support them just from general fund dollars. We provide some funding, uh, for some of their operations and then we also provide, um, funding for the facade program. So, Central Kansas Foundation, St. Francis Academy, Ashby House, um, and Twenty-Eight Judicial District. These are, uh, are entities that we fund through, um, special alcohol tax, so, uh, every, uh, we receive a percentage of alcohol tax back to the city and it's to be provided for certain services, so, uh, substance abuse, treatment, um, those sorts of things and tho- that money is, is funneled out to these organizations. And then, um, the Chamber, uh, they provide tourism prevention promotion services for us. Transient guest tax goes to, uh, fund visit Salina. So, forty-seven percent of our transient guest tax goes for that, that purpose. And then, uh, Salina Community Economic Development Organization, S C E D O, um, that is an agreement between the City Chamber, County, um, Airport Authority where we provide funding and, uh, we're at, um, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, um, in 2024. And I believe that will be up for renewal here.
And we, we are, uh, the largest contributor by far.
So, those are just some of the contracts for services. There's, there's nothing else in this section. Any questions or anything about any of these topics that, that you'd like us to dig into more?
Uh, was Salina Grace on the list?
No, no, I think we need to add.
We need, we should probably add them.
Add them.
We, that's a recent, uh, request that they made and we funded them for their, uh, Salina Grace.
Oh.
Uh, for their homeless operations and I think the, well, uh, when we were talking about strategic planning, I, one thing I forgot to mention was kind of a list of anticipated topics that, and homelessness is on that list. The, you know, comments from Julia Orlando and her recommendations about a low barrier shelter are something that we, uh, probably need to discuss. I don't know that it's safe to assume that Salina Grace would, would take that on. It's a very different level of operation on their part, but I think, uh, we'll be having conversations about homelessness, uh, response in general and then Salina Grace's role in that among other providers.
So, is there a, you know, an individual in, you said human relations or development services?
Uh, community relations.
Community relations.
Yep, Michelle Martin is the division head in community relations. She used to be with Catholic Charities, so kinda had some working relationships with those agencies already and, uh, she's taken kinda the lead role on our behalf as it relates to, uh, coordinating with the other agencies. She was, uh, instrumental in, in the, um, oh, the pit count, the point in time count that we did in January to try to identify homeless population numbers and, um, I, I expect there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for further coordination of services that are being provided and service gaps and, and then part of that'll probably be a conversation with the, the city about how we wanna, what role we wanna take and whether we wanna assist them in some way.
Has there been any updates on progress of Salina Grace getting into the new building?
Uh, Lauren and I, well, Lauren will be here later today. She might be able to speak, eh, the, was there a variance that they, I think they were going forward with a variance for their smoking. Yeah, so I think that, the permits in and I think that's the issue, I think it was imminent, uh, going before the B Z A. But beyond that, I, I don't know any additional specifics.
I don't, uh, well, um, I, I know they, they've looked at, at, at other items too. I don't know where they're exactly at on that as far as what they're, I haven't talked with Chad about that, but, uh, you know, I know they've, they've, that they're looking at other facilities. It doesn't mean that they're necessarily moving there, they're just keeping their, uh, options open.
I did have a question on our legal services agreement. That's from 'oh six. Have those hours or, or fees changed?
Yeah, there is, there is a provision for annual updates and the city manager signs off on those. Um, I just recently did and I, I can get you that information. There, eh, we, we have hours on retainer that, eh, eh, they attend, um, exec- executive staff meetings, city commission meetings. It's just kind of a predetermined commitment and then they have an hourly rate for, uh, principals and others.
Talked about in the original agreement, two hundred and fifty hours per year. We'll blow through that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And I didn't, and this didn't address any additional compensation of.
Oh, okay, yeah, they're, they, they have an hourly rate depending on, uh, the level of staff and they've been pretty.
That must be in an assignment or something.
Yeah, I, we, I can get you that information, but, um, relatively speaking, their rate is, is, uh, competitive with comparable legal services and they've been pretty, um, good about nominal increases in rates on annual renewal. All right, well, lunch is supposed to be here shortly, but, eh, throw it open to any general questions or feedback at this point. Okay. I think lunch is, eh, may be there already. If not, it's supposed to be there in five minutes, so, and it's, uh, across the hall.
All right, well, as you can see, we have some others joining us and the agenda, uh, has Lauren and Debbie and I mentioned earlier the promotion of Margie Clem. Margie's on, on the end here. She was, uh, development coordinator. She's now Deputy Director of Development Services and on the verge of completing her Masters in Public Administration at Wichita State. So, I will turn it over to primarily Lauren, but I think our agenda has Debbie in the lineup as well, so we'll just, uh, take it from there.
Okay, well, it's a little intense to be the entire afternoon's entertainment, but we will try. I think some of this information will be a refresher for a few of you, some of it, it will be new information. We're gonna start off with talking about kinda community and development services as a whole. It is a unique department, not necessarily unique as a municipality, but unique in the fact that we are kind of Jack and Jills of all trades. When something doesn't fit somewhere else, it often comes to us. So, we're gonna talk about kind of how that plays into what our workload looks like and the things that we've done this year and kind of our daily duties. What I'll also add to our department that's kind of unique is we are very, um, reflective of change. The things that are happening in our community, whether we're growing, we're shrinking, there's a big project, there's a series of new projects, we have fiscal impacts, we have, um, environmental impacts, you'll see all of those first in our department. Because a lot of what is happening comes through our doors, through permits and a variety of other things. So, as a department, we're constantly monitoring and having to stay nimble to kind of react to these things or to sometimes kinda hold things together when they're a little crazy. So, where other departments kind of, this is what we do. I'm gonna talk about utilities, right? Water, gotta get the water from point A to point B. The water's gotta be clean. Sewers, everybody's gotta have them. Our workload isn't like that. It's very symbiotic with what's happening in the community. So, with that, next slide.
Just keep talking. At some point, I'm gonna figure out how to get this slide to transition, something's happened.
I have paper.
Yeah, I have paper, okay, perfect. So, for topics for discussion and overview, we're gonna talk about some of the, the numbers and a little bit of just kind of the makeup so you understand how the organization works, but then we're gonna talk about some of, kind of the unique and special features. If you look on page three, that is our org chart. I work directly for Mike, like most directors, and then we have primarily four divisions. So, Margie works directly for me as the deputy and the new development coordinator who starts the twenty-second will work directly for Margie and we kind of make up that core team that kinda keeps things moving throughout the department. Planning and zoning is one of our divisions. That's headed by the zoning administrator and they have three planners in that division. We have building services and that is headed up by the building official. And in there we have four building inspectors. That's the most we've had in a very long time. But, as you'll see as we get into some of the numbers, we're also doing the most building permits and inspections than we have in a really long time. So, that is very useful right now. And then on the property maintenance side of things, we have three inspectors. I currently have one vacancy in building inspector and one vacancy in property maintenance. I think we're hopeful to get those filled. We have been doing a lot of hiring, interviewing after the first of the year because we had four new positions that you graciously funded come into the department, so trying to kinda fill those. I had some people, um, internally take new positions, so filling their vacated positions. We also have community relations. That is headed by the community relations supervisor and there are two community relations specialists in that division. Um, and lastly, we have administration, which is headed up by that supervisor and then there are three techs and an administrative assistant. We have a lot of contact with the public, so, having a front desk person that has that, you know, that job of first impressions and working with the public and their immediate needs, we try rarely to ever have the phones when we're open, go to voicemail. They go to a live person. If the front desk person is working with somebody, it goes to a permit tech who backs that up. So, we try really hard to have those first point of contact and then the techs are making sure that that work is complete. But we'll get more into that when we talk about each individual division.
So, somewhat in support of the point Lauren made previously, this is the only department we've given a slot like this on orientation and part of the reason being is it just the unique, uh, conversation that it generates at, at the community level and at the city commission level. It, you know, historically, it's probably even more of a topic as, as related to, uh, predating Lauren and, and predating myself even as deputy, that kind of our approach to code enforcement. I think we're, we're in development services and permitting. Uh, we've made a lot of headway there, but it is just a lot of interaction. It's very project specific, um, code enforcement can be frustrating, development, permitting, all that is about as complex as it gets.
Jacob, if you're moving slides along, we're on four.
Question here. This, uh, new employee Daisy Miller Wells. Is that Ma- Miller Wells's wife?
Uh, no, I don't think she's married.
No, I don't. I think that might be her brother.
Her brother?
Yes.
Just coincidental, we got a, the same, two last name combinations.
Yeah, she does have a brother and I think he's married in town. No, she is not. Okay, moving on, so, slide four. We are very unique in the fact to, probably next to like P D and fire, we have a very code-intensive workload. Um, people don't often think that, you know, outside of law enforcement or fire, that your job is very legally intensive, but ours really is. We live by several sections of municipal code, so, and speaking of fire and P D, we actually often work with them a lot on their work, where an activity's happened, whether it's criminal or, or regulatory under their purview and we may have associated rules and statutes that go with that, so we are often working with them. Um, but we do, under chapter two administrative, as you're probably familiar, that's where several of the boards and commissions, if they don't have a specific code section, live under that, so that, and as we'll see, we run seven boards and commissions. So, um, we're always kinda keeping track of our boards and commissions, what their bylaws are, what their board makeup, absences, all those things. So, those are in chapter two for Accessibility Advisory Board, commonly referred to as A A B. That's in there for the Business Improvement District, which is over downtown, the bid, and it's also where information regarding the land bank is at. Chapter five is alcoholic beverages. We have our own permitting pieces, um, pertaining to alcoholic beverages. So, how we enforce that and how we work with the state. We do a lot of permit review, um, license verification with the state and then also looking at the maintenance of that code too, you know, are, are, how are we changing it? How do we comply with things that have changed at the state, that kinda thing. Chapter six is one of our newer chapters, but that's arts, commerce and entertainment. That's where you find circuses and tent shows, adult-oriented businesses, arts, commerce and entertainment district and special events. So, um, for instance, if you're putting an adult business in, there are rules about where that can be located, nearness to other facilities, those types of things. We handle all of that permitting. And as you're, we'll talk about later, um, the ACE district and special event permit are, um, some different pieces of our workload that have come up in the last couple of years. Chapter eight is building and structural apparatus, so our building team deals a lot with building code, of course, contractor licensing and building advisory board. That is the board that manages, um, the group of individuals. It, it's composed of different, um, architects, plumbers, electricians and a variety of folks who help to review our code. In fact, they're going through code review right now. Chapter thirteen is our equal opportunity chapter. This handles civil rights enforcement for the city regarding housing, public accommodation and equal opportunity employment in, or equal opportunity for employment and the makeup of the Human Relations Commission. Chapter twenty-nine is Planning Commission. It's its own chapter specifically identified and breaking down the different pieces of the Planning Commission. As we'll talk about, when we talk about boards and commissions, the Planning Commission is very unique. It's one type of board that you will see across the state, that every community has to have one and so there are state statutes regarding how that's made up, how it works, what it does, so that's a very particular section. Chapter thirty-one is property maintenance, so this gets into, you know, code enforcement as city manager Scragg was mentioning, um, whether it's nuisance abatements, um, dealing with dangerous structures, fire and explosion, windstorm. I think people would be really surprised. For instance, my inspectors can get called out on a Saturday night cuz a drunk driver hit a building and we're the ones who are called in to verify the building is still structurally safe. We're also the ones that are called in when a hoarder house is found and unfortunately sometimes a, maybe a body is found in there and that building needs to be secured up and verified that it's safe. We go in and take care of those things. So, we have some unique things just beyond grass and weeds that we take care of when it comes to property issues. We also work with the health department sometimes, um, they have different cases and they may let us know about infestations or whether it's bedbugs or other types of insects or rodents that need to be investigated. We also get into some of that. Chapter forty-two zoning regulation, that's of course, you know, what are those zones, what are allowed in those zones, but also handling things like floodplain, how do you work with the Board of Zoning Appeals? Um, Heritage Commission is also one of our other boards and then maps and boundaries.
You also have chapter thirty-six, which is subdivision, right?
Yeah, well, we share that in our relationship with engineering and public works cuz they're really the keepers of the right of way and all road is right of way. Um, so, how that's built, how that's designed, really lives with them. We end up helping to enforce that chapter when we start getting into plating and subdivision design. So, it's one of a couple different spots in the development process that we have that mutual relationship with engineering. Next slide, please.
It'll transition. Something about the communication between here and over there is not working.
Um, all right.
You need to see it coming five minutes early.
Yeah, it, I don't know why it's taking so long, but it will transition, maybe.
So, as I mentioned, we have seven boards and commissions. Um, it's a lot. I won't, I, I can't tell you, it's not my first municipality to have. Look at that, the slide's there. Um, it's not my first municipality to have this many. I've had six at one point in my career, I've had eight at one point in my career. So it's it's not uncommon for a department like ours. As I mentioned, we have B A B. That's the piece that works with our building team. We have community relations under them. They have accessibility advisory board, and they also have the human relations commission. And we have planning commission along with Board of Zoning Appeals. We have the heritage commission, the design review board or DRB, and planning commission. Oh, sorry, planning boards. So planning runs four boards. BZA, DRB, heritage commission, and planning commission. We tell new hires who are kind of like, oh, wow, you know, that's that's a lot. There's almost not one week out of the year I don't have a packet going out the door. I often have two to three. Thank you for changing city commission schedule because on top of that, I used to have a packet in the city commission almost every week. So it creates the rhythm is what we call it, the rhythm in which we work by. It's the one constant for us. These boards don't really change their schedules. So like I said, I have this ebb and flow of all these other things, but this, this is constant. And the rules are super clear. What goes in the packet, when the packet goes out the door, how the notification goes, that is the heartbeat of the department. So for us, where some departments kind of, you know, they have a board meet quarterly or maybe even monthly, I have multiples meeting all the time and some of them even having subcommittees. Right now I have B A B going through code revision and they're meeting what, every other week? Plus maintaining their other boards.
Plus some of your action items have publication requirements that dictate our entire timeline to us and that it's impacted by late applications and hiccups.
Yeah, that's that's another good point. I mean, that heartbeat stays consistent even with the work that comes in the door. I don't often get to pick that it can just go to another meeting. Code says it will be heard at the next meeting or it has 30 days of, you know, a review period before it has to be seen, those types of things. So it's it's very particular. Let's talk about some numbers. So I mentioned those seven boards and commissions and the multitude of things they do. So we had 74 public meetings, including 17 building advisory subcommittee meetings in 2023. So each of those creates roughly 11.75 hours of administrative work. That does not include what staff has to do to produce materials for the meeting. So I've got five items on planning commission, the staff reports, the handouts, the analysis, all those things that go into that are not even included. It's just the administration of that process. And I will tell you, we watch that process very carefully and we are about as efficient at it as you can get. We we have digitized as much of it. The fact that I can tell you takes 11.75 hours means that I am carefully monitoring that. We also, and it's never foolproof, but the other thing is when you have seven boards and commissions that has seven opportunities to screw up when it comes to the documentation through public records requests, proper notification, proper documentation. So we have standardized, thanks COVID, all of our, all of our agendas, all of our minutes to have all those pieces. So I don't have one board or commission forgetting to say the thing that they're supposed to say. Their packets are standardized, how they turn them in, and then they're audited on the last day of every month to make sure I'm not missing a piece. Because if I am, hello Attorney General. So and then I lose, what, five days of productivity to just trying to track that stuff down. So an hour and a half of the admin supervisor's time on the last day of the month to run through and audit those packets. If something has been missed, we can self-report rather than somebody bringing it up. But it does have a consistency to how that runs. So roughly 1,000 hours of work or 136 days or 52% of our working days a year has something board or commission involved. And sometimes I've 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 worked on this over the years and people say, oh, my gosh, that's a lot of time. How, you know, we've got to do less of this. Do we need less boards? Some of this is just what it costs to make sure the public has opportunity. And 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 I think it's important to recognize that, you know, when we open up those opportunities for the public, we have to do it right. And there are rules that we have to follow, but they have to be there. And a lot of these boards are involved in processes and other things that we have in statute to say that they are the recommending body, they are the reviewing body, they are the deciding body. And of these, the majority of them have an obligation to use the city commission to make recommendations to you, particularly the planning commission. It's a, it's kind of a unique piece there. It has actually some of its own quasi judicial duties that it can make certain decisions by state statute that actually don't come to you. And then on other issues, they are the direct recommendation to you. So that burden in and of itself is where a lot of our heavy workload comes through and it's where often our most complicated work comes through. And as we talk about our design review team, I think it'll kind of highlight why those projects are so complicated. So the planning commission, as I mentioned, has a unique workload and they reviewed, made recommendations, or reached final decisions on 48 land use related applications in 2023. We have done a significant more amount of plats in this last year. I see Commissioner Hafick shaking his head. I think we have in the last 10 years. So it has, and that in itself kind of kicks off several other landy sections. So you don't, you rarely do you just plat. You're going to plat, you're probably going to have to annex, you're probably going to have to rezone in certain situations because our comprehensive plan is older. I've got to do a map amendment. I might have economic incentives in there. And suddenly one plat becomes six to seven pieces of work. So that development process is really, it's compounded. And so holding on to all those pieces, timing those pieces and getting them to work is a huge part of what we do, along with how it plays into all those boards and commissions. So just to give you a little bit of a comparison, we've got 2022, 35 cases, 21, we're picking up to 44. 2020, we're at 10. That's kind of a COVID number. 2019, we're at 37. I'm sorry, I'm going backwards. We've got a low number in 2020. We start to pick up in 2021 at 40. And then 2022, we're at 35 cases. So we're, we are definitely seeing that increase. I'll note too, there's kind of a long list and I don't want to have to read it verbatim, but there's a long list of the types of actions that we're doing. I will tell you, we have it on the SubCIP to work towards a new comprehensive plan and a comprehensive zoning rewrite. We are very due for those. They typically have a 20-year shelf life. And we're at 24 going on 25 years from ours. And kind of like a doctor would give you a physical. And maybe when you're young, you wouldn't have as many ailments, right? But you can start to see as a comp plan ages, the knees start to go, the back starts to go. It has ailments, it has illness. And you see that through the number of the types of permits we see come through the door. I have more code amendments. I have more requests for variances. I have more map amendments. It means that the document is not as reflective of the community now as it was then. And it's meant to be a forward looking document, but it's not psychic. It's supposed to get you 10 to 20 years. And we're, we're surpassing that, surpassing that time period with a ton of growth and change. So we are definitely due for that. So that's also one of those things that kind of pushes on the workload of the planning commission when we're at that point with a comp plan. Our DRT is our design review team and I've got a slide where we'll get into that. Pretty much any development that comes through the community is welcome to go through this process. I just did this yesterday and Mike was in the meeting. Actually, Mike used to run these and I have inherited them. But it's, it's a great process and a lot of communities have modeled themselves off of our community. And I don't know any outside developer who doesn't marvel at like what a resource it is. But whether it's a twinkle in your eye or you're ready to submit your permits, we'll, we'll meet with you every Wednesday. Mine, Margie, and several other people's calendars are booked out for you to come in and walk us through your project and then for us to give you feedback to prepare you for your project, whether it's what you need to submit, how you need to submit it. We also work particularly on really big projects, kind of customizing multi-phase stuff like schwans. You know, this part of the building is going to be done, so we need to be able to open this part and, but we're still working on this. How do we break up the permits? How do we go over those reviews? So all those things go through us. And as you, no. As you can see, like we have really picked these up. When I first started with the city, you know, we, I don't know, we do maybe one, we could go a couple of weeks and not have one. There isn't a week really anymore that we don't have them or we're stacked. And so it really, it's very helpful for us too, because we start to get an idea of what's in front of us. And from a workload perspective as a director, I start to get an idea of what I've got coming in permit wise and what staff time might look like based on some of these projects that are kind of not getting pitched, but getting explained and and looking at possibilities.
Two things that I would tell you is the great, we see, in my experience, we've seen the greatest level of appreciation for DRT from the most experienced developers. The people that are doing it for a living, that are doing it outside of Salina, that are doing it regionally or nationally are blown away by the process that Lauren's going to get into. Locally, we do it a lot, but I don't know if they have the exposure to, you know, the alternative, what, how other communities handle it. It's, it's been perfected over a number of years. The other thing is the, when we say we'll meet with anyone, we met with two sisters that literally had a piece of spiral paper they tore out, handed around the room with their hand drawn floor plan on a building that they were thinking about renting. It was that speculative. It never came to pass, but we were taking them from no exposure whatsoever through zoning and permitting and and the whole nine yards.
We also use it as kind of a, in CPI, we'd call it like a rate control opportunity. Like I already have that time blocked consistently and the other people who are in those meetings. And so sometimes it's not really an all DRT thing, but it does need a group of people to kind of come together around it. Maybe it's a plat technical review. Maybe it is particularly on huge, like the big industrial projects, they have subcomponents to them. And maybe it's time just for like just building to meet with one of those large projects. But the nice thing is we use that as kind of a guaranteed time to kind of move some of those things in, which I think has a real positive impact on not only process, but also customer service. Building permits, we issued 1,650 building permits, which included 500 building permits issued for new construction additions, renovations, remodels, for a total square foot valuation of almost $2 million. So I mean, that is a lot of moving and shaking. We had building permits. We've got 500 noted there. I had 248 last year. So we, we've seen a significant difference. I had 980 LSRs versus 763 LSRs. That's an increase of 217 LSRs, which are pretty much the water heater inspections and a lot of the quick mechanical inspections and things like that. So not a full building inspection. We've also, in the new build world, particularly in residential, and we're going to talk about housing this afternoon, we have so monitored our new home inspection that we average eight hours a new home, which has been really helpful for us to understand so that when I look at those plats coming in the door and I see that they're set for residential and I can see how many homes are on them and I know their phasing plan, which is one of the things that we did and why you gave us new building inspectors this year. And is that I know that I don't have enough building inspectors to even handle the houses that are being proposed through the plats. And those are, you know, in the past, we've had subdivisions develop, you know, over 10 years. We're looking at airplanes, we're looking at south view stuff that I know on the clock based off their development agreement, they've got to get done in a certain timeframe. And when I look at how many people I had on staff and the amount of time it took to do that, math didn't math. So that's one of the things that we have been looking at and combing, combing that data to try and understand and be able to project a bit more.
This is probably a good place to point out that our inspections are spot inspections. They're not continuous inspections. I have a meeting tomorrow with a disgruntled homeowner that has an expectation that we would be continuously inspecting fill and plumbing and it's not unique to Salina. It's a legal concept in terms of what our responsibilities are. We, we have a responsibility to the public at large and there's a recognition that we're essentially keeping them honest and looking for that they're following trade practices, but down to the fitting, down to the, to the intimate detail. That's not the level of inspection or responsibility.
As Mike mentioned, we've been working very hard on compliance, particularly on property maintenance. We have put a lot of time into really streamlining that process. Sean Homan, our building official, is also a green belt with CPI and his project was a warrant process and being able to set our warrants up in a very efficient way to get them over, get them approved so that we could get to some of the more difficult projects using warrants to handle that work. In addition, Margie has digitized a ton of our, our process related to compliance so that billing to our abatement contractor, billing to what we send to the county and how we process it through the system is much more efficient than it used to be. So we did 2,814 new complaints last year. Our inspectors typically are out and about, but a lot of our work is complaint driven. So I'd say it's almost 50/50 from what the guys see out in the field. And I'm saying guys because they're both guys. So what the guys see out in the field and then what we get in, there's a variety of sources that we get complaints. Sometimes they call, sometimes they email. There's also the citizen portal on the website in which people can send a digital complaint in. But that 2,814 is an increase from 2022 by 519. So again, we're out, we're more efficient. The guys are out there doing what they need to do. You gotta go back or is it delayed?
It takes a minute and 10 seconds to transition from one slide to the next.
So not all complaints.
You need to give us one minute warning.
You do the hand, go. So on, on complaints, what I will note is not all complaints turn into violations. So, but all complaints are investigated. So that means they, an investigation order is put in, it goes on to one of the two inspectors' list for the day and they're out and they're running those to ground verifying. If a violation is required, then we would issue a violation notice and we have a violation notice increase of 816 violations since 2022. So again.
And state statute provides that on tall grass and weeds, one notice for the year and then we don't have to provide notice subsequent time. So our, our notice communicates that and some people get confused by that. But essentially, if you receive a tall grass and weed notice at the beginning of the season and you continue to have tall grass and weeds, you won't, you'll, it'll get abated at your expense, but you won't get advanced notices.
Every three, four weeks without a new notice or whatever.
Yeah.
She said there was a, somewhere on the website portal too?
Yeah, so on the website that there's like a citizen portal where you can make a complaint, you could request a special pickup. There's a whole series of stuff. It's like, it's a drop down menu and one of them is a code compliance or property maintenance complaint. But you can also email us. It's also on our website and you can call the office. And like I said, we always have a person answering the phone 99.9% of the time.
I, I tell people to call it neighborhood services. Is that correct?
Yeah. It back in the day, it used to be its own separate division, but it's all technically, and I know that's what we're here to talk about today, technically we, it's under the umbrella of building. So building inspections and then neighborhood services are all under the building official.
Are those complaints done anonymously or?
Little bit of both.
They can be though.
Correct. Yep. It's, yeah, majority of them are. But it can, you know, sometimes when it's health issue, you know, it.
Like chickens?
Okay, so next slide, Jacob.
Different department.
Yeah, that's right. That's an animal thing. Though, I mean, it's interesting that you should bring that up though. I mean, there, there's a crossover sometimes in that, that people know us, maybe they know, you know, animal services for dogs and cats. But a lot of times we'll get the call about a pig, about a flock of peacocks, about, you know, a goat.
If it's a land use question, can I do this on my property? That very well could be planning. And then you actually do it, it can become an animal services item.
Yeah, so a lot of times we'll, on those, it's like, well, let's get you to where you need to be. Or sometimes like our guys are out inspecting and they, they come across it, you know, somebody, you know, livestock, for instance, as defined by city code is not allowed. So goats, pigs, no matter how cute the fainting goat is, it is not allowed in city limits. So. I really need you to go back to, why don't you?
Department by the numbers?
Yeah, the online resources one.
The one you were on before she asked you to go back on.
That'll take eight minutes.
Sorry. Sorry.
Assistant me. Sure seems like it.
This is so rough.
We got, we got paper.
I know. The only thing is this slide has hyperlinks that I need him to open. Uh, can you, can you just open the city's website?
Yeah. In eight minutes.
Sorry guys, I didn't.
I, I think it's going to be slow though.
It worked great this morning.
It did.
I don't know what happened. I don't know.
I mean, is it just a PowerPoint? I mean, if you?
No, it's, I'm, it's.
That's the wrong direction.
Planning.
Yeah, it's not going to work.
If you just shut the PowerPoint off and go to the city's website, will it work?
No, I'm off.
Uh, there you go.
Wait, okay. Hit, hit a link quick.
I'm not, I'm not there.
Oh.
That's not what's on the screen. That is a minute ago.
That's not on the screen.
It, it's taken a minute, 10 seconds to transition from one screen to the next. So I, I don't know.
Well, how about I talk and if you could try and get to the city's website, but then if, even if we got on it, it won't do what it's supposed to? Okay. Well, I'm just, I wanted to tell you a little bit about the resources that we have.
Step in front and act it out.
I need the website though. Um, so just, I know as commissioners, a lot of times you're talking with a citizen. You know, somebody's talking to you about a project that they're working on. I just wanted to give you a little idea of the amount of tools and resources that we have on the website for folks. So we do have a developer's portal. And, you know, part of that name is to make it as clear as possible who is supposed to be in there. And from that developer's portal, you can get to our mapping, you can get to our economic incentives page. You can request a DRT. Um, you can get a lot of that information that's going to be very relevant from that development side of things.
If you haven't been on our mapping, it is very robust in terms of property ownership, utilities, zoning. Ooh, it's getting worse. Uh, high level of detail through our GIS, uh, department.
And we continue to add to that. I have like a standardized email that I send to any new developer, particularly around housing. Um, in addition to getting them scheduled for a DRT, it has like our housing study. It has our incentives information. It also has like a quick 101 on how to use our mapping. Cause a lot of times that's something developers are asking for, right? Um, where is this tax or incentive district, you know? You know, where is, where are your opportunity zones? Where are these different pieces? So with that, um, sorry, we're having IT stuff going on. So we, that GIS side of things, our online mapping that Mike mentioned, we're continually working to always add new data to that. But you can find a lot of stuff on there. In fact, we have a category that's layers that are just economic development. That's where our opportunity zones are. That's where the NRA zones are. That's where our census tracts are. And all you do is just turn them on, turn them on and you can keep turning those layers on. You can turn your zoning on, you can turn your utilities on, you can turn on past aerials to see what your site used to look like. So there's a lot of good, you can turn on all your flood information from there. It's, a lot of developers are like, holy cow, for a city your size, I can't believe how much data you have on there. We're working on a project right now to find like all of our different like special fee areas to verify those with finance and what Dean's got in different documents and get those on there. So you can start to turn those on to see, oh, I'm in this water fee impact area. Cool. That's something I'm going to have to remember when I'm doing my project budget.
So that's, um, that's the maps you used during the meeting, during planning commission meetings and the city meeting?
Yeah.
And that's based off the website. So.
Correct.
I could sit at home and do the exact same.
Oh yeah, totally. Do the links work?
Ooh, I don't know.
I don't want to jinx it.
Which one do you want me to go?
Uh, hit developers portal.
The GIS department, is that a joint effort between the city and the county?
Well, on our side, it's one guy. And that's Keith. And we do share some data. They as a county have certain obligations of what they have to collect for assessments and all those different pieces. So they've got their data, we have ours and we do share, there's a transaction that does happen.
And ownership, appraised value is linked to the county data. So they're maintaining that database and then we're able to incorporate it into our mapping.
Will you scroll down just so you can see the box features Jacob? No, I think it's up actually. Yeah. So here, if you're a new developer, you can get to all of our planning and zoning information, our economic development, contractor education. A lot of times a developer will call and they're like, oh, I got a guy. Well, I'm glad you got a guy. I need to make sure your guy's got a license to actually work in town. So, um, that contractor education has a table that talks about our different licenses, the associated credentials you'd have to have, how often that renews, things like that. Um, you can apply for a building permit directly from there and you can also schedule your development, uh, DRT meeting. We also have, like all of our pages now have these helpful links. So one stop permitting and licensing, Slana municipal code, active contractors lists are all right there too. So that it's pretty easy. Jacob, if you'd go back to the PowerPoint. We're going to test this now. And, uh, do the economic development link? So this is a page built with tender loving care by Margie and Lauren because there's a lot of information there. Um, we have City of Salina Economic Incentives. We also, a lot of times we are the conduit of information. People think to start with us first, but it's not always us. So we a lot of times are pointing people in another direction. So Salina 2020 has certain incentives. Um, Salina Chamber of Commerce has some, the Salina, Salina, Saline County Economic Development Organization, and also Salina Downtown Inc. So this is built in tabs. So you can tab through these. Jacob, you'll scroll for ours. We got the Amanda there. Um, so that first one is really all of our housing stuff. You can get all of our housing plans. You can also see the policy that you adopted in 2021. Um, you can get, uh, our packet. So those things that I said, when somebody wants to do a new housing development, we kind of have a whole bundle that goes out to them. But they can also get it at three o'clock in the morning when they're in their pajamas and curious about developing in Salina. So there's a couple of different ways to get that. We also have CID's and we're going to talk a little bit about those later this afternoon. But we have community improvement districts or as I said, CID's. Each one of these has an eligibility line. It has an application, a policy and map. If it has a map associated with it. So it's very systematic. You can scroll through, get a quick brief overview of these and then get those associated materials. Jacob, if you go back to the PowerPoint. So again, if you're talking to a developer or a citizen, they're like, oh, what kind of incentives do you want? Send them there. Homeowners portal. This is for the rest of us who maybe aren't doing, uh, massive developments. But this is kind of a one stop shop where you can apply for your building permit, look at your planning and zoning. There are some incentives, contractor education and property maintenance enforcement. So just trying to kind of give people also general, uh, permit forms. Sometimes people are like, oh, I don't want to go through one more click. We also try to put some of the easiest ones there. I would say 80, 80% of our permits are now completely digitized. So, and we're doing a lot of the final digitization in 2024. Um, Jacob, back to the PowerPoint. Sorry, I really thought I'd be doing the clicking. So, um, the ACE District. I think Mike had asked me to kind of show you this for downtown, where we have some of the additional regulations we've worked on the last couple of years. Food trucks and food carts and buskers and all these different things. Um, from here, you can get the block guide. So it literally takes all of downtown that's in the ACE District and goes black by black in visuals and explains what uses are allowed there, what uses fit there, how you can do everything. It's super visual and it's really, really easy to use. Jacob, if you scroll down. We have all the different permits laid out there with additional information, with a quick download of what their fee is, what code applies to it. So if you're new to the ACE District, you're curious about it, you can thumb through these really quickly.
So like if you were to click on food trucks, it would tell you where those can actually be parked in the downtown area?
So you can download the user friendly guide on the PDF. And if you go to reserve a food truck stop, um, first of all, all of our signs have a QR code on them that show you our map, show you the code. And then all of our food truck stops are in, they can be reserved in Parks and Rec. And then each one of those has like a couple of slides and it shows you an aerial of the shot. It shows you what amenities are available. It shows you the nearness of other key attractions. So if you're looking to pick a food truck spot, you can download those from Parks and Rec to make a reservation. Where it says, see, reserve your spot online. So we worked with Parks and Rec because they were already doing reservations. So we also use this for special events. But if you hit, yeah, food truck parking and just click one of those Jacob. So it's got how to make a reservation, but there should be like PDFs that you can download. Yeah. So click image for more. So that shows you the spot. It also tells you where you should not be parking, where your customers can't park. Um, just other key things. So each spot has that. Gives an idea of where, where they can and can't go.
Prior to Lauren, special events was in the two heart pile and the ACE District wasn't even a thought. But those were huge undertakings. In gen, in general, just to come up with the, the approach, let alone the resources that have been developed.
Well, and stuff like the ACE District, it's what has to come after making the investment in downtown. When you put all that infrastructure in and you create the beautiful sidewalks and you light the overheads and do all those, you can't just stop there. And what our staff was hearing from downtown, from the arts community is, well, what about this? And what about that? And what about this? And a lot of times if it's not in code, the answer's no.
We'll write something that's going to take a while.
And it all starts to have to work together. And so we wanted to create something that was simple. We also used to have regulations around like, were you able to put stuff in front of your store and for how long? And could that be permitted and wasn't in the walkway? Like we just developed these bubbles. They have a fancier name, but they're the bubbles. They're retail bubbles that anybody downtown can apply for. And then the permit's good for the year. Same thing with the food trucks. Permit's good for the year.
So like sidewalk sales?
They don't even need to pull a sidewalk sale permit anymore. If they're not closing the street and they just all agree on May 1st, they're going to have a sidewalk sale, if they've got their bubbles, they can just put stuff out now. And they're good to go. Public really wouldn't know the difference. If you want to close a street, then we get into a special event permit. And we worked a lot with stakeholders on that, a lot with SDI and the different merchants. Um, we also learned a lot, like those bubbles. We went and just did the site plans for all of them because it was just easier for us to do them. So it makes the application process super simple. Um, our food truck permits are also for the year. Most of our permits are for a year. So you don't have to keep coming back and forth every time you do the thing. Joe Kabasek, our fire marshal's been working with us too because there's some food truck regulations and inspection that's required. And Joe's been working with a, a whole myriad of Kansas communities have been meeting in Wichita trying to get agreement of one food truck inspection that would work Kansas wide. And so that would be huge for us because that way if you've got the Wichita permit and you've been inspected by their fire department, you really can apply for ours and be good for the year and stop in, make your reservation or whatever when you're on the road, but you don't have to try and get into the fire department to get your first permit.
It's also huge for us because it gives it more credibility. Instead of, oh, Salina does it this way, it is a universal approach that's applied in other communities. And, and it just kind of reinforces, and it's a common theme you're hearing from me, but it reinforces that what we're doing is the norm. It's best management practices. It's not onerous. It's not Salina being, uh, difficult.
No, particularly on the food truck side of things. We were giddy like two weeks ago when Joe came back from the meeting and he passed our stuff around because we also have a food truck packet. And we, we kind of did a, a soft initiative last fall with SDI and Arts and Humanities to really get buskers and food trucks up. And we are so competitive on the permit side. Wichita charges over 300 bucks. So, and so does Derby. So our 50 bucks for the year, super reasonable. Um, so I, I, Joe passed out a lot of our information. I think it was kind of eye opening to folks that you could definitely put us on, on a route that you're doing. We're very affordable. Ours is very easy to apply for. And our, our fines and things like that were nothing compared to Wichita. Wichita has theirs, like if the food truck is not permitted and at a special event in which it's not permitted, the event holder and food truck both get fined. It starts at a thousand dollars. So, we're, we're cool. We are, we are not the difficult one in this, uh, this arena. So it was, it was a little bit of an eye opening experience, but I think we are trying to get some more of that food truck activity because we do have these really nice spots and they do activate space. Um, when we talk about ACE District, it's really that downtown area. It's slightly different than, than the Starbond District. But if you click downtown Salina, that just kind of also emphasizes the amount of work we do with downtown Salina. It is a unique and special space. The zoning is slightly different down there. There are different regulations. There's, a lot of events are held down there, how alcohol works in that space. So we did create a page that's really just focused around them to kind of help. SDI is really great about messaging and communicating, but sometimes certain things just kind of get along. You know, they're not their area of expertise. So this was a good landing spot that we used with them to kind of create easy access and good information. And I think last but not least is online mapping. And we have a variety of like pre-done maps, including city plats, um, streets, hike and bike trails. But if you'll scroll up Jacob and just grab the regular or right there, online property mapping. You can, I usually like just zoom into city county building. Or you can use the address in the upper left-hand corner. We can pick just about any property. Click one, anyone? Just click. So at a minimum, almost all of the boxes, when you click on a property will pop up like this. It's going to give you a legal description. Dean Andrew will require me to tell you that is an abbreviated legal description, not the full legal description. Thank you. Mr. Hoppe is supporting that. Um, in our work, that does matter, but to the average citizen, it doesn't. So it's a good start for people is your legal description. Um, it does note who owns the property and you can get to the appraisal data from there. So what's interesting though is when you start to turn on layers, which is that brown circle at that bottom menu bar. Jacob, if you could click on that. Yeah. We have a variety of layers here. So you can turn on utilities and see where water lines are at. You can also turn on your zoning. And that one is also worth highlighting. Jacob, if you just want to pick another property again, or zoom out.
Yours is different than county and yours doesn't show lot, lots and blocks numbers on it, does it? County does.
If you click through to the appraisal data, it might.
Yeah. So I think something to note is when you turn on those layers, you'll notice in this upper left-hand corner, it says one of two. So now there's additional information. There's that first page. But since we have the zoning layer on, you can also see what is, what it is zoned as. And if you hit more information, it'll actually take you to that section of the zoning code. So a lot of the layers have what we call metadata in them. So you can actually extract more data that's related specifically to those layers. So that's something to kind of look through when you're using the online mapper. You can also, as Mike mentioned, you can get to the appraisal data and you can also get plat information. So it's.
We've got main sizes, hydrant information, flow data.
Flood planes.
Flood plane contours, elevation contours.
There's, there's a lot of information and it's the stuff that when you're developing, people really need.
And then the measuring tool obviously isn't absolutely accurate, but you can measure dimensions and areas and.
And I think these are things to, to recognize that these are really great resources. As a community our size, these are the things that give a first impression to outside parties, to future developers that say, we are capable. that say, "We are capable, we have good information." Makes that easy for them to make decisions about coming to Salina. Oh yeah, there's, the measuring tool is super helpful too. We use that one a lot in the office, actually. Um, you can use the ruler and you can get total square footage. You can do length, all kinds of different things. So it's, it's very helpful. Jacob, if you don't mind going back to the PowerPoint. Click next slide, please. One more. I'm not complaining this time. So, most people know that in planning, we handle zoning. But that's, it's, that's a really narrow view of what they do. You know, with every zoning action, there's land use behind that. And as we talked about earlier, a plat, which sometimes gets overlooked. But a plat really is where it all starts. And getting that land subdivided and getting all those connecting pieces to it is a huge part of planning and really implementation of the city's comprehensive plan. But we also, a lot of times, will have annexation come along with that. We have a couple, um, inter-local agreements with the county that talk about when we annex, when annexation's autom- automatic. So that's in a new development scenario. When something is just outside city limits, it's not just them wanting to annex. We're gonna require annexation because of city water and sewer and a variety of other things. We handle the easements for a lot of things. So if you're wondering, "How did that pipe get to go across that piece of property?" Probably rode an easement for it. Um, it, when we get into plating, it's not just the plat itself, but there's a lot of associated vehicles for, for land use that go along with that. It's easements, it's right-of-way, it's variety of transactions, it's shared, excuse me, shared agreements, it's covenants. It's all kinds of different things. Um, addressing, you know, you wonder how you got that address on your mailbox. Somebody in our office had to look at quarter sections and then had to look at the plat and had to look at how we number that to get those addresses. And so that's, that's, all those little pieces go into that. Special assessment process, also another shared, uh, process between engineering and development services. We handle step one, which is, "Hey, I have a subdivision. I'd like to do water and sewer, or I'd like to do road special assessment. Commission, here's my preliminary numbers. Here's a, here's an analysis based on policy. What do you think?" If you guys say yes, then it goes to step two, which is through engineering where they actually start to do the cost analysis and cost calculations to firm that up and then bring that back to you to get that final determination. So it's a two-piece, two-step process. And it typically, in, it's, it's a conversation that gets had with plating. Because if you're gonna build a subdivision, you're gonna put in water, you're gonna put in sewer, you're gonna put in road. Now how are you gonna pay for it? So, we're pretty involved there. We have a variety of licenses at the city that you probably don't even realize there's a license for. Everything from scrap metal yards to flea markets.
Firework stands.
Firework stands, oh fireworks. We do, in conjunction with several other departments, but we, we inspect all the fire tents for firework season. Permit those, make code changes if somebody needs more explosives near to something that's more explosive, like a, a variety of things. But fireworks is, it's a whole season for us.
Did you see the House Committee's hearing, uh, bill to have year-round firework sales?
I saw that it was being considered, yeah. They do it in Missouri.
Chiefs keep winning, I guess it's needed.
So we, we do-
Eventually, they're gonna run out.
I don't know about that. But a lot of the licenses, if we, a lot of them will go through the clerk's office, but that takes somebody in our office reviewing them for either the validity of them, the applicability of information, things like that. Flood, we, we, we are the flood administrators for the city. So flood plane permits and everything associated with activity in and around flood criteria, we handle historic preservation. So you have, uh, Brian Richardson's done a couple of projects in the last couple of years that need state historic tax credits and they need federal historic tax credits to really make that project work. We run it through that process and help with that.
And don't want to underestimate flood. That, that is a FEMA flood plane administrator, federal regulations program administration. It can be frustrating for property owners that, uh, you know, the regulations make it di- difficult for them. But we're administering that program in a, in order to be compliant and maintain the community's eligibility for flood insurance. So there's not a lot of latitude for variances and discretion.
We did have whole new map amendment about six-ish years ago and it has made a huge difference for us. Um, our, our maps were outdated and we were doing a lot of LOMAs, you know, justifying that somebody really wasn't in the flood plain, but the map was old. And with our new maps, we rarely do them anymore.
Does that have to be updated every so often or is that just, uh, that brought us current, now we just have to worry about new subdivisions and stuff?
Yeah, so we do, by federal requirement, have to, to re-recognize them every so often. But we are in compliance right now. I can't remember if it's a 10-year cycle. But with things like LiDAR, which is laser-based GIS, we just got such more accurate maps. And so it made it a lot easier when those new maps were updated, really for most of the country in the last 10 years, to get a lot of stuff out of the flood plain or out of floodways that were, but weren't.
Did we update, because we had, I don't want to say bad information, or did they change anything? The federal government didn't cha- did they change the flood base?
Yeah, so there's two things going on there. One, we were required. And two, part of the requirement was that we were recognizing parcels that were under, what, like the one-foot elevation component and we're allowing them in. And we had to have our maps adopted to get them out of that, that one-foot window. And so we had to go through that and recognize that those wouldn't be eligible.
I don't, I don't know that the code requirement changed, but the acr- the, the actual elevations were corrected and took entire swaths out.
That's-
No, the feds, the feds did require. Like, we, we had to go, we had to meet that federal requirement.
No, I'm saying they, they didn't loosen their code requirements and, and cause less flood plain administration. It was the mapping that changed.
Correct, no, the mapping helped. But some people who were out of the flood plain became in the flood plain if you were in that one-foot window. But that was, that was some pressure for us to get through that piece. But it has, we have seen definitely a decrease in just particularly LOMAs, letter of map amendment that we used to have to do. But we do have, for people that call, a very good database of our LOMAs and are able to pull those. We still get calls from banks, from title companies and things like that for verification.
Should've been here in the early 80s, everybody was doing LOMA letters.
Yeah, we had boxes and boxes of them that the feds did, had lost track of and we still had copies of.
On, I previously worked for a very flood-prone county. And counties have an even different role when it comes to flood and done a lot of LOMAs. So I have a lot of empathy for that. And it is, it is really time-consuming. And the turnback time from the feds can be, it's just not very helpful in those situations. But, um, as Mike said, a big, a big part of, of what we've got going on. And last, like planning and your, your good planning is about the other. We'll talk about some other things, that it's not a building thing, it's not a, a this or a that. It's just, they catch a lot of the other, which usually comes into long-range planning. Specifically, when we talk about long-range planning, we talk about the comprehensive plan. By Kansas state statute, you have to have a comprehensive plan. Um, people always ask, like, "Which one came first, chicken or the egg?" Well, in planning, comprehensive plan came first. Like, there's no question about it. You gotta have one and you gotta follow it. And it's the legal basis for a lot of the decisions we make in planning cases. So yes, you have zoning code, but any of those gray areas or map amendments, things like that, the comprehensive plan serves as a basis to supplement the gray area and to give, give direction on the future of the community. They're really meant to be a 20-year vision. Ours, ours is now 24, so it's, it's definitely time for one. We also haven't had a full zoning code update since the 70s. So it's, it's also time. And I particularly noticed that because there's just certain things in our code. It's just, we have to do a lot more amendments than normal.
I've shared with some of you, and Lauren and I've had this conversation. I, I was very involved when we did the 2010 comprehensive plan. We brought in a consultant, went through an RFP selection process. But if I had it to do over again and as we go into the next comprehensive plan, I think one of the first items of discussion at the local community level is, "What are our own expectations?" We, shortly after having adopted the comprehensive plan, it, it contained a lot of vision, a lot of, you know, uh, co- maybe even common principles and concepts. But it, we didn't really get community feedback until after it was adopted and it was being implemented. And at least not from the development community, not from the real estate community. So the lesson learned there for me is, uh, the next pass, before we dive into the comp plan, we're gonna have a conversation about what are the community expectations? You can, you can set incredibly high standards, um, and then cause frustration and you need to be committed to the direction you're headed in before you go to the effort of putting the comp plan together, roll it out and then start second-guessing yourself.
Well, a comp plan takes time to draft. You know, you have to put in the work. And, and I will say so, for those of you don't know me, I am a certified city planner. And I've been in public service as a planner for nearly 20 years. And I spent the good first chunk of my career doing nothing but comprehensive plans. I have done a lot of them, definitely more than your average bear. So a huge part of comp plan work comes from the, the upfront stuff of having those ques- conversations about expectations. You don't start drafting anything until we start having those conversations. And the other thing is, this isn't a carte blanche mega wishlist. These are thoughtful conversations directed at very specific outcomes. It's not helpful to have a giant wishlist of comprehensive plan and know there's no possible way to fund that or ever achieve it. A comprehensive plan is a vision for where you want to go. They have to be somewhat realistic and giving direction of how you plan on achieving that. So-
And, and being a little bit more direct, I guess. When we did the 2020 comp plan, we engaged the community. We had charrettes and public stakeholder meetings. I don't feel like we got the level of engagement out of the development community that would've been helpful then. We got the engagement and the feedback after the fact, once the comp plan had been adopted and begun to implement.
So there is an implementation matrix in the comprehensive plan and it's over 90% complete. The 10% that's remaining, I believe, are, are things that maybe aren't relevant or, um, to what Mike is saying, maybe weren't probable in their completion. So I do feel like a lot of the things that were outlined in the comprehensive plan, we have completed. So, next slide, please. So, actually, yeah. So our Building and Code Compliance Division, or Neighborhood Services, that is where we're seeing all the plan review for commercial and residential projects. So, you know, pretty much anything that's being built, anyway, anyhow, is often coming through our office. It's also where demo permits are coming through too. So even if you're tearing it down, it's probably coming to us. Inspections can include, uh, new or remodel accessory structures, you know, sheds, gazebos in certain cases, if they're, if they're large enough. Lean-tos and garages, uh, any electrical plumbing or mechanical permits. Certain individuals who own their home are allowed to do a certain amount of work. You know, it's, it's their own. But if you start doing any work for somebody for hire, those things all need to be inspected. We also do, as I mentioned, emergency inspections. So, um, like I said, that drunk driver hits that building, we're out there in the middle of the night inspecting that. PD calls, um, sinkholes. You never know when the sinkhole's gonna happen. We get called out to make sure, you know, did anything get disconnected? Is the building still structurally sound, that kind of stuff? And as we talked about earlier, code enforcement includes trash and debris, tall grass and weeds, inoperable vehicles. Um, that one is a real pain in the behind, but we try really hard because they're usually a very visible thing. But there's very strict standards on what constitutes an in-op and what does not. So, um, dilapidated and blighted structures, illegal signs. Um, are they in the right-of-way? Are they temporary signs, like garage sale signs and things like that? Um, and as I mentioned, infestations. We'll talk about dangerous structures. But, uh, they also assist the planning department, um, with related inspections and violations. They can't do everything and we'll also talk about how planning and zoning are a different type of inspection, but sometimes there is crossover.
So Lauren touched on code adoption and, and drafting. Uh, we use international codes that are promulgated as the starting point. State Fire Marshal's office actually holds us accountable for, uh, codes and amendments we make to codes. I think we made significant progress in kind of changing the community conversation and community expectation when we transitioned from staff-level, uh, editing of the codes to committee-driven code review and adoption. Prior to that, I, I think it was just this unknown process that, that people didn't understand. We involved the Building Advisory Board, formed a lot of committees, we took on a lot of work. But there's a lot more community buy-in, a lot more community acceptance of, uh, the final product. And we've kind of, we try to shy away from local amendments, um, unless absolutely needed just because it adds to the confusion and, and the more we can stay standardized, the better.
Yeah, and we are kind of an interesting spot right now. There's a lot of overlap between international fire code and international building code. And so a huge part of sometimes the ins- the review process is getting those two codes to marry up. But also a part of that is we have a new fire marshal at the state level. And so that is affecting what code that he, he wants to bring the state up to. So the state's gonna come up to 2018, but they're also telling us they're, they anticipate in the next year of going up to 2021? Or 24? 24. So that may, we may get through this round and we may have to kind of quickly go again. I mean, we kind of knew this was coming. The state fire marshal was very behind on code adaptations. And we held out for a really long time waiting for them. And they just weren't, and our building community was kind of done waiting. And they wanted the newer codes because it all starts to compound, right? The materials that are available to them have certain specs that are in the newer code. The methods are to newer codes. The plans they're buying online are for newer codes. When we have franchise-type companies and new scooters and new McDonald's, they're going to the newest codes. And so when we have old codes, it makes stuff very difficult. So we're, we're gonna jump into 2018 this year. But there's a, there's a pretty good chance that we'll probably have to do another code step in the next year or two. Just to kind of keep up. Chapter 13 is Community Relations. Sorry, I'm just looking at-
I don't know.
It's, it's all good. It's, I mean, we're on the right slide, so it's just a little wonky. Community Relations is kind of a unique division. We're one of, uh, two divi- or two cities in the state that have a FAP, which is, um, a federal housing assistance program. And so that is investigating, mediating, and sometimes even litigating fair housing cases. We also handle equal opportunity employment and ADA compliance. Michelle Martin, our supervisor down there, happens to be a, an attorney. Um, but she also is now a ADA coordinator certified. So she got that training, which is very helpful on some of our unique projects. And through her work, you know, sometimes it's just a call from an anonymous person who says, "Hey, I was at the Y and I've got a question about why there isn't a path to this." Or, "I was at this doctor's office and I don't understand why there's not a handle there." Michelle continues to build her knowledge about that and is able to kind of bring examples to that property owner and kind of work through those things. A lot of times, those, we don't even have to, there's no violation. The property owner's like, "I didn't even know." You know, "What can I do?" And so a lot of times, it's a conversation, education piece on the ADA stuff. She's also helping to manage the ADA transition plan for the city. So that's something by federal law, when ADA became a thing, we have to have a document that shows like what we're doing to continually be ADA compliant. The things that we don't, that we're continually improving and we'll, we'll get there. She, as I mentioned, has two boards, Human Relations Commission, Accessibility Advisory Board. And majority, whether it's housing, employment, or public accommodations, they have an intake process. So they meet with somebody who's got a concern, take that information, they investigate, they do interviews, they look through documentation. Sometimes that person has a lawyer, so they, you know, seek documents from that attorney. Then they land on a determination. A lot of times, something will go into conciliation if, if there is an issue. And that's trying to work through that process and what that looks like. But sometimes there is enforcement and that may be sending something to court. That may be sending something to the higher state level. We also do a lot of education and outreach. Um, just letting people know, you know- We also do a lot of education and outreach, just letting people know, you know, that fair housing is a thing, who does it apply for, that we're here to help, those types of things. Michelle has also gotten very involved in housing in this last year, so that's not a normal thing in the purview of that division, but it has, you know, there are a lot of things that we do that interact with that. When we talk about homelessness, we're talking about housing. And if we're not talking about the creation of housing, we're talking about somebody not able to get housing, or somebody being denied housing. So a lot of this has kind of come through some of the work in community relations and the department as a whole. Next. Okay, well, I'm short on housing. Last but not least is admin. So everything that comes in our door, you know, a huge part, if you think about it from an efficiency point of view, they're our first line of defense because it's, it's the principle of highest and best use. I, I need quality applications getting to the planners, getting to permit reviewers. So a lot of times our permit techs are working with the public, you're missing this attachment, can you clarify this some more, trying to get those things landed where they need to be before they get back for review, which is a huge part of timing, too. We also are constantly trying to work on our applications to make sure we're getting the best stuff from the public. And then Shandy also, who is our supervisor for the administration division, is constantly monitoring like our website and the digital component to our applications, but they're scheduling all the inspections and records retention and management. When you have seven boards in the commission, plus you have the planning commission that has special super duper statute about what you can and can't throw away of theirs, we have a lot of records, like a lot of records to keep an eye on. We also collect a ton of data. Shandy issues reports to most of the newspapers, Census Bureau, KU's got like the state component, so we're constantly sending data about new homes, new permits, all those things on a monthly basis to different entities. Let's do this. Jacob, go to the next slide. I think we've talked quite a bit about DRT. That team right now includes our building official, includes our, and some of these that are doubled up, like you'll see Margie and I are both on there, sometimes it depends on our workload and the level of the project. You know, if we're meeting with Schwan's, I'm probably going to be downstairs, but now with Margie's position, if it's somebody who wants to turn their backyard into an ice cream, you know, parlor, Margie can probably go handle that and talk to them about the unique permits they're going to need. We'd literally have somebody come in who wanted to do a used car lot and an ice cream shop in one. So, yep, it's a thing. So a lot of times we'll, you'll see more than one of us up here, and it, we're, there's backup, or I'm in another meeting, or I'm out of town, somebody else is there. So our assistant building official and building official, one of them is there. If it's a huge project, maybe it's both of them. But we have representation from engineering, it's usually Kent Johnson, we have the fire marshal, and we have at least one planner, sometimes it's zoning administrator, sometimes it's not, and then director of utilities. So it's, it's trying to get everybody who is relevant to reviewing that material. Each one of those DRT meetings, when applicable, ends with a submittal checklist, like we go through a list, you'll get it like literally as the meeting lets out, because Margie's like, poof, it's out the door, of everything you'd need to turn in to make a project successful as you presented it to us.
With clickable links.
Yeah, with clickable links. And within 10 days, you'll get notes all ready to go with contact information, and if there was homework that came up during the meeting, we will run that stuff to ground and make sure it's identified in the notes, and then any other deliverables or background information we have, we also provide you within 10 business days. So it is a heaping pile of information to help somebody through that process. Next slide. I think we talked about downtown. I think the thing that's worth noting about downtown is it gets a little babied because it's unique. You've got SDI down there, so that's a constant partner for us, and it has its own design standards, like what materials you use, what windows you use, what paint colors you use, on what part of the building you use, so it's not like anywhere else in town. It also has a lot of historic components to it that involve the heritage commission, it has the design review board downtown that has to do with enforcement of those design standards. C4 zoning is different, too, the parking standards, the setbacks, everything are really unique to downtown. Plus it has all these other activities, so that is definitely something that can, it just impacts us. It's important, but it's a huge part of our work. Oh, special event permit. I'm not going to get into this because I know we have other things to get to, but what I can say is that we have implemented what, what you decided in 2023, the permit fees were halved, we've redefined block parties and also redefined regular enrolling parades, so those changes have been made. I think for Commissioner Ivy, just something to know, as Mike mentioned, this was in the too hard pile for a really long time. This permit's really unique, and one of the reasons we kind of run the process is because we have so many permits that overlap with other departments, we were kind of the best equipped to do this, but every special event at a minimum has three different departments reviewing it, and at a maximum 13.
And that's kind of similar to the DRT approach as well, so lessons learned in DRT are applicable for special events.
Will you hit the website link, Jacob? And this is just kind of an example of, you know, we have this permit, we've talked about it's, it's a self-creating permit based on how you respond to things, but also those resources are right there. How do you make a reservation? Right there. We have a user manual and resource guide, it is alphabetical and goes through every issue you may encounter in a special event and walks you through that. Shandy and I are also working on this spring, doing like screen capturing, so that you've got somebody like voicing over how to fill out the permit, and that would be available while you're in the permit to kind of click on and have that immediate tutorial. So we're always kind of looking at different ways to do that. We're also now under the special event permit on large projects, multi-locations, doing pre-applications, which seem to be very helpful. So, if you'll go back to the PowerPoint.
Lauren may not agree with me, but my sense is special events are unique in and of themselves, people are well-intentioned, but they're the most ripe for lack of information, confusion, last-minute submissions, panic, and just an over-the-top reaction as they're trying, trying to get their event pulled together.
Jacob, why don't you, can you click forward to 22?
I don't have a page number.
Keep going. Go to the grants. Yeah. What I will, before we get into grants, just note on special events, with the data we've collected, we've never even had this kind of information before, we were also better able to assess like our needs. So we had some funding at the end of the year and worked with general services and added 20 new cones for, because you wouldn't believe the amount of barricades and cones that we go through, and we've got a couple of special events going through. So we ordered more cones, we were able to delineate or decipher how many delineators we needed, we replaced 40 of them that were just, they were rough. And we added at least 30 new barricades, which is huge for when we start doing marathons and races and things like that. And we also added to City Light Stage because it's become so popular, remote for parks and rec, remote electrical turn-on, so we don't leave the power on the stage all the time, but if an event's going to be there and they start setting up at 6:00 AM, it's not fair to have parks there at 6:00 AM turning that thing on. And so that's able to be done remotely now through an app on selected people's phones. So that's been really helpful, too, to computerize that access. Okay. Grants. We manage a lot of grants. I'm looking at Debbie, she's like, mhm. We manage especially a ton during COVID and coming out of COVID. At the moment, we're handling the Federal Home Loan Bank for home rehab. You did a lot of work on that in 2023 as a commission, you went through that in a study session with us, gave us approval to move forward and apply, and then we were awarded that money, it's nearly a million dollars. It's the first time that the city's ever got this federal home loan bank. Our goal is over the next four years to help 44 homes rehab in a 10-block radius in North Salina. And we will have not only that grant exception, because as a commission, you have to approve application, and then you also typically will approve acceptance of that grant contract saying, yep, glad you applied for it, this is how much we got, we think it's worth going forward, and you, you move forward on that contract. We'll also be ready to implement, hopefully, the digital applications going through run-throughs this week, so when you guys accept it, we'll also start putting that application forward to start using that grant. We have for over 25 years managed the Emergency Solutions Grant, and it particularly is one of the most known, I would say, consistent sources for homelessness and housing issues in a community. And we, this year's allotment was $113,376. We asked for a lot more than that, but many communities asked for more than that. We typically work with anywhere from three to five different nonprofit agencies dealing with that. We are also not an entitlement community, so entitlement is a community over 50,000, and if you're over that, you are entitled to CDBG funds. We do not, so we kind of get to go through the just general application process. So CDBG has a variety of uses, but we've been currently applying for a home rehab one, we were rejected in 2023, asked to reapply in 2024, and we anticipate doing that, and we requested a little over $400,000. But this is not our first CDBG, too. Next slide, please. I mean, we've done them for the renovation of the historical depot where Beverly architecture is, we've done them for water and sewer components, we've, we've done CDBG for a variety of things. I think this is kind of an interesting one that people don't really realize we do. We do a lot of coordination between permits and operations, both at the state and federal level. We review a variety of permits and verify for the state. As we talked about with flood stuff, LOMAs and LOMRs, community acknowledgements of Phil, floodplain development permits, lot splits and special assessments, stuff that's over at the county that needs to verify that it happened over here, stuff that finance needs that we need to get over to them because of the actions that we took. Drinking establishment licenses from the state, we verify, car dealership licenses from the state, we verify, salvage yard compliance.
Historic.
Yeah, historic stuff, I mean, environmental impact reports. We have nonprofits in town that are looking for federal funding that have to have these environmental impacts, and not environment like dirt and air and water, they're environment like historical, cultural components. We do those, and historic tax credits, as Mike mentioned, and other federal and state incentives. If somebody else is applying for it, we still have the government verification piece. We also report out to the census regularly, and we are the ones who run a lot of the local census activities, keep the quarter sections up to date, and try to send those out to everything from title companies to banks to.
Title companies are the worst.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And we have some like data gathering entities, this is kind of a newer thing, but instead of having them do a public records request all the time, some places are just a conglomerate for just giving realtors information or builders information, like how many permits have been pulled, like what that activity looks like, so we just put them on a regular list for a report we already create for everybody else, and it saves us some paperwork.
You'd be surprised. I get a regular recurring request for solar permits as a formal open records request, and then development services has to sort that out.
Yeah, we get a lot of that one. I don't know if it's related to federal funding or what, but, okay, next. So remember when I said the other? We get a lot of other, in addition to just trying to manage, how do you manage your department better? I would say it's kind of falls into these three buckets, particularly for 2024. We're talking about housing and homelessness, we're talking about enforcement, that's zoning, that's property maintenance and building, and then GovBuild, which is a new software that we purchased this year to transition all of our permitting from our previous software, which is LAMA, but that also involves process improvement and digitization. So if you click one more, talk a little bit about homelessness, I'm really hoping in strategic planning, and Mike's going to kick me a minute.
No, I've already said it.
Okay, like that we get some direction, because I'm not exactly sure how to quantify this in a workload component right now. You know, we've been working with SDI, we held a training and informational meeting with them, I know some of you attended, made a flyer so that merchants downtown better kind of understood the various roles and, and things like that. We've been working with an internal city staff stakeholder group, kind of holding that meeting, bringing information back, sharing information. Michelle's become very active in the COC, which is Continuum of Care, which is basically the, the entity you have to understand in the state of Kansas to be able to understand homelessness funding and how that all works. So just becoming more familiarized, it's complicated, I will just say homelessness is complicated. It's, there are so many facets and so many different agencies that are involved, I mean, part of what paid for Julia Orlando to come was actually the State's Department on Aging, not COC. So I mean, there are these different components, there's homelessness components and commerce, there's, there's all these different pieces, so there's, there's a lot of people playing in that sandbox and just trying to find out how we fit in and what those resources are are really important. So Michelle's been doing a good job of just trying to get her head wrapped around that. She's also, I mean, communicating, I know Mike's taken a lot of these conversations, PD's been great about this, but just understanding all the different players and how they're impacted, and what are the impacts on the hospital, what are the impacts on the nonprofits? ESG, as I mentioned, we are that ESG piece. The pit count, point in time, it's kind of something we've done in the past, but we made a conscious decision as a city this year to kind of get more involved and come up with teams and make sure we got a better count to better understand. That took staff time. And as I mentioned, some of this is just learning, you know, just from Julia's visit, the number of phone calls we've gotten, the number of topics that have been discussed, and just trying to get your heads wrapped around those. So it's, it's been a journey, but I'm anxious to kind of find out, you know, where the commission wants to go with that. Next slide, please. I'm going to just kind of summarize dangerous structures. I'm, one of the things that I have found in the department is in the last four years, let's say, because we're kind of four years out from COVID, we have been so busy building, 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 inspecting buildings, trying to figure out where to put housing, that, you know, we could really streamline the code compliance part as far as property maintenance goes, but digging into the more complicated stuff, like dangerous structures, digging into the more complicated stuff like planning and zoning, it, it's very hard to justify that that comes before finding a house for somebody for the new employees that belong to the companies that we have incentivized to be here. And so it's not that they're important, but they kind of come to the bottom of the list. And so as we're starting to kind of come out of that haze and, and we're staffed up to deal with some of these things better, one of the things we're realizing as we step back is, how do we deal with dangerous structures better? I also learned it's, it's almost investigative, right, to kind of track these things down, especially when we get into commercial structures, but even the residential structures. For those of you that have been commissioners for a while, I mean, you, you've been down this road where we had a lady who was literally wandering through town, sleeping on different people's couches, who owned this house that we were trying to demo, and literally couldn't get her notification. I mean, it's, this is not just a few pieces of paper, and there are some very strict things that have to happen in there, and when we take batches of them, which is what we're going to start doing now that we've got somebody who this is their focus, that batch is going to start off together, but they're going to start to do this, because each one of those is a really unique situation. So that, that process is definitely starting this year, we've already been starting on some of the commercial structures, that person was hired, what, two, three weeks ago? So they're, they're already kind of digging into that. So one of our goals is, you know, I want to have at least 20 residential structures at least started in 2023. I cannot promise they're all going to be done, because some of them go a little sideways, and some of them resolve themselves.
And we're somewhat motivated to try to let them resolve it themselves if, if it looks plausible.
Yeah.
Versus do it at our expense and have to follow the rest of the process, but they go sideways real quick.
Well, and it also can get very expensive. When we get into commercial structures and, and we have to go to a higher level, it's, we're talking not a couple hundred bucks, we're talking thousands. So I think that's also, you know, financially kind of preparing for some of those decisions has also been something we've been talking about in the last year or so as we've moved forward to this. Next, please. Oh, zoning enforcement. This is, this is a, this is one that's really upfront for me this next year. As we're moving into GovBuild, I need to digitize zoning enforcement. It's different than property maintenance because you, you can't just send a property abatement person in, you can't just, you can't just go mow the lawn. You. You, you've gotta dig. You've gotta send the letter. You gotta have the conversation. You gotta establish what complete looks like. And if not, we gotta go to court. And court is time. And court is getting on the docket. And then we go to court and then they have more time and then they don't do what they're supposed to and then I gotta go back to court. And it's, it's just a time suck. It's important, but and when I look at like the availability of one employee's time to do that, it is a bigger chunk of time than other things. So one of the things Margie and I have been strategizing about is how do we at least take some of the more mechanical pieces of it? Getting the first letter out, you know, looking at how we use the CPI process that Sean Holman did for warrants on property maintenance stuff. Can we use that for zoning and and streamline that a bit? Like, how, how do we just better that process? It also has big fiscal impacts. A lot of times the zoning stuff, we're talking like thousands of dollars. If somebody's really done something like put the garage in the wrong spot or somebody started a business where it is not supposed to be, you know what they're thinking when I send that letter? They're not thinking, I gotta go borrow Rob's mower and just fix that. They're thinking, holy cow, I can't feed my family. I've just lost my income. I just lost all my investment. And that motivates people to being very intense. Just trying to say it the nicest way possible. Intense. And that myriad of emotions under intense varies. But it's, there's no simple solution.
The message I get on that is, especially lately, is doesn't the city have better things to do than metal and the signs and all this stuff?
Yep. And for every person who says that, I have somebody who calls and says, I can't believe you missed this. How dare you? It's ruining my property value. It's ruining my life.
The other dynamic that is consistent, it's just ingrained in human nature is.
And so how do we get that message out to create a little balance?
Well, some of that is be more proactive on the zoning side. You know, typically in zoning, it's a lot of reaction. Somebody has a neighbor who decided to start a auto repair business in their garage. And they've got a bunch of, you know, vehicles they're working on all in the front yard. And they call and tell us and then we investigate and we deal with it.
And part of it may be messaging too, that it's a community standard. It's not, it's not something the staff dreamed up.
Well, and that's what I've been telling people. These ordinances and zoning and it's been on the books for years.
And it's.
The current commission didn't just dream this stuff up.
And it's not, it's not unique for a city, for Salina or any other city to regulate these type of items. It's an agreed upon community standard. It's been adopted and we're tasked with with enforcement.
Signs are an interesting one because 20 years ago, you'd go to towns and signs were bananas. They were everywhere. And they were clutter and a lot of communities have cleaned that up over the years, but it's also enough time for people to forget. And so, you know, why, why this one? Well, because this is the rule. Well, if you let that one and then that one and then that one.
The human nature aspect I always get to is, instead of, I'm sorry, what, what do I need to do to comply? It's I drove through town and found dozens and dozens of things that look similar to me. And that's an understandable reaction, which then compounds our, as we start to peel this onion, what that looks like in terms of our approach.
So I mean, recognizing that zoning enforcement will always be a heavier workload because of the level of investigation. But I think in 2024, one of our goals as staff is to look at like what parts we can kind of mechanize more. What parts we can work with our folks that are out in the field. And then those parts that we have that are investigation or court or those kinds of things. You know, how do we carve out workload for that and what, what does that anticipated workload look like? I threw signs in here too because signs is this really interesting one. I think it's not, I mean, I knew the mural thing was gonna push the sign code. I had it, I told Mike, I had it on my workload to deal with in 2024. It just happened a little sooner thanks to some strong feelings and an unexpected sign. But one of the other things we're also seeing is the electronic messaging board signs. And technology's changed and made them cheaper and everybody likes them now. And so that's one of the other big changes that I think we've got to deal with and figure out how they go, not to mention just some modifications. So Wendy, and one of the reasons I was kind of here right before we started and not for lunch, is Wendy Moller, the consultant who's gonna help us with updating the sign code comes in tonight and we'll start meeting with different stakeholder groups starting tomorrow. So we were a little busy at the office trying to get ready for Wendy to get here, but I'm, I'm excited to start having those conversations. Wendy's excited for that. Then she'll start to draft. She's gonna come back. We're gonna have further conversations, redraft and be back to you. So I, we estimated this being, you know, a six month process. Okay. Uh, we've talked about dangerous structures. So digitizing is a huge part of our workload. As I mentioned, we have a lot of documents. And in the last couple of years, we have digitized over almost 3,000 documents. And many of them are plan sets, but I have a lot more. I don't think Dean's gonna get mad, but Dean is planning on retiring this year. That date is not decided, but sometime in 2023. Poor, sorry, sometime in 2024. So we are working through this, but we have a lot of paper. And so one of the things is working with Shandy, working with Dean to try and eliminate this. The reason I gave you estimated remaining documents, 224 to 400 boxes. I think I've got duplicates running around in some of those boxes. I, I think we can minimize some of those. And some of these things we have to recognize are not savable. You know, John Berger, who used to handle our historic planning, has some beautiful records, but the items themselves just can't survive. You know, they're crumbling and falling apart. Shandy, bless her heart, spent a ton of time talking to state museums to, to different specialty companies about how we save some of these older documents and they're just not savable. We're gonna try and take pictures of some of them we can. But just the materials or VHS tapes, CDs, things like that, that we either have different versions of them or they're now online, we just don't need to keep them. So that is definitely kind of a huge part of just as we're doing process improvement and trying to find space, is we're just trying to get things digitized. And it's, it's not just a box. Because that box, if we send it to an outside party, gets put away. But I have people on our team who have to inventory what's in the box, make sure that's what comes back. And then those digital records have to go where they're supposed to go. So granted, we're trying to put them into places like Laserfish and things like that so more people have access to them and they're in a more permanent and organized way, but it's just, it's a time thing. But at the same time, we're, we're continually to go more digital. I mean, we almost don't get paper plans anymore. I mean, most of our people review things in Blue Beam, which is digital. So this is the future.
That's why, that's why I'm retiring too. Because Dean goes, I go. I go to Dean all the time.
Well, ideally, it's, scanning is one thing, but one massive file that is the entire box isn't helpful. Ideally, we're taking this to the next level, attaching it to GIS and you now then can find your variance and your plat and your rezoning and your building permit.
There's things in those files that we need sometimes and.
Thanks for that.
It's, it's gotta be indexed properly to be able to find it. It's the whole key. You can scan everything in the world, but if you can't find it, it doesn't do you any good.
Yep.
Yeah, and there's, there's just such a myriad, because like our staff case files have things that aren't relevant to the public. And frankly, you know, meeting note with citizen does not need to be attached to that stuff. So it's going through some of those things. So it's, it's a lot. And, you know, we've been working with Mike on budgeting, going, okay, I think we can do this this year, but.
You've gotten a lot done.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a lot. That's a lot that went to recycling. So, um, next slide. And that scanning all kind of leads to what we've been trying to do. Working with Scott. We have both, all of our supervisors have now gone through green belt training, are working on their green belt projects. And Sean Holman is a full-fledged green belt and works on the city CPI council. And we are taking those skills and applying them to all of our processes as we're digitizing them and moving them into GovBuild. You were gracious enough to, to help us start paying for that earlier last year. So we're already into this project rather than waiting for January 1. So we, we already started that project and we're in kickoff mode and are going through that right now. We have 42 permit types, 73 license types, 29 violation types and 48 planning applications that are going into that. Planning very, planning applications is probably where I recognize we have the most need to digitize. And not just like take this thing and put it into the computer. One of the hard things is when you take a form and you make it digital, you have to think about it differently. Is that a dropdown or is it a tech box, text box? And if you're gonna have dropdowns, what are the kinds of answers you want to get? Each application, to not be super nerdy, is kind of an exercise in efficiency. How do you get from the applicant what you need to know to be able to make a decision? For them to give you good quality information and you to have what you need to make the decision. So some of that is taking applications we've had for years and digitizing them and making sure other people are aware of the process because some people have maybe been here a long time and know the process really well, but not everybody else does. It's also connecting the process with the county. One of the reasons we went with GovBuild is because it's, they're also the county provider. So that means we can start to send things digitally over to them. And connecting better things to finance, for instance, like right now in the system, it ends. And somebody has to remember to take it over to Debbie or to email it to Debbie. Like in GovBuild, if the, the process just keeps going. It already got distributed to Debbie. Debbie verified it on her dashboard. It's put where it's supposed to be. It's also taking things like our economic development incentives and digitizing them. Putting timelines on those things so that we don't forget when things are due. It integrates into all of our other components, which are huge, GIS, um, our code, code components, Outlook and Blue Beam. And there are a variety of departments that use that. So primarily us, but Public Works, Engineering, Utilities, Finance, Fire and Parks and Rec. So it's a heavy investment, but it's one that's worth it. And it has a good amount of customization, a lot of big permitting software. It's like, oh, this is what you get and you can tweak a little bit for a price. The nice thing with GovBuild is we have a bit more customization, which helps.
How do we currently, as you were saying, track when like some of these tax abatements come off and stuff? How do we? I mean, because, chance, some of us won't be around when those come up.
Fair question. Well, go ahead.
I'm looking at Debbie too.
What was the question? I'm sorry, her tax abatement.
How we track cost recovery fees and tax abatement.
Tax abatements when they come off and all that because.
Dean does most of that in his head, but we do have trackers on him.
I mentioned we're digitizing.
Yeah.
And Sean has recently been tasked with trying to inventory those kind of things, development agreements. We have, you know, all these agreements that have provisions.
At least spreadsheets out there somewhere that.
There is a spreadsheet. There is a spreadsheet. Yeah, Shandy wrote a spreadsheet with Dean. And Margie's PMing the GovBuild project and that is literally like one of the main tasks is we, we have them listed to build out those, some of those key processes to just be able to track them digitally. So they're not doing that. And they'll like, they'll auto trigger.
Because we've done a lot more than we ever did before. I mean, we just, there's just a lot more out there to track now than we've ever done in the past. So.
Yes.
I would say the things like IRBs and things like that that have to go through the Board of Tax Appeals. Those are very rigid with documentation and things like that. So not only are we tracking that, but the county's tracking that, the state's tracking that. So there's kind of mechanisms in place to say, okay, it only goes for 10 years and it's these, this set of years. So.
So with GovBuild being recently sold, has there been any changes or issues with it?
No, we're still really happy. I mean, our, one of the things that was important to me and one of the reasons I pushed that we moved on the contract sooner is that our project team who built our website and who built special events permit with us would stay with us if we started the project in December, which was critical for me because they already know our system, they know our people. And so it's been, it's been very good to build with them and project manage with them. And MCII, I think, has brought some new resources to the table, but they still have really talented staff. And I've actually, just in the last year or so, met other municipalities who are also moving to GovBuild. So.
So you're essentially still dealing with the same people?
Mm-hmm. We've been satisfied. I will say, we also built a special event permit with them because we didn't have it that exists. So both Margie and myself and Shandy's getting, we're, we're pretty capable in the software. So I can fix, one of us can fix a lot of our own stuff, which is pretty helpful, just to make quick changes a little bit faster. So, yeah.
All right. Why don't we regroup at 2:30 and we'll try to wrap up by 3:30?
Got it. Okay, part two. Uh, Housing and Economic Development. So, next slide, please. One jock.
Hey.
Okay. So I, I mean, I could go on about this whole subject for a while, but I know we've also talked a lot about this over the last couple of years. So what I really want to focus on today is kind of where are we at? Where did we said, what did we say we were gonna do? And, and how are we doing? So we do have an adopted housing plan. It's a Live Salina Plan. Next slide, please. The first plan was adopted in 2016 and we updated it in 2021. Coming out of COVID, we were seeing the impact of, of both a housing shortage nationwide. We had two major employers expanding. We had all kinds of things going on and recognizing we did not have the housing stock that we needed and wouldn't into the future. So in seven months, that is record time, just in case anyone's wondering. We updated our housing plan and got a policy in front of the city commission for housing incentives. We worked with RDG, who was our previous consultant on our 2016 plan. And I'm very comfortable saying they're pretty much the housing plan gurus in the Midwest. They're out of Nebraska. They've done, I don't know, easily 90% of the housing plans in Kansas and then they did the state's housing plan. So we were in very good hands. And what we asked them to do in our update was we wanted fresh demographics. We wanted to understand our rental housing market, which is a bit of a challenge in Salina because we don't permit rentals. And it's really not legal in Kansas for some reasons based off the Brownback administration's determinations. So we wanted to understand how we could analyze our rental housing. We wanted to understand what development tools were available to us. We also wanted development cost pro forma. That's not a normal thing to ask for in a housing plan. But that was an important thing to Mike and I because what we were finding is we were having conversations with developers and with the commission. And the question is, well, how much is it really? And what does it really cost to make a rental? Why can't you get financing? Why won't the bank go for that? Why won't the developer make that investment? So we had that broken down and gave ourselves an example apartment complex to kind of understand what were Salina's development pro forma numbers. And then an implementation roadmap. We updated that again in 2022. We have an update that's gonna come out this year and I have a, a contract with RDG to do five updates. So that would be our third one. We have two more so that we can, we can stay consistent and up to date with that data. Next slide, Paige. I wanted to talk about our demand program. This is through analysis with RDG, Marty Schukert. He's pretty memorable if you've ever met Marty.
Looks like Doc Brown from Back to the Future.
From Back to the Future. Um, he's a great planner and a real resource. But Marty looked at all that data that we collected, looked at our demand models, looked at future employees coming to employers, looked at a variety of things and came up with this demand model.
He also looked at income levels and stratified housing affordability and price point in terms of owner occupied or rental based on our demographics and our income levels.
And at the end of the day, what we wanted to know, there's a lot of data in there, but this one in particular. How many owner occupied houses did I need and how many rentals did I need? What would keep us on track so that if Great Plains wanted to expand more, if I had a new employer come in that I could say we were gonna have enough housing? And so you can see in that demand program, you've got the owner occupied and then it's done by total, or it's done by income. So you've got units of less than 225,000. So it's dwelling unit price. You have units of 225 to 300,000. So it's kind of broken up into those pieces. Even that 225 or less number was to try and piece, just kind of segregate really anything under that 225 number. It, they're very small segments. So really anything under 225, it was easier to lump them together strategically and statistically. So if you're wondering, why did you come up with that number? Why not go down to 100,000 or 150? And the typical home these days, you're not building anything for much less than 250,000. So that's another reason that we kind of went with that number. If you're getting something less than 250, it's an existing structure that's, that's either being resold or rehabbed. So, and then we. So, and then we get into those rentals. We've got less than 265 a month. Then you've got 265 to 1,000 a month, 1,000 to 1,500 a month, and then over 1,500 a month. So those are rentals. So if there are these three or two columns really, you've got that first column that's 2022 to 2025. That means next year, I got to have this many units by the end of next year. And then after that, I've got 26 to 2030. So broken down these five-year increments. So our goal is then by the end of next year to have 1,357 units total. I need 678 owner occupied and I need 678 rentals. In addition to that demand program, we also talked about kind of how, how do you look at that 10-year system? You know, where do you start, right? So years zero to three are really about accommodating immediate housing demand, right? How do we get some apartments built? How do we get some houses built? And it's probably going to be new construction and it's probably going to be a larger development. How do you build community capacity to address those core needs? How do you demonstrate demand for more diverse housing? And how do you identify strategic infrastructure investments? Well, there's a lot of different ways and we've done a lot of different things and most of them have been fairly successful. If we really look at that next piece, which is medium three to eight years, that's about creating stable, effective structures and really filling in that supply gap. So we've taken care of the immediate crisis. Now we're starting to make kind of conscious thoughts of like, how do we build long-term sustainable housing? So increasing transition, expanding ownership, implementing neighborhood fortification strategies that increase infill feasibility. Typically, we use two terms, infill and greenfield. Infill is something that's being added to an existing neighborhood. You know, you've got a block, you've got this house that's blighted, it comes down, you put a new house in, that's infill. In a big city like Wyandotte that has had a lot of trouble in Wyandotte County area, you know, they had whole blocks that got demoed and redeveloped. That's infill development. When we say greenfield, that's usually stuff on the outskirts of town, vacant lot, and we're going to build from the ground up. Usually doesn't have infrastructure, may not have road access at that point, a variety of things. But that's kind of the two categories. So when we say infill and neighborhood fortification, we're dealing with stuff that exists. And then that long-term stuff is advancing substantial private reinvestment in the core neighborhoods, maintaining self-sustaining private market. We don't need to use incentives forever, right? The idea is you incentivize, this thing happens and then the market starts to take over. And then continue to assist owners and renters to expand access and opportunities. So there are all kinds of different products. Maybe we don't incentivize these products because we've got what we needed, but maybe incentives go to something different, something that we aren't getting into the market that we want.
You might also mention how we try to do contiguous growth also.
Contiguous?
Contiguous.
Contiguous.
Yeah.
And when Lauren refers to on the edge of the city, that's maybe on the edge of existing development. So Stone Lake and Magnolia Hills and some of those. Our comp plan calls out kind of a strategic approach to extending infrastructure, not leapfrogging. But it's still greenfield in the fact that it's not already existing and developed subdivision. And their developer, it's easier in some respects to greenfield development than it is infill. So I'll allow them to gravitate to that.
And you'll see like also in the Live Salina Plan, and we use this map quite frequently with developers, we have kind of these nodes that are ideal for redevelopment, that are identified in town too, that, you know, the infrastructure is right there. You just got to connect to it. You know, that there's road access, you're just going to have to upgrade. But, you know, here's vacant spots that if we had to grow, we've already invested in the infrastructure. You know, let's make use of that.
Man, we've talked about it in other settings, but the sewer interceptor line on the east side of town is an investment that was made quite some time ago that creates a development corridor. The work that was done for was Magnolia Commons, Menards. We put a lot of work into getting that baseline infrastructure. And it's not just extending a dead-end water line to a lot that wants to be developed. It's looping to the entire system. So we have fire flows. So we have some areas where elements of infrastructure are in place. And that's, that's an opportunity for greenfield development contiguous to what's going on versus something that's more far-flung.
Yeah.
Of course, I couldn't remember the answer to, on the demand program, if someone, let's say moves up, you know, gets a bigger, newer house, is their vacated house counted as a new unit being brought on the market? So that would be included in this 1,300?
Yeah, so I mean, it's all part of that cycle, right? So I now become, I sold my house to this person. That's a unit. I went up, I purchased a unit because maybe that higher up unit I was able to purchase because it didn't exist before.
So we don't have, these aren't 1,300 units that we have to build necessarily? I mean, because some of the, the vacated house is already built.
Maybe not at that price. We don't have to build it at that price point. One of the concepts in the housing study was a recognition that for lack of other alternatives, people were staying in their homes when they might otherwise move up. So the housing study talks about the benefit of higher dollar homes to have a move-up housing. And then it also speaks about senior living and Presbyterian manner. And what they're doing is an example where we now have seniors moving into those units and their housing is in some of these desirable price points and it's going back on the market.
And I mean, we're still not averaging much more than 30 units available on the MLS at any one time. And just to break that down, I got 30 units. I'm looking for a two-bed, one-bath garage. I want this size yard. I gotta, it's all got to be on one level. I mean, each one of those criteria, you're looking at probably five houses, five houses for that one person. And so that it's really not a lot of selections. So really, I mean, until we see that available on the market monthly MLS amount change, it's not a huge determining factor into the amount of units we need available. Now, we could count, you know, the county does a project or one of the cities in the county. I mean, we have, the study allows for like our neighboring municipalities to add stock, right?
But the housing study also assumes that there's going to be some development outside of the city limits just to respond to that identified demand too.
Yeah, so Assyria, you know, builds some houses, you know, the model accounts for that. So it still puts a lot on us to either build a bunch of new houses that's to get somebody out of another price point or, you know, we're waiting. So.
I think, so Wichita State does presentations every year where they talk about housing stock and how many houses should be available on a healthy market. And so what they've said for our market for the last four, five, six years, maybe even longer, is we have less than one month's supply of houses on the market. And a healthy market is six to eight. So we really need five times the amount of empty houses on the market just for regular influx and the kind of transitory, you know, moving from one place to the next kind of housing. So it's not just that, these are, these are kind of the houses that we need in order to be available for people to move in, but it doesn't necessarily count a healthy market and what would just be empty at any given time. If that makes sense.
So I wanted to highlight this slide because this is not a one-year thing. Like we're, it's a 10-year trajectory to get us to a place of having a healthy, sustainable housing stock and making these key investments. So we're really in and through year zero through three and coming into three through eight. Next slide please.
In the initial state housing study, I recall from that that one of the issues in the whole state is so many vacant properties. And I know just myself, a lot of vacant properties here. Is that anything that we track?
So there's a difference between vacant and habitable. I have vacant properties nobody should be living in. They aren't habitable. And I do know, like in working with other communities and some of the work I've done with like the state's Rural Prosperity Division under Commerce, that we have super rural communities that have houses that have just been walked away from. And potentially could be habitable. But just because they're vacant, you still have to have an owner who wants to do something with them. And I can't, you can't force them if they're still mowing and they're still paying their taxes. And one of the biggest problems, I think this is just fascinating, so it's just a little. One of the biggest problems in rural Kansas, so places just, we're always the monkey in the middle. Anybody smaller than us, one of the biggest problems that they have is you have these old farmhouses that Grandma and Grandpa had. Grandma and Grandpa passed or moved into something else and they're used as like a familial Airbnb. Kids come home from college, it's Christmas, so they never sell it. That's a perfectly viable residential unit in that town that has less housing than we do. I wouldn't be surprised if we have some of those. I know we've got some, you know, college-aged parents have bought their kids going to Kansas Wesleyan. We have a variety of different situations going on. So whether it's vacant permanently or vacant partly or for a short duration is interesting. We also have like a lot of, you know, elderly people dying, a house ending up in probate for a while. And so it may be vacant, but we're just not going to know for a year or two. And as long as taxes are getting paid, it may be at the other end of somebody's probate journey through last will and testament kind of stuff. Or, you know, it's going through the legal journey that is property tax foreclosure, that they get at least three years to go through that. And, you know, we kind of have to hold out and wait. We do try to track vacancies through things like water, customer accounting records, through police and fire records if we have, you know, violations or concerns. But it's not easy data to track. And there are a variety of reasons, even if I do find something vacant, that it might be vacant. And if there's no reason, they aren't breaking any rules, it's kind of hard to do anything about. So that is kind of one of the challenges with vacant properties. As I mentioned, we're in, we're pretty much through years one through three. And that was really dealing with that immediate core emergency. We have over 300 new owner occupied homes being constructed using MIH and RHID in the last couple of years. That's a significant amount of houses. And both projects are underway. We have more plats processed and approved in this, in the last couple of years than we have in the last 10 years all added together. I mean, just an insane amount of plating. We have secured our second largest, we were the second largest single ARPA allocation in the state of Kansas to do Salina Destination, that project. The only people that beat us out were the Cheese Factory and Josh. So that was a big, big, big investment in our community. And we're through the first phase, the development agreement. We're starting to work on what those next steps are for Phase Two. And, I mean, that's going to result in a significant number of rental units, which will get us very far. If you're looking at that demand, that demand program, if you think about it, our goal with Salina Destination, and when we went to the Capitol to get money, was 500-plus units of rental housing. Our goal by 2025 is 678. It's not bad. I got 178 left.
How many units are coming in on the new Lee project? Is that 50?
50, 50 there and I've got like nine over at the Townhouse project and. Well, yeah, we're going to go through the snapshot here in a second. So it'll, that's a lot better than my memory. So. We've worked with developers. Lee Building is a great example to support their LIHTC applications, which is low-income housing tax credit. We brought in additional ARPA dollars for Southview and for Aeroplanes. They were able to get additional funding. We've reached out to Commerce. We've built good relationships with them. I mean, heck, the governor, Lieutenant Governor, put us on his plane circuit to bring developers to the community. We were the first community in Kansas showcased under the Developer Showcase Call that has hundreds of developers call in to learn about communities to develop in Kansas. We were the first pilot project for that. We've been to Topeka and advocated for Holmes Road, Magnolia Road. We're seeing progress on Magnolia. And that's part of that infrastructure piece, you know, how do we build infrastructure that makes it easier to develop? So working those angles too. And if you notice, like all of that is coming from the plan. We're doing the thing, which is not something that's always easy to do. Or sometimes the plan isn't always right. And in this case, I think we're seeing results. We're doing what the plan said and it's making sense. So we're on track. Next slide please. So we're into year three and eight. This is really about increasing ownership opportunities and really neighborhood stabilization. Because that increase in ownership, if you note in that demand program, I've got some of my biggest need in that under 225,000 category. And the only way I'm satisfying that is through existing homes. That's rehab. So we talked a lot last year about getting ourselves set up for this year on rehab. And we were able to secure that nearly million-dollar federal home loan grant. 44 homes, that's a lot of houses. I mean, if somebody came and said, hey, I'm going to fix 44 homes or build 44 homes, we'd be giddy. Rehabbing 44 homes is even harder. So that's a good chunk of homes in North Salina that we're going to be able to impact. If we get the CDBG dollars, we can have even more impact in that same neighborhood. And that's a grant for over 400,000. And then we're also trying to combine those rehab applications that come in for that neighborhood. We're just going to build upon the stuff that we've already got. We're going to put it into the NRA. They already apply. We're just going to do that application at the same time. Weatherization, we're working with North Central Regional Planning Commission and the CHODO, who are managing weatherization programs for the state to just dump weatherization in that same application. And working with their VA qualified, working with the VA to get them more benefits and more funds. One of the things that we found, and we're also talking with the state about this, on the rehab world, many of those programs have dollars for project costs that are 10 years old. So it's like, oh, here's 25,000, that's your max you can spend on a home. 25,000 is not doing a lot these days. You know, if we're talking a foundation, if we're talking all-new wiring, we're talking all-new windows, and it's usually two or three of these things. It's usually windows, roof. I need more than 25,000. So that's where we can help at a local level of kind of saying, all right, you're already turning the paperwork in. Let's just, let's just build this stuff. Let's just, incentive rule we call stacking. Let's stack the incentives to get you the biggest bang for your buck, right? The other thing is, a lot of times these programs, the people who need the money do not have the experience in the paperwork and all the pieces that go along with it. So if you have to send them to three or four different entities to get these benefits, they're just not going to get them. So majority of the paperwork we take in for our grant is almost identical to the other stuff. So we've worked with these entities and they're willing to share that administrative piece by saying, hey, if you took this in, we'll take that too. So that's a real advantage. So that's kind of part of that, is stabilizing that neighborhood, using this as a good case study. And also trying to get more funds to do more substantial work. Not just, not just new windows. Let's get you a roof. Let's get you a foundation. Let's create safe, healthy and sustainable housing, right? You're maybe not getting granite countertops, but you have an efficient toilet. You have electrical that's not burning down the house. And you're not paying thousands of dollars in heating bills or air conditioning bills. That's a good start. Because there's nothing worse than giving somebody a house and then they can't, it's not sustainable, right? I have houses that come in all the time, tenants. People to community relations. In the investigation, you can see what they're paying in rent, but there's no insulation in the house they're staying in. They're old ancient windows. The roof needs to be repaired. And their monthly utilities are as high as their rent. And it's just, it's mind-blowing. So a sustainable, healthy home is just as important as affording a house. So that's part of what we're trying to do there. Okay, let's talk housing snapshot. That is a PDF on the file. I don't want to destroy this, so. Well, Jacob is pulling that up. We kind of keep a running list. It's a little hard because I also have certain employers who like this list to be able to talk to their bosses and say, hey, Salina is doing housing. These things are happening. I have perspective. You know, we'll get a call from Mitch over at Economic Development. And he'll say, hey, I've got a potential investor. What do you got going on in housing? And so we kind of keep this running list. And then sometimes the commission asks, you know, what are you guys up to? So this is really since we started tracking housing out of the Live Salina Plan. We have added, the Delray Mobile Home Park was a two-phase approach, but they added 47 units and that price point was 625.
Have they done all 47? It says here 23 units can still be placed. Or have they done that now?
They have been placed.
They have been placed.
The hard part on that was the water. Yeah.
So that is completed, okay?
Yeah, in case anyone ever asks, water has to come in a circuit. It's amazing how somebody will pick up a piece of land and be like, oh, you just run the pipe over there. That's not how it works. And if you like, Martha Task will tell you why not. But water always has to come in a circuit. Because if it breaks at one point, then it's got the rest of the circuit to still serve everybody. But if it's not on a circuit and it's dead end somewhere, it's no go. So sometimes it's hard.
There's also minimum flow requirements, just from a safety standpoint and fire code. And you just. And, and it's just near impossible to meet that with a dead end line.
Correct. And, I mean, and sometimes we get into some of our older neighborhoods in town. We have to look at types of pipes, size of pipes, type of use, some of those things. But this was really just convincing them that they had to have a circuit.
Wasn't this the old name of the trailer park?
This is the.
This is the North 13th trailer park.
This is the one that they tore over.
They call it something new.
Yeah, but most people know it by this, so.
They still call it that.
Well, and remember, this isn't published anywhere. Like this is, this is us just kind of a running track of what we've got going on. So I, you know what? When I get back to the office, I will rename this. But for, for us, it was just like, okay, Delraye is taken care of. I mean.
Brings back bad memories for some people.
Well, I will change that, Mayor, thank you. Um, we had, really coming out of COVID, we had a lot going on with mobile home parks. We had Cedar Creek, West Cloud Commons and Prairie Village all go under new ownership. And that brought in new units.
Did they actually bring in that many units in? I knew they.
Yeah, it was a lot. And just getting them placed and a couple of them had to make sure they had their, like storm shelters and their park plans and things like that. Because once they got over a certain number of units, they had to have stuff for tornadoes and things like that. So it was, it was a little bit of work. Cedarhurst, beautiful, shiny. I'm sure many of you have seen it on Ohio. So, do they have a CO yet?
Yeah, they have a sign out front, opening soon.
Yeah, soon. That doesn't mean CO. But, um, they have a TCO, so they're moving equipment and stuff in.
Do they?
Yeah, it's near completion. It's, it's been the last couple of weeks kind of back and forth on just the last couple of things.
There's people living in there, aren't there?
Are they living?
There's certain pieces that have been completely completed, but it seems like that there's a couple that they're maybe still doing detail work. But they do have a CO to have people living in there.
Well, that's something, you know, it's, sometimes it's more work on us, but it's something we often will do with development to, to be more accommodating is if we have to break stuff up. So this wing is ready to go. All right, well, we'll CO this wing, but we won't CO this wing because they're still missing pieces. That means they can move stuff into here. This one will come on here. I mean, we just talked about a project yesterday.
Well, yeah, and actually I was, in the interest of time, didn't bring it up before. But when we were talking about DRT and one of the things Lauren had on there was all the things that we can do concurrently, that's to help move development along. Rather than saying, first we need the annex, then we need to amend the future land use map, then we need to zone, then we need to plat. We'll run all that concurrently. We'll do deferred submittals where as part of our plan review, we identify, okay, we're going to need this before you can commence, but we'll get your permit out the door. As it relates to conditional approvals and, and TCOs, there, there was a point in time where the TCO items were being overlooked so much by the owner and contractor. We actually had the chamber pushing us to stop issuing TCOs as if TCOs were the problem. But they were the way that we were getting the project off the ground on the front end to, to give them more time to get their, their, um, final details together. And so we, at every turn, we tried to be as flexible as we can within code and within reason.
Well, in this last year, we created a footing and foundations only permit. So some of the times what we run into, like particularly in these colder seasons is we'll get, we're even on some longer term projects. They're like, I, the concrete guy is coming tomorrow. Are we good at to this point? Can we just pour concrete? I know we are, are going vertical stuff is going to take another minute. We've got something to sort out with the architect, but we can all agree footings and foundations are good. Yes, we all agree that's good. And so sometimes when it comes to concrete and that workforce, we're able to break those out, which often is very helpful to a project, so. Um, the CHODO has been working on some units. That's Community Housing Development Organization. They are going through, um, they bought a bunch of houses from the Housing Authority. So I don't even know if those, yeah, those are on here. And then we have the RAD conversion that's coming from the Housing Authority. So they're kind of like a twofer. Our Housing Authority has one of the largest scattered site collections in the state. I'm looking at Hoppick because we had to go through this with them. Um, and RAD is a federal mandate through HUD that says, hey, we don't want these scattered sites anymore. And hey, we have a new way to finance like building and, and asset improvement. And that's to do these public-private partnerships. So you need to dispose of what you have so that you can reinvest in these new units. So in their disposal process, the CHODO bought 44 units from them and have turned them into affordable, low income rental units. Then the RAD process, that, that disposal allows them cash to rebuild. And they are looking this year to start construction on 48 units on cloud of new apartments.
And I actually, I just met with Housing Authority folks yesterday. Um, so they sold a lot of units, but they did keep some units. They're using some of the money that they, that they used or that they got from the sale to remodel the units that they currently have. So they're in that process. They are planning to apply through the state for Lytec, um, housing incentives. And they will need some, some stuff from us, a resolution of support and a few other things. But they're planning to get back in the cycle and try and apply. I think that's later in May or June.
On the cloud, on the cloud property.
On the cloud project.
Yeah.
So that, I think they've applied, I don't know if it's one or two times, but they weren't as competitive as they thought they were going to be. And I think they're kind of regrouping and trying to get an application out again this year. So you'll see, something will come before the commission, um, probably in, before May, um, with that.
And Lytec is really hard. It's one, there are certain people who just do it. It's their business model. They're a good developer for Lytec. And two, if we already have a Lytec project in Salina, the others are on a waiting list. So for instance, like Lee Building, they're Lytec. We had others who were interested in doing Lytec projects, but they were next in line and everybody else was just going to continue to wait. It's, it's like literally an impossible thing, like the state would approve two Lytec projects in one spot.
But we do get requests for letters of support, resolutions of support from multiples. We generally just go ahead and, we, we don't discern between one or the other. We indicate our support and let the state sort it out.
So, and that's, that's a good transition to the Lee Lofts, second and third phases. Um, we're looking at 82 units total. So that first phase that we were talking about earlier is 50 units, I think. And then that second piece is the remainder 32-ish. So, um, we're working on building permits with them and they're kind of starting that process. We've got on Brock Road, uh, townhome duplexes, and those are also rentals. That's what I was mentioning in that last 167 that we've got to add after hopefully 500 plus from, um, Salina Destination, or that was our goal when we went to the state. We've got, um, 18 units there. And then.
Yeah, I was just by there and they, they were getting ready to pour footings, so.
Mm-hmm. It's happening.
It's happening.
As long as it's done by the end of 2025, we get to count it. Um, we have 500 units that we've talked about. That's that Salina Destination project that we're, we're trying to get to that number. Now remember, I mean, these are, these are our hopes. You know, we still got to get through phase two and that, that may change things, but we're hoping 500 units. Kansas Wesleyan added 10 tiny homes. We included that because those are our units that those, those kids are not renting something else.
Same could be said for K-State's dorm building.
Um.
And that was 100.
Why did we not include that though? I can't remember why we didn't include the dorms.
That's a hundred, 100 and some doors, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, we also didn't permit, if it's on the state property, we don't permit it. So maybe that's why.
I'm going to put it on mine.
You're going to put it on yours?
For this purpose, I would include.
Yeah, we will add that. Um, and then, so those were all our rental components. So then we start to get into the owner occupied. We've got Southview, um, looking at a total of 66 townhomes, 42 houses.
Is that number based on our changes?
Okay. And then we've got Aeroplanes that is working up to 300 of their townhomes. We've got Wheatland Valley that has planted 29 lots and they are working through that. They anticipate a three to five year build out. So when we say three to five year build out, because I don't have them on a development agreement, I know, I can't say you must produce X by the state.
Didn't they just come to us for phase two? Are they talking on, on Wheatland? Cause I think all those lots are gone.
Um, we could.
Yeah, they came, they came for special assessments.
On phase two, yeah.
So that's the beginning stages of pursuing phase two.
Yeah, which means, so at the time that we did this, we had 11 homes under construction in Wheatland Valley, phase one. So Cedar Ridge, phase two. And Cedar Ridge and Cedar Point are those ones off of Cedar Ridge Drive. And the Cools are developing those. So I know, I, the joke in the office is no more subdivisions with the word cedar in it. Um, so they have, Cedar Ridge has 14 lots and Cedar Point has 22 lots. Um, there is, one has started than the other, but they're both looking at roughly a five to six year build out frame. And then we have Magnolia Hills, phase two. And that's going to be 16 lots. They're looking at one to three years. Stone Lake, phase three, section A is 41 lots with a build out of three to five years. That has infrastructure complete and 39 building permits have been issued. I've got Stone Lake, phase three, sections B and C. Those are another 28 in B lots and 37 in C. And they see 33 to five years for that. Infrastructure's under construction, no building permits yet. Stone Lake addition two, I've got 48 lots. And unsure if it's all going to be residential and it's just continuation of the existing subdivision, it's newly planted. Um, then overlook, last but not least, is 11 lots. Those are some very high-end homes, which actually if you look at our demand model, we do need. Um, and they're looking at a one to six year build out. You just approved specials, so they'll start that infrastructure construction hopefully this year. So there at the bottom, you can see we've done, this is not always a perfect science, you know? You may have some in Wheatland Valley sell for more or less than what they've told us they anticipate the home selling for. But based off the information we know, you can see here, from the demand model, we've got units needed by 2025 and then units projected. We are not doing bad. I mean, we are, we are, I, I would say we're on track. I mean, we got a whole this year and all of next year to try and meet these numbers. But as far as units needed total, um, versus units projected, we're doing pretty well. So for instance, you know, we're exceeding in the 225 to 300 range in owner occupied. And we're also exceeding in the rentals of 625 to 1,000. And we're exceeding, um, in the 1,500 a month category. So.
And let's, let's not lose sight of, this is not in our control. I mean, the, the numbers, the price points are logical math in terms of pay rates and income levels and assumptions about what people can afford. But as Lauren said earlier, that doesn't make anything buildable at that price point. Um, and the, the consultants acknowledge that, and this is a strat, their best effort to kind of stratify, but it, it's going to ebb and flow across different categories, owner versus renter. Uh, at the end of the day, we, we don't absolutely have to hit these numbers on the spot as much as try to respond to that overall demand.
Well, and if you remember, I mean, 2021 is when we did the update to the, this. But if you think of the construction costs have still continued to.
Interest rates?
And, and to increase significantly. Thank goodness, I think we've had some wage inflation, which has helped too. But when we look at this, when we're looking at less than 225, I, I'm like you, I don't know if you can build under 225 anymore, you know? So now you, everything kind of gets ratcheted up a little bit, so.
Well, and, and, you know, when we get under 225 and you build new, we start talking about tiny houses and micro units and things like that.
And you start worrying about quality.
Yes, that's also very true, for sure. And land. I mean, if you're, if you're building something that doesn't have utilities, there's no way you're doing that for under 225. You're going to have to find something infill wise. Um, and, and we do have some things on our radar that get into that, you know, eight-year plus category or, you know, your six and seven categories that we're looking at to start, you know, again, digging into some of those smaller numbers. But yeah, some of those are the hardest to, to do. And the building advisory board right now and going through their building permit review, there's a, a special addition that you can adopt for tiny houses. And they're reviewing that right now to see if that's something that we could add to the toolbox that, that works, so.
Cause we have a minimum home size, or don't we? Or don't we have some restrictions?
We have some minimum housing standards, but I mean, we, we've, I've had different developers bring products to us, like Kansas Wesleyans tiny homes. And, and those all met code. So I mean, you can get pretty small. The real big challenge, Mike and I've talked about this, is stairs versus ladders. Like we won't, you, you got to put in a set of stairs. But when.
By current code.
By current code. But there, if you look at the tiny house code that we're looking at right now, you would allow ladders in certain situations. So that's us just trying to expand that inventory. How, how do we get to some of these other numbers? I mean, the other thing, for time's sake, I don't want to get too much into, but it's how do we use the land bank and how do we start infilling vacant lots? Or, you know, homes that nobody wants, how, how do you get those rehabbed? You know, if they are vacant, some of those things. But, you know, there's a reason Marty identified those as kind of later in the cycle kind of stuff, because they take work, they take investigation, they take money, they take staff resources to kind of manage all the nuance of that stuff versus, you know, somebody wants to build 50 houses? Okay, let's get you a permit, let's get you planted, let's get you out the door.
Well, and that's the more typical housing product that people are expecting. If we can build out that, that selection of housing products, then you start to supplement it with tiny homes and other things and see if the market reacts.
Maybe for our discussion in the strategic planning session, could we get a short little update on the original impetus for a minimum building? So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, whose advantage was it to set this minimum? I mean, the logical answer would be the building. But, um, I mean, is there any rationale for even having a minimum size house at this point? I mean, that's a rhetorical question.
Even HUD has a minimum size standard, but I, I'd be happy to kind of pull that together to give you some different pieces. I will say that I, I haven't had anybody come into the office where we haven't been able to work through their trouble with our current building code. It's really, I mean, if, it's really when you want to get rid of windows and you want to get rid of stairs and stuff, but we've even found ways to get minimal windows in. We, we, our current building code would support Conexes being converted into housing. I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do. It's just when you start leaving whole pieces out, and the reason you're leaving stairs out is because it eats up square footage for the smaller the unit. Um.
I can tell you from my experience in the Kansas City market, there's a lot of conversation about setting the minimum square footage at 1,100 or 1,200 square feet. HUD was involved, uh, Department of Ag was involved as well in terms of those standards. But the rationale was much like other zoning codes and aesthetic codes, presumption about impact on property values in the neighborhood. And so there's kind of that presumption that a smaller home, um, had lesser value and it negatively impacted the neighborhood. I think that, that thinking's changed, um, because of kind of the housing market and it's seen.
So it was never a health or safety issue?
Yeah, there, well, there are some code requirements about bedroom sizes and occupant loads and things like that, but, um.
Well, and it's like, you, you need a certain amount of space to do a kitchen, like and to get all the safety components into the kitchen. There's a certain amount of space needed for bathroom, I mean, some of those things. But, I mean, that's, that's why we're exploring that, to, to ask ourselves, you know, are there certain circumstances and what does that look like in building code, so?
And, and I've seen that, so it, it has really fundamentally changed. I remember when in Blue Springs, a really, uh, large house on a large lot, uh, went ahead and put in essentially a lot of mini homes on these. So you went from one house on this massive lot to one house, very small yard and 20 mini homes. And people lost their mind in that neighborhood. I mean, it was, it was stopped several times by, uh, the city commission. It went back, they appealed. And so I think a lot of that mindset, you'll still see it, but it's not as prevalent as it used to be in the past, of thinking that it's going to destroy my home values in the neighborhood.
That's a really good point. Wichita had a knockout drag out fight over one down there. Um, some of that's proactive stuff, that's educational things as we get further down kind of this timeline in housing, having conversations about ADUs. I mean, one of the things we've been talking about as a staff of possibly researching, you know, in 2025 is, or even this year, if we have time, there's like kind of, they're like pre-approved building permits for certain types of product. And it's not that it's much as a time and, and fiscal thing, but also helping to encourage different product types is infill housing. Um, one of the communities that's been doing it, to Sean's point, they want some higher density in there. To Sean's point, they want some higher density in there, but people were freaking out saying, oh, it's gonna affect my home value. Would they, they have one of their pre-approved permits, looks just like a two-story home, single-family residential. But in the pantry, there's the ability to turn that pantry into a secondary entrance off the side of the house. And it's all plumbed and electrically set up to become two units if it has to, or it's desired by somebody. So it looks like a single-family home, but it's a two-unit home. Or it could be converted back. And that's a product they wanted to incentivize, so they have a pre-approved building permit for that. And there are others like that. And it's trying to kind of, you know, and, and the process they went through to do that, had a ton of public involvement. Talked with the neighborhood about kind of what they hoped it looked like, so that you were avoiding some of that backlash to upping that density. So, there, there, there's stuff down the path that I think we can start to explore as we kind of get through the urgency part.
And the tiny homes have evolved a lot. I think a lot of people still had visions of campers in, you know, in the yard or something like that. Rather than, you know, stick-built and everything of that nature. So, again, that goes back to just trying to front-load the, the, the question before people and getting the information out, so that people don't off, operate off false assumptions.
That is what makes infill hard. Is, you know, you're dealing with change and you're dealing with people's perceptions. So, you can't just swoop in, you can't just go and clear a block, you can't just dump a new product. And so when I say like, that just takes time and resources and strategy. It's because in that infill stuff, we've got to work with the neighborhoods to make, to have that all make sense.
And if we do that work preliminarily, instead of the developer, the developer's sizing that up, saying, I don't even know what the outcome's gonna be. Am I gonna put forth the time and energy and expense? If we can kind of plow that ground and have some predetermined outcomes, then maybe we can get some interest.
Jacob, if you wanna go back to the PowerPoint, and we'll just click past this slide. And even. Keep going, keep going. Debbie, do you want to talk through some of these?
Um, I would let you talk through the incentive itself and then I can just go through the numbers.
So, a lot of times when we talk about incentives, one of the things that we have the ability to deal with is property tax. So IRBs or industrial revenue bonds, um, can go a couple different ways. The original use of them was for industrial things. So, you had a major employer who was making expansion, a significant number of new employees, significant fiscal, uh, investment in the structure. Which means, in the long run, a more taxable component for us. But you would give them a tax break for a certain duration. In Kansas State statute, you can also do an IRB on, uh, rental housing. You can't do it on owner occupied, but you can do it on rental and the state views those rentals as a commercial endeavor. So IRBs can be used like that as well. It does not guarantee that a city has to give a ten-year abatement on an IRB, but that is the max duration. It's usually what is asked for, but a city could do less, you could do five years, and it doesn't guarantee that you have to do a hundred percent. You could do fifty percent or twenty-five in your housing incentive policy for IRBs. You actually talk about, you know, that they have to do a certain, you know, a project has to be a certain size. It has to have certain features to actually get that full amount. And we do have city code that deals with this, that refers back to state statute.
And then they're also subject to a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. So, we can say it's a hundred percent, but it's, it, there are clawbacks if they don't meet employment levels, investment levels. You can dial, dial that back. Now, having said that, um, and when the time comes, you'll be asked to not invoke those clawbacks or.
And it is also important to remember that there's two components to that. There's the IRB as far as the property tax, but then there's the IRB in regards to the sales tax on the building materials. And so the sales tax on building materials is much easier to process and to get through. Cause it does not require the same amount of notice requirements that the property tax IRB requires.
And there are slight differences in the city's process. IRBs for commercial and industrial go to the EDO board. And you have a policy specifically, specifically related to IRBs for housing that go to you. So, there's slight difference in those processes. And the commercials and resi, or commercial and industrial get processed by the EDO and Sean. And the residential ones get processed by us in Development Services. So Debbie, I think you pulled these numbers.
So as part of that, this conversation, Mike wanted us to just kind of look at what, what do we have currently in, in all of these incentives? And kind of what the cost of these incentives are. So currently under IRBs, we have seven active IRBs. Uh, one's, uh, Schwanz doesn't actually go into effect until twenty-twenty-four. But you can see they're, they're pretty minimal amounts for the older IRBs. The current ones for Great Plains and Superior Contract, Contracting, which is a thirty percent IRB, um, or a little bit more. But this is, these are amounts that we have to, um, report in our audit. Um, so we keep track of what these amounts are and how these are, uh, how we're affected by these numbers, but just the effect it's on the city.
And it's worth noting, an industrial revenue bond is a true property abatement. So, let's say the property is worth, let's use easy math, ten bucks now, you improve it and it's worth a hundred. For the time the commission approves, so let's say a hundred percent, ten years. I'm going to pay taxes on my ten-dollar value, not on my hundred-dollar value. When the ten is over, then I pay on the hundred.
And the IRB abates the, not just our taxes, but all the other taxing entities as well.
Right. Hence the notice requirements.
Lots of many notices.
And if you're ever looking it up, they're, they show as exempt. The value, if you look the value of any of these properties, you'll see a taxable, a commercial taxable appraisal value, and you'll see an exempt, uh, value. And tho, those are kept separately on the tax rolls.
That's only if it's new, be, because like with Great Plains, they're still paying tax. So would it show exempt? Because you're still collecting tax on that, that base.
It will show part of it as taxable and then it'll show part of that value as exempt. So they'll have two, two values that add up to their whole value.
Okay.
Yep. If you'll hit next slide.
With the other tax delay, it just takes one of them to say no and it's over?
Uh, the county and the school district have veto authority essentially. And then some of these projects end up in USD three-oh-six rather than three-oh-five. But they, I, to everyone's credit, they, the county and the school districts have been very, uh, open. And it kind of acknowledged that they're not getting, this isn't revenue that they are receiving and they're gonna lose. It's an investment going forward. And Jacob and I've joked that, you know, year eleven's gonna be a good year.
Yeah, I think, I think.
There's gonna be quite a bit that comes back on the rolls.
I think the public gets confused, cause I think they think we're giving away taxes that we're already collecting. And it's like, no, we're not taking anything away and.
Just not collecting the new.
You hear industrial revenue bonds and it's like with housing and that just throws everything off.
Well, the other thing that gets confusing is the reference to bonds. Originally, it was debt financed, the, the city would issue bonds, they would be bond proceeds. You'd share with the, the developer, the project. And then you could sell those bonds on the open market and then they would pay back over time. Then it turned into a buy-your-own-bonds type scenario where, yeah, there were bonds, but, you know, Great Plains, Schwanz, whoever was buying the bonds. So they were paying themselves back, and if they defaulted, no one was out other than themselves. Now it's turned into a paper transaction. And it is, it still has to go through quite a bit of paperwork, but it gets the sales tax exemption that Sean mentioned. And then by way of just processing the paperwork, it gets them the property tax exemption. Uh, and it's, it's, the end result is much more streamlined. From the paper processing side of it, it can get a little cumbersome.
Yeah, I made, I made a comment, you really want to be a city commissioner about eleven years. When all these come back, when these come on the books.
Well, and the interesting thing about IRBs, one of the reasons they're like the mo, one of the most used, is they're kind of a whole kit and caboodle incentive. A lot of incentives sometimes are carved out to only these things, like you can only buy the property or you can only spend it on infrastructure. You can only spend it on vertical construction. Pretty much all of it's covered under IRB.
So, but generally don't break in with breaking news, but a couple of you have friends at the, and relatives at the parade. There's been a shooting. One person dead and nine injured at the Super Bowl Parade for the Chiefs.
That's so unfortunate.
Yeah, I know, it hadn't checked in.
Yep, my son's in the car on the way home.
Jacob, I know we're getting close on time, so I want a quick touch on TIF. This is primarily used like downtown. We, we've got a TIF down there for some of those projects. It stands for Tax Increment Financing. When we talk about RHIDs or Rural Housing Incentive District, it's basically a residential TIF. So that's one way to talk about it. And why, how it's different than an IRB, for instance, is, remember how we talked about, the IRB has that duration? And they're basically gonna pay on that existing tax rate for that time. Tax increment is going to capture and rebate that. But that increment is increasing every year, cause hopefully the value of the property is increasing every year. So, as fast as that increases, it pays itself back. So sometimes you'll have a, a TIF at ten years, and those values increase fast enough that it can pay itself off sooner. So, and from a paper transaction point of view, it's not quite as simple. That person's still coming in and paying their taxes. And then we're rebating what's owed them back. But the taxes are still being collected and there's, there's a, it's not a full exemption like that. It's a more rebate.
And you can issue TIF bonds. And I, and the scenario I described before, you can actually issue the bonds of the city and put those proceeds towards eligible expenses and then get paid back over time. We did that with the Coles TIF, and it paid off early. Um, we've been able to strategically take a position that, uh, we prefer pay-as-you-go. Um, essentially, we're not gonna front money by issuing debt. If a developer believes in their project and it's gonna, they're projecting it's gonna generate that revenue. And we just commit that increment as it's generated. And, and that's been successful in a number of instances, including the downtown. Without going into even more detail, uh, or great detail, the downtown project has allocated funds and uses of those funds. And so it's not exactly, some of it's going back to the developer, but quite a bit of that is just creating economic development funds to be used to encourage development in the downtown.
So, we don't have RHIDs in here because the projects are so new, we don't have them paying in taxes yet, so Debbie doesn't have that data to pull. So if you're wondering like, hey, what about the Mih and the RHID and all those things? They, we, they're still new and so they're not, they're not in these yet.
They'll be treated the same way though. That reimbursement will go back to developer. Developer has to submit their expenditures for their caps and then we will reimburse them for whatever that cap is that we've, we've gotten. And that all goes basically through the tax office. The, the portion of the tax that was on the base goes to all the entities and the portion on the increment goes back to the TIF district, which comes to us. We hold it, we, we reimburse the developers as it goes out. So, I will mention, you talked about, um, some entities participating and not. I will say in some of these incentives, tax increment financing and NRAs, the state does not participate. They, they waive themselves out. There are some, um, in NRAs that, for the school district, that are not affected, so they don't get affected by it. So there's just some little twerks into, into that, that, that some of the entities don't participate.
And the RHIDs that we've done are Southview and Aeroplanes. Both of them were targeted and, and they are building product per a development agreement that we entered into. It's a product type, we specify construction quality, price points, a number of things in return for the RHID funding.
And each one of these tools has a different timeframe. So IRBs is ten years, uh, TIF, I think it's twenty-two years, and I think RHID is twenty-five, is what we've done.
Yeah. And it's, all of these incentives are kind of devils in the details. Because in some of them, the city can, or the county can full-on veto, and others, they can just protest. And in some of them, they, certain portions of them, like Debbie said, certain funds are opted out, but certain funds aren't. So, don't mind me.
Yeah, and you can see by these numbers that as this TIF started, the base was actually in twenty-sixteen. So we actually started collecting incremental tax in twenty-seventeen, which, no, but nothing was built then, so we really didn't collect much. Um, it really started generating in twenty-nineteen, but you can see until about twenty-twenty-one. That's when all, the downtown hotel went online and a bunch of those other, uh, you know, businesses went online downtown. So you can see it's, it's kind of leveling out into the three-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year range. Uh, we did some evaluation on this and we'll probably talk about it a little bit more next week in the financials. But I anticipate that a lot of the set dollar amount, um, projects within the TIF will pay off extremely early. Because the tax is doing so well and their percentage is a certain amount. Uh, but we'll take a look at that next week.
Next slide. I will say, you know, one of the compliments we get from Commerce, cause a lot of times, because we're kind of in the middle, right, size-wise. A lot of smaller communities ask us how we're able to do what we do. But when we start about talking about stacking incentives, it's complicated. It is not for the faint of heart. And it takes a very dedicated group of people combing through all those numbers, processing all that and managing all those different pieces. And I think we're really lucky to have a group of people here at the city who can do that. And I think it's definitely a part of what's kind of gotten us the stuff that we have.
Same can be said for public-private partnerships.
Yeah.
They're a ton of work, but they, they pay dividends and there's a lot of complexity there. But we're, you know, on the staff side, we're, we're working it through. On the community side, we're lucky to have the investment interest in the downtown project and the public-private partnerships.
So NRA, Neighborhood Revitalization Area, we have two areas, A and B. So it kind of depends on where you fall on the map. That's a layer that you can highlight on GIS. Um, cause I know that's what everybody's going home to do. But, um, it does give property owners the opportunity to receive a property tax rebate in addition, um, to the improvements within the designated area. I think NRAs are great for the more commercial side of things, but it is harder on the residential side. Because most people who would benefit from this and are in the mapped areas don't have the cash upfront. And so, that's kind of one of the challenges, but that's also one of the reasons we're taking our NRA. And bringing it into the projects that we're doing with the Federal Home Loan Bank. Because they have to have the money upfront, plus we've got the money from the grant that helps to make that a little bit easier. So they're also gonna have some of the benefit of not having those increased taxes for a few years, which is actually surprising. One of the biggest concerns we get from people when we talk about home rehab programs. Is they're like, oh, I, I really need to fix my house, but I don't think I can handle the new taxes. So, when we combine the NRA with it, it does give them kind of a buffer to see that value come up and to readjust to that.
We frequently have a conversation about whether NRA incentivizes development. And it certainly does in certain instances, sophisticated developers, large projects. But it, it continues to feel like smaller residential projects, it's almost an afterthought. They realize it's available after they've kind of made the, the initial commitment to make the improvement.
But as far as incentives goes, NRA is about the easiest incentive. I mean, it's a, it's an application form that you just have to fill out. It's not, it's not complex and it's automatic. I mean, you, if you qualify, we give it to you. There's no, no process to go through.
Um, and then the, then also on the Federal Home Loan Bank, do those have to be owner occupied?
No, well.
The Fed, the Federal Home Loan Bank on the.
Federal Home Loan Bank, I think, has to be owner occupied, but if we get the CDBG, it can be owner occupied or rental.
Okay.
Which is also one of the reasons we're pushing.
But the NRA can be investment properties.
Correct, yes.
And, and I will say, this does come in hand for a lot of infill, because we have a lot of, I don't know if they're Chodo or whatever, low-income housing, housing that's being rehabbed. And then for, for low-income purchasing, we have a lot of those that we, that we have on these that are residential. Um, a lot of the improvements at the, the college, what is it, the Castle College, we have a lot of those. Can't think of the name. Parent Marymount, you know, a lot of those rehabs came under NRA, so there was a lot of involvement.
The President's place, it was certainly part of their business model. I mentioned this morning that we modified the NRA, uh, program to create a new category to facilitate the LELOF developments. So there's certainly examples where it is, is integral part of their, their pro forma.
I will say for NRA is, the pay, the taxes are paid just like they would be paid any upfront, which is a kind of bad thing for some people. But then, once they prove their payment, then we send them a rebate. So really, if you time it right, you can get your rebate, pay your second half and you kind of do that whole cycle around, um, your taxes. But, um, it, it doesn't, it does affect how you're doing it. Um, you can see the numbers, we, we stagger, they go on and off. I think they're either five or ten years and some of them are a hundred percent for five years and the fifty percent for ten, for five years. Um, and then they'll drop off, so you can see that we have, we fluctuate back and forth. And those are really the ol, older ones falling off, cause we have big influxes and then we have, you know, some that kind of stagger in. But we're, we're losing, we're not losing, but we're incentivizing, from the city's perspective, about seventy thousand dollars a year of city taxes. That are, that are being used to incentivize this, this program.
And it's a ten-year cycle.
Yeah.
First five years is a hundred percent, second five years is fifty percent. So.
And we have an NRA plan that all the other taxing. And we have an NRA plan that all the other taxing entities have to endorse. Just went through that process.
Yeah, I was going to say, you guys just did that with your map.
Yep. And so any, any amendments to the, either the plan details or the geographic boundaries have to go back through all those entities.
Okay, next slide. So CIDs can be used to finance either, either public or private facilities, improvements and services within the city or county. They drive revenue through special assessments. So basically, I mean, a good example is if you've got a neighborhood that, you know, has its own little commercial district, they want to make improvements or a downtown, they can form a CID over themselves and have that special assessment coming through. It's a, it's, it's part of the sales tax component and then it can be used to make some of those public or private improvements. I've seen it used over the years and it's, it's used in other states. It's been used for, you know, facade improvement grants or sidewalk repairs or, you know, a.
Kansas statute, it, it can be marketing, it can be programming, entertainment. It's, it's pretty broad, but that list is pretty representative of how it's been used here. Two hotel projects, the Convention Hotel on the south end, on the north end, we deemed that they were meritorious, I guess, of CIDs because they were removing the blight that was the, the two hotels there in the southwest corner of, of I-70 and Ninth Street. Other than that, we do have a, a CID policy that's dialed in, geographic and is somewhat limited, but we have the discretion to deviate. Then in the downtown, there's actually three CI districts, CID districts. One for the Alley Project, one for the Hotel Project, and then each at a percent of additional sales tax and then an overarching downtown CID. So if you go out and you Google, what's the sales tax rate in Salina? You're going to see that eleven percent, eleven point seven five rate of all that stuff combined. That's not the sales tax rate across the entire community. That's the highest rate in town, in the downtown. And that CI, that downtown CID district, the master developers went door-to-door and got petition signatures in support of forming the district in the first place.
So that doesn't take away from any of our taxes or anything. It's just an additional sales tax put on top of what, what is already there. So it's not really a, it doesn't impact, you know, it doesn't take anything away from what, what we would collect or have any impact on that. It's just basically, they could do the same thing by raising their prices by two percent, but it's easier to do it and to explain it if it's on the other side of the, of the equal sign, so.
And for all of these, except for the downtown CID, these, this funding goes back to the developer to pay the costs that are developed. The downtown, as Mike mentioned earlier, is separated out to, into several different categories based on the, the development agreement we have with Salina 2020. So that, that's treated a little bit differently and, but it, it does incentivize economic development, both downtown for new, new businesses and for existing retail. So there are some, some funds available for those. But as you can see, the numbers are starting to grow as we, as we develop more of those districts downtown and those get, they just start doing some sales.
When is this expiration date?
Uh, the expiration date, there's twenty-two, twenty-two years or twenty years, is it twenty-two years?
I think twenty-two.
Uh, I think they're twenty-two years. That's when that expire, that's when they can, they have to stop collecting that additional sales tax.
And in the last couple of years, as we've been doing housing, we've also done Mih, Modern Income Housing, but that's actually a state grant, so it's not an economics incentive per se where we're working with the other entities and dealing with property tax and stuff like that.
But it comes through us to make an application to the state rather than the developer being able to apply directly.
Correct, but we manage that like a grant with reports and things like that.
So, so while we are talking about incentives, there is a push right now in Topeka to, to limit the ability of communities to, to increase their property taxes if they have some of these incentives online. So if you approve an IRB, they're saying that you can't go above the revenue neutral rate. And I don't know what the timeframe is for that, if that's, you know, for the entire life of the IRB. It's, but it is something that they floated. I don't know if they've had committee hearings just yet, but we heard about it maybe a week and a half ago that they're trying to limit your ability to, to, to use both a tax incentive or a property tax incentive and increase your property taxes at any rate, so. Or even just allowing them to automatically go up based upon the valuation. Because remember, revenue neutral doesn't factor in that increase in the valuation of the property.
That's it, that's all I got.
That would be a pretty big hit if that, if that were to go to get traction. Have a chilling effect on economic development incentives most likely.
We'd have to either shut it down or, I mean, it, it would be either or and it would be a detrimental impact either way, so.
And I expect it won't apply to the state. And I expect it won't apply to the state.
Right.
All right, and that's all we had for you today. We're relatively on time. Again, if you, today or otherwise, have thoughts on topics or information that would have been good to include, please share that with us. We're continuing to try to tweak this from one round to the next. And then next Tuesday, we'll, we'll pick up finances and Greg will be here to talk Kansas Open Meetings, Open Record and some of the legal considerations. And then we'll do strategic planning later in the month. I don't have the date off the top of my head, twenty-second, twenty-eighth? Okay, yep. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope this was helpful.